All right, I don't have a knocker.
Again.
What do you want?
A gavel. A knocker. Be careful what you say.
Start the meeting without a...
A gavel.
But don't worry about it, I can use my phone.
Don't use your phone.
No, just knock it.
It's totally insured.
I'll give my staple at first.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm sorry, I said I'm ready.
I'm hard. He's ready?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance with the Town Board's enactment of Local Law fourteen of two thousand twenty-two. Our next meeting and those following will also be held here in person at Town Hall and will continue to allow for remote participation, so please keep checking the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you with us here tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevators. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. We'll begin this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it's their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find you're having difficulties accessing the hearing, visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in this boardroom, please silence your cellphones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with our recording of the proceedings. Tonight, Board Member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application have a time limit of three minutes. Also, beforehand and any submissions to the board tonight, please make sure documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. The application name should also be written on your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated, at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a set date. Those written comments can be addressed to members of the board and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowell and the Building Department. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of the September fourth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye. John, would you take us through the agenda, please?
Okay, turning to number three on the agenda, the application of LKA East South Beach LLC, three five two St. Andrews Road West, Schinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one seven dash four dash twenty. This application is going to be re-advertised for November sixth.
You don't take a vote? No vote.
Number four on the agenda, application of TPD South Beach LLC, three fifty St. Andrews Road West, Schinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one seven seven dash four dash twenty-one. This application is being re-advertised for November sixth. Number six on the agenda, application of UNA Riverhead Realty LLC, seven Pecanic Avenue, Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one one eight dash two dash four. This application is being re-advertised for October sixteenth. Number seven on the agenda, application of LHBH Properties LLC, ninety-seven School Street, Bridge Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash eighty-six dash two dash seven point five. Do I read this? Yeah, I do. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section three thirty dash ninety-five, schedule of off-street parking space requirements for non-residential uses to allow five parking spaces where a total of ten parking spaces are required on the property for the proposed conversion of a freestanding garage to a retail occupancy and the existing two-story building used as a commercial building. In addition, to clarify the record, the five-foot setback from South property line previously recognized in prior ZBA decision number six eight one nine dated November four, nineteen eighty-three, is shown on the current survey as four point five feet, and the one-foot setback from the West property line previously recognized in said decision is shown on the current survey as point nine feet and any other relief necessary.
Board has your section.
Move to adjourn the hearing on this application to October sixteenth.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye.
Number ten on the agenda, application of Wilderness Trail JV LLC, landlocked parcel in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash seven nine dash one dash thirty-three. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to eleven six.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye.
Okay, so should I call the Chabad?
We could just, just, yes.
Okay, so, calling for discussion, the application of Chabad Lubavitch Mitzvah Tank, forty Winding Way Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one one three dash three dash eight point two nine.
So before the board, as you guys recall, we had two public hearings on this. The board set written submission deadlines for August eighth. On September tenth, a month after the written submissions were due, we got an additional written submission from the attorney from the neighbors in opposition. It's beyond the timeframe where the public, the comments were supposed to come in, the property owners have objected, and so what's before you is whether or not you want to make a motion to reopen the application to accept the written subs.
So, this matter had, I had been lead on this matter. I do believe, given the amount of interest and energy behind this application, that it would be a service to all to reopen.
But reopen to accept and then close for decision tonight?
No.
Or reopen for another hearing?
No, reopen to accept the written submissions, circulate the written submissions, and then close it for a decision at a later date.
Okay. Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Well, all right, let's go through it. Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
No.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
No.
Mr. Leonard.
No.
Chair votes no.
So the motion fails, the record stays closed, then there'll be a decision later tonight.
Okay, on the decision calendar, the decision in the application of Matthew and Tracy Marafi, seventy-nine Inlet Road West, Schinacock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash one seven six dash one dash six. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to October second.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, the decision in the application of Lynn Leahy, fifteen Tarpon Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three six two dash four dash eight.
So this, this application was closed for decision. Upon getting ready for the decision, it was discovered that some of the board members had more questions about the application. The applicant, the agent for the applicant submitted a letter to you asking you, trying to summarize the request for relief and suggesting that if you had more questions, she would be willing to come back in to address any concerns at the board's leisure. She had recommended October second if that was available. The same thing, this would be a motion to reopen to take further testimony.
So this is a full reopen?
Yes.
Is there, is there somebody who's willing to make a motion to do that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Mr. Repen.
I'm not sure, but I'll say aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
No.
Mr. Leonard.
No.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, so you, you're not taking any more testimony on this application?
It had to be unanimous, right?
Yes, it has to be unanimous.
So even one no vote, you're gone.
No vote, yes, okay.
Okay, calling the decision in the application of Brendan Josephson and Sarah Church, twenty-two Bay Avenue, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash five dash three dash thirty-nine.
All right, this is the same, this is the same issue. The applicants were under the impression that the board favored this application and are requesting to come back in to answer any questions on this. The motion to reopen to take further testimony, I mean, I didn't realize I should have said this before, but I do recommend these when your applicant's asking to reopen the hearing.
You do recommend?
Yeah.
Yes.
These are your applicants, these aren't neighbors in opposition. These are property owners who made a pitch, revised their plans.
Is there...
I'll make a motion reopen.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
No.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
No.
Chair votes aye, but it has to be unanimous, so it's not reopened.
Okay, turning to the decision in the application of Bart Carafella, seventeen Dock Road, Remsenberg, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three six six dash one dash ten. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to October second.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Jesse and Stephanie O'Neil, three Wayne Court, West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three five seven dash three dash sixty-one. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to October second.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
I am staying, I accuse myself of this.
Oh, okay. Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
The decision in the application of Emily Brant and Eric Petra, twenty-four Dock Road, Spiong Remsenberg, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three six six dash one dash seven point four. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to October second.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Is there a second on that? Bob.
I was.
Finally, the decision in the application of Gerard Parino, twenty-eight Benita Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three six two dash four dash twenty-eight. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to October second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoniyo.
Aye.
Mr. Repen.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye.
Okay, turn, turning to the top of the agenda, number one on the agenda, the application of Michael J. Taylor and Christine A. London, one fifty-one South Country Road, Remsenberg, Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash three six eight dash two dash fifty-two. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize a covered side porch on a non-conforming lot. Section three thirty dash six, general regulations that references Section three thirty dash eleven, Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for principal total side yards from sixty feet to twenty-eight point seven feet and a principal minimum side yard from twenty feet to twelve point four feet and any other relief necessary.
Board has your section. Are either of you attorneys?
No.
Then, are you an attorney?
I'm sorry?
Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and addresses separately.
Okay, William Frederick Hine, architect, four ninety-two Montauk Highway in Eastport.
Okay.
Michael Taylor, one five one South Country Road.
Okay, great.
Remsenberg.
Okay, great. Who's leading the discussion? Are you? Okay, so go ahead, William.
Okay. So this application is to legalize a small, one-story, open, covered side entry porch on a very non-conforming lot. Specifically, it's a request for area variances for provisions to three thirty dash eleven for principal total side yard setback reduction from sixty feet to twenty-eight point seven feet and a principal minimum side yard setback reduction from twenty feet to twelve point four feet. The properties in Zone R forty, the lot is undersized in area, being eighteen thousand eight hundred and three square feet, when forty thousand square feet is required, so it's only forty-seven percent of the required lot area. The lot is also undersized in width, being one hundred and ten point four eight feet in width at the street, when one hundred and fifty feet is required, which is only seventy-three point seven percent of the required lot width. It's also only fifty-nine point six feet in width at the rear property line, which is thirty-nine point seven percent of the required lot width, because the lot does taper severely. Because the lot does get narrower as it goes back, the lot width at the covered porch that we're discussing, it's only ninety-four point seven five feet wide, or sixty-three point two percent of the required lot width. Lot coverage is conforming at sixteen point one percent, when twenty percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is not being overdeveloped, the house is one and a store, one and a half-story house with only two bedrooms and an area of twenty-five hundred and ten square feet. Pyramid zoning and height restriction relief is not required. The roof on the subject porch was hip back towards the house to minimize the mass of that porch and to avoid any conflict with the pyramid. You can see in the drawings I submitted that we stooped underneath the pyramid. The existing house does project out of the pyramid, but the house was built in nineteen thirty. The lot was really created in nineteen sixty-two, so prior to any pyramid zoning zone, and that encroachment is unchanged. The property is on a curve in Remsenberg on South Country Road. On the tax map, you can see here, there's South Country Road, subject property. All of this area was once owned by the Tuttle's in the late eighteen hundreds. In the early nineteen hundreds, they divided this area into three lots, continued to be owned by the Tuttle family, and they built houses as they chose. Over time, wanting to sell some of those houses, they have subdivided the properties to get each house on its own lot. You can see clustered around the house, all of these lots are non-conforming, none of them are near an acre in size, except for the one down here, which is oddly split in half by Remsen Lane, so they really only have use of half of their property. So all of these lots are undersized. So there's been a number of variances approved for this site. In nineteen sixty-two, the owners applied for a variance to subdivide the house at one fifty-one out of the lot with one fifty-three and one fifty-five. They were given permission to do that, but it was subject to the north setback on one fifty-one, the subject property, being a twenty-foot setback. They were back in several months requesting an additional variance to reduce that twenty feet to seventeen feet, and they were given that approval at that time. In nineteen sixty-five, the new owner, because that property had been subdivided out, sold to the new owner, wanted to add a garage to the house, came back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and got approval for a garage attached to the house at that time. So at that time, they were approved with a setback of seventeen point two feet from the north property line, sixteen point three feet from the south property line, and a total side yard of thirty-three point five feet. So they did not hold them to the sixty-foot setback that we have today or the twenty-foot minimum side yard that is subject to. Okay. And in two thousand and ten, the Bopkins owned one fifty-three and one fifty-five South Country Road. The reason for the seventeen-foot variance, or the three-foot variance to get seventeen foot in nineteen sixty-two, was to maintain the driveway to the lot at one fifty-five, which is landlocked. They were driving across one fifty-three. That driveway was right between one fifty-one and one fifty-three, and they also wanted to maintain a tree that was in that area. So in two thousand and ten, the driveway was moved from the south side of one fifty-three to the north side of one fifty-three, and instead of being just a right-of-way across the property, they went to the planning board and they got permission to make that a flag lot. So the driveway no longer exists in their south property line, and the tree is long gone as well. Unfortunately, the property wasn't created in its current form until nineteen sixty-two, so we could not get a single and separate title search back to nineteen fifty-seven. So we weren't given the permission to use three thirty dash one fifteen D, the four-tenths rule, to give our side yards down and our total side yard down. If we were able to get that, we would have a total side yard of thirty-seven point nine feet and a minimum side yard of fifteen point one six feet. We would still require with that a minor variance for the porch that we're asking for. The house wasn't CO'd until nineteen seventy. The CO was for residents with attached two-car garage. This project has been before the Landmarks Board twice, once for the original project that we did to the house. We have a building permit still active to do additions, alterations, modifications to the house.
When was that work done?
So that permit was issued in two thousand and three, but we can't get the CO or the CFC for that until we deal with the as-built porch on the side, which requires the variance.
Okay. And when was the work done on the porch?
It was done at the same time.
Two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay.
Sorry, twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so the Landmarks Board viewed it for that original application. When construction started on the house, the excavator started to notice that the foundation of the house was failing. The blocks were starting to come apart. Further research into the foundation, we realized it was only two blocks into the ground, so sixteen inches into the ground, and there was no footing, and the blocks were just disintegrating. So we did an amendment to the building permit, application, to do a full basement under the house. At that time, I had drawn the porch onto the drawings in order to come to get the variance for it and build it. Unfortunately, I left it on the drawings as we went to the Building Department for the modification for the, for the basement that was going to be built. The building inspector didn't pick up on it, he approved the plans that were submitted by the builder, returned them to the builder approved, and the builder thought that he could build the porch, so he built the porch. So I started it, the building inspector continued the effort, and the builder built the porch. So we're all at fault for it.
So you're saying it was on the plans that you submitted, and it wasn't picked up by the Building Department?
Correct, it wasn't on the original plans.
What year was that, two thousand and twenty-three?
Uh, yes, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Two thousand and twenty-three.
Yes, so it wasn't on the original plans, but it was on the modified plans submitted for the amendment when we did the full basement replacement. So, will the granting of the variances cause undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? No, it's a typical one-story, covered, small side porch, it's five by eight, forty-five square feet. It's a typical sort of appendage that you see on traditional homes. This particular property is in the potential Remsenberg Historic District. It has been, as I say, to the Landmarks Board twice, once for the original application, once for the amendment. On the amendment, it was on the drawings, so the Landmarks Board did review the side porch at that time and approved it. So it's been approved by the Landmarks Board. The benefits we sought feasibly in another method, the porch was added on to access the kitchen. It was always on that side of the house, it's still on that side of the house. In order to do a door out the side and have a little porch there, it needs to be in that location. Is the variance substantial? So I say no for the size of the project, being only forty-five square feet and open porch. It's basically two columns and a small hip roof. It is well shielded from the neighbor to the north, and I gave Candace the letter, we have a letter from the neighbor. And basically states, we are the property owners of one fifty-three South Country Road in Remsenberg, to the north of the subject property. We have reviewed the variance application and the land survey by AJC Land Surveying and the project design drawings and site plan by William Frederick Hine, architect. We have also visited the site and discussed the project with the subject property owners. After reviewing the covered porch variance, we have no objection to the variance request. And Candace has the original. So it's really only the property to the north that is affected by this porch. Opposite side of the street, they're really not seeing it. The lot is very deep, so people behind the property, again, not really going to be seeing it. It's on the north side of the house, so the subject, so the property to the south, again, they're not seeing it, it's really just the lot to the north, so we contacted them and got the letter from them, and they have no objection to it. I did submit with the original application some photographs of the north property line and a very dense arborvitae wall there. This has now been added to by the current owners. This is on the side of the property that's one fifty-three, not the subject property. So now there's a shorter row of arborvitae's planted by my own clients and some other small plantings there. So again, it's very dense, you cannot see the house next door from here, and they cannot see this house from their property. And again, they had no objection to it.
So, I'm sorry, did you say the neighbors planted those arborvitae? I'm looking at them right now, they're enormous.
Yeah, yeah, so they were planted a while ago.
By the neighbor?
By the neighbor at one fifty-three.
On his property? On his property?
On their property, yes, so it's not on the subject property.
Would you be willing to condition the variance on maintaining that kind of screening in the event that the neighbor takes it down?
So I can, I didn't have a, I didn't realize that they had done landscaping on their side, so they have now added probably seven-foot arborvitae's on their side of the property line and some other smaller plantings in front of it.
So the applicant has added?
Correct.
Seven-foot arborvitae's, okay, perfect. That may be...
If you need be, I can send more photographs.
So it's a double, they have yours.
If anybody visited the site, you would have seen them.
Okay, will they, will they agree to condition the variance on maintaining those arborvitae in that screening?
Will you agree to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, great.
And you said the covered porch does not require pyramid relief, correct?
Yeah, I did submit drawings to that.
Yes.
It's forty times better, forty times. Yes, yes, it's basically fine.
Kevin, this is yours, did you want to take the lead on asking some questions?
So I, I did go visit the site, and your description generally of what one would find going there is what I found, which is encouraging. I agree with all the screening concerns, and I think that, I was trying to understand how that could have happened, and I appreciate your explanation for how it did. For the record, not an exhaustive, elaborate accounting exercise, but some estimate for the cost of removal of the, of the structure and complying, and that is, you know, taking the cover down and the stoop, just so we have it in the record, what the, what the theoretical impact or hardship would be for... what the, what the theoretical impact or hardship would be for.
It's not to be submitted as a written submission.
Okay, so not right now, I'll do it?
Right, right.
I can do that.
Not one sentence, but not, you know, not a six-page, you know, deconstruction proposal.
Realistic cost estimate. Because when we see built as-built things, we often ask that question as part of the record.
But assuming there are no, you know, major objections from anybody else in the public, I, I thought all things considered, it was okay.
Can I ask a question? There was some confusion. In some of the plans that I saw, the setback was 12.1.
Yes.
And so, yeah, for example, on this document here. So I think that for the record, it has to be corrected.
So when we did the original drawings, the surveyor showed it as five by eight, that's what we called out. But as it got trimmed and whatever else, it ended up being five foot three by eight foot seven. So that's why, as I said, five by eight, it's 45 square feet, but five by eight is 40.
Okay.
But five foot three by eight foot seven is 45 square feet.
Well, I, you know, again, you know, we want everything to be correct that we submit as a record.
So my drawings are correct.
So what's the number?
No, the drawing is not correct, it says 12.1.
Correct. Yes, the surveyor says 12.4, but he's going to a five-foot porch.
Oh, all right, so, so, all right, so then the survey has to be changed to say 12.1. Which is the correct, 12.1 or 12.4?
12.1.
Okay, the survey says 12.4, it has to be modified.
So it needs to be changed.
Right, need to change it.
Yep, we need to do that. The final survey for the remainder of the project and everything being done at this point.
No, that's fine, but I just don't want there to be a conflict of what it is. We should have the accurate numbers. Anybody else on the board who wishes to comment on this application? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on 151 South County Road? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 151 South County Road?
No one on Zoom.
Kevin, this is yours. We do have a couple of things you have to submit.
I'm going to make a motion that we close this hearing, take comments up until October 3rd, and then a decision on October 19th, October 16th.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebbin.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Both sides. Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Number two on the agenda.
You'll have to submit a written submission.
Janice Spindel, as trustee of the Janice Spindel Revocable Trust, UAD, May 14, 2024. Tony Lee Corwin, applicant, 21 Lilly Pond Drive, Sag Harbor, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-26-1-37. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, Section 267A, and the Southampton Town Code, the applicants appeal the issuance of Certificate of Occupancy number C250160, dated June 3, 2025.
The board has jurisdiction.
Are either of you ladies attorneys? Okay, are you an attorney, a lawyer? Are you a lawyer?
Are you a lawyer?
No.
Say that proudly.
Yeah, why do people say it like that?
Then let me swear you in, okay? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
All right, it's Leatrie, L-E-A-T-R-I-E, and I'm using the little B, and it's Christensen, T-H-R-I-S-T-E-N-S-E-N.
Okay.
17 Lilly Pond Drive, Sag Harbor.
Okay, great.
11963.
Tony Lee Corwin. T-O-N-I, capital L-E-A, Corwin. 7 Swan Hill Road, Southampton.
Okay. Who's going to, Anita?
I'll start, Mika.
Anita, why don't you just introduce yourself?
Absolutely, Mika Strunk, Mika B. Strunk, PLLC, 37 Windmill Lane, Southampton, New York, for the applicant, Tony Lee Corwin, and her mother and brother.
Okay.
So this is a, this is an appeal from the issuance of a bill, of a certificate of occupancy by the Building Department for property adjacent to my client's property. My client's property is 17 Lilly Pond Lane, Sag Harbor, and the property at issue is 21 Lilly Pond Lane, Sag Harbor. The, this is a, a house, next door is a house that was built by Farrell Building Company. And as part of the plans that they submitted to the Building Department, which we have in your packet, it's this, this big sort of larger pullout. There was proposed to be a retaining wall on the west side of the property, on the side that borders my client's property. And this retaining wall, I don't, I'm not sure there's a measurement that I can read on this, on this plan that we got from Southampton GIS system. But the retaining wall is proposed to be 36 feet tie, sorry, 36 inches tall railroad tie landscape wall. But there is a grade that had, you know, between the two properties that had previously been natural. What happened was that instead of installing this retaining wall on this property, the retaining wall in its full dead man system, which is quite deep, it goes about 10 feet deep, was installed on my client's property next door. And so, and that you can see both on the completed, the final survey for the applicant, or for the property owner, and our survey. If you look at.
Your, your survey is in this package, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So this is the final survey?
That's our, that's my client's survey. And you can see that the wood wall is entirely on their property in addition to the dead man system, which is underground, that goes about 10 feet further. Are you having trouble finding these things?
I'm having trouble figuring out which is the survey. I've got one here dated.
Hold up, which is what?
Okay, so this is the final survey for the property at issue, which is 21 Lilly Pond Drive. And it's, it's by John M. Abruzzo, and the date on it is?
4/18/24?
Uh, I don't know.
I think that's the same one.
Yeah, no, 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 that's ours. Ours is 4/18/24.
Oh, I see, it's in this little group.
By Rayner Marks and Carrington.
Is it this one?
Yes.
Okay, I think so.
Yes.
Now, when you're calling it the final survey, what does that mean?
Well, it says final survey of property, but it says it on it.
Now, is this the survey that was submitted with the building application, building permit application for which the certificate of occupancy was issued?
I believe so, yes. That's my understanding.
Okay.
It's certainly the last survey submission that you can see in the GIS system.
Okay, so what is this survey?
This is my client's adjacent property.
So let's.
Okay.
Well, this is your client's?
Yes.
Okay, so it goes like that?
Leatrie B. Christensen, James R., and Richard A. Christensen, Tony Lee Corwin.
So the Rayner and Marks survey is yours?
Rayner and Marks survey is ours, yes.
What's supposed to be here?
Okay, that's the applicant.
The.
Let's put here.
The Abruzzo is.
The Abruzzo, yeah, the Abruzzo survey is whose?
That's the one, that was the survey on which the permit, the CO was granted.
That's correct.
Subject property that was supposed to have built the wall, okay.
Exactly.
Put this on Farrell.
Correct.
Okay, and yours is Rayner and Marks, okay.
Correct.
Mika, would you explain what a dead man system is? I'm not familiar with that.
I'll do the best I can. I'm sure there are board members who know this better than me.
Not me.
The, a retaining wall has a system of horizontal, in fact, my client, my, if, I don't know if you can pull up a photo. It has a system of horizontal members or, you know, struts that go underground, you know, parallel to the ground level, and that provides the support for the retaining wall, and then it's backfilled. So it's a whole system that is about 10 feet deep. So the actual, even though the survey is only going to show the top of the wall, there's actually quite a lot of, of material underground that invades further into my client's property. Exactly, yes, yes.
And you say it's usually 10 feet deep?
It's about 10 feet deep, yes.
Just to be clear, so you're, you're representing that a wall was built
Yes.
with another structure, timber of some other kind with anchors or whatever, that go out roughly how far?
About 10 feet.
About 10 feet into your neighbors, into your client's property?
My client's property.
Was excavated and then backfilled on your client's property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Wait, is the retaining wall, the actual surface also on your?
Yes.
So it's both the struts underneath and the wall itself are both 10 feet into your?
Not the wall.
So the whole thing?
The wall is, I don't know.
The wall is almost right on the property line.
The wall is close, very close to the property line, but clearly on, both surveys clearly show it on our side of the property line. I agree, it's got to come down, that's my view.
All right, so the wall's on the property line, but the struts, the underneath, is 10 feet in.
And the dead men are without question on your client's property.
Without question. And in fact, I can certainly submit more photos that, that show the system when it was in the process of being built.
You have photos of, as during the construction process where you're digging up their property?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Keep going.
There was never a variance sought for any of this?
No. We don't, I mean, my client, my, my client is, you know, she and her brother own the property. Their mother, it's the first time I've ever had the pleasure of going to a public hearing with a woman who's going to celebrate her 99th birthday this weekend.
Oh, my, wow.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And she lives in the house on the property, she has a life estate.
And did you see, ma'am, did you see them, when they were digging this up, you saw it?
You saw them digging it up?
I beg pardon?
Did you see Farrell when he was digging that whole thing up? And he cleared the property? You know, when he cleared your property?
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, you know, clearly, the, there can't be any dispute that the as-built structure is not on the property, where it was supposed to be. It's on my client's property instead, and that has to be removed. The certificate of occupancy should be annulled.
And you're also talking about removing the above-ground part of the wall as well?
Yes, everything that is on our property, yes.
But that's supposedly on the property line?
No.
It's all.
Okay, good, as long as you tell me it's all.
It's just over.
Both, they're both.
Yeah, it has to be both.
It says it's.
Right here, right?
Yeah, it's that little part there.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, this, yeah. And it's behind the hedge. It's on your property behind, on your, the hedge is in between that and their property. The hedge comes behind on their, yeah, okay. It's very dense.
Have you spoken to them?
I, yes, Ms. Spindel has spoken to me several times. And also, I know that she has recently, or I'm not sure if she's retained them, but I received a call from Brian Doyle of Greenberg Trarick, who's going to represent her. He told me, he asked me if we could adjourn this evening. I didn't want to adjourn this evening, my client and I couldn't, couldn't make our calendars work in October, so it would have to go into November. However, I did tell him that I would be willing to, for the record, open, you know, assuming that that's okay, okay with the board, so that he could submit whatever he wants to submit in support of this. I don't really know what it will be.
But you're not, you're not willing to have him come back for a hearing, so?
Well, I, I would do.
Okay, even if it's November?
I'd like to hear from him.
Yes, fine, understood.
I'm not sure of the size of the lots, is there any way to? Purchase the land and not have to take the wall down? I don't know.
I mean, we could negotiate something like that, or an easement. Easement would be easier.
Exactly.
So I, I'm relatively new to the board, so forgive me for asking, but it's just the right place to ask this question? Are there other remedies? And, which doesn't mean I'm not inclined to, but I just want to understand why here with this.
Sure. Well, the town code and the New York town law gives this board appellate jurisdiction over actions of the building inspector. So that's how we challenge building inspector's CO, is to this board.
And your request of us is to, in effect, revoke that approved instrument?
Correct, yes.
And presumably, they would then have to reapply and properly conform?
Correct, yes.
Have they been contacted, Farrell at all? Has anybody spoke to anybody yet?
Yes, Brian DeSessa, who represents the Farrell Building Company, also got in touch with me.
They didn't come up with a remedy at all?
No, they asked me what my demand was, my client's demand, and I said to restore the property. You know, I mean, I, that's obviously would be the best result. If, if there need, you know, if they want to propose something else, my client will listen, but it's, at this point, it's not, it's not something that they authorized, and it's completely on their property.
I would like to see it worked out, if you can work that out, otherwise it has to come down.
Agreed, agreed.
If you can't work it out, it's got to come down.
Okay, thank you, I will try.
Have you gotten any explanation for how it is they built it on your client's property?
I don't have an explanation. I don't know, Tony, if you, if you have anything?
No. They, they stole of the neighbor that now owns the house. It was mutually beneficial for Farrell and for us. But we've lived in the house for 58 years, and we've never had a problem, so we really didn't need the wall. So he put the wall there because it made his property look bigger, and he wanted to sell his property. Unfortunately, it's all on my property, and the site map that I thought was like written stone and not like a suggestion says that it should be all on his property. So I just want it done like the site map says.
That's right. When the CO was issued, who was, who was the owner of the property? Was it Farrell's?
I believe it was Ms. Spindel.
Oh, okay, so it was the neighbor?
In fact, I think she took title in about, over a year ago, I think in April 2024.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so it wasn't Farrell, it wasn't issued when Farrell still owned the property? It was issued when the owner was now?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so who's, let me see if there's, all right, before, anybody else, comments?
I have a question, Mika, because I know, I know you saw the copy of the email that I had issued on this, so.
Yes.
You know, to the extent that I was involved in this, I, you know, Mr. Brian DeSessa didn't make a representation, that he had spoken to somebody on this property and that there was an agreement. Is that not the case? Nobody, not, I mean, obviously not you two, but, you know, not the other people on the deed? No one, no one on your property has agreed to this?
No.
No one had a conversation with?
Well, I don't know what conversations might have taken place.
But it looks like there's four different people named on the deed. I mean, you can speak for all four of those people?
Yes, I represent them all, and actually, one of them is deceased. It's three, three siblings, Tony, her brother Richard, and James, who died and willed his, that's okay, he willed his interest to Richard, so.
Yeah, I saw Richard sign an owner's endorsement, so I assumed that was the case.
Yes, he endorsed this. Now, I believe that they may say that there was some discussion about this with Richard, but I have not, I've asked Brian DeSessa and I've asked Brian Doyle for anything that he has, and I have received nothing from either of them. And, yes, he did contact me, DeSessa, to try to work it out, but it didn't get anywhere.
Katie, are you saying you received an email representing that in fact a discussion occurred?
The, Brian DeSessa had, had, they were getting, they had finished all of the construction, and they were waiting with the Building Department to have the CO issued. And so they, Brian was waiting and wondering what was holding it up, and there were some flags on the property, and they had gotten me involved, and they had said, oh, there's, you know, the retaining wall, there's an issue with the retaining wall, but to the extent that it's on the neighbor's property, we have permission. And so, you know.
But your memo said that, that they were going to hold harmless the town if there was an issue.
For litigation purposes, yeah.
For litigation purposes.
Because as you.
It's unclear exactly what, it wasn't clear in the conversation.
But as, as the board knows, and I say it often, you know, there are certain things that are just outside of, now, I'm not saying your application is, but, you know, neighbors can agree to anything. Remember, we've seen fences on neighbors' properties, and, and they do boundary line agreements, and so certainly, I was like, oh, if there's something on the neighbor's property, particularly if it's underground, and there's an agreement between them, that shouldn't hold up the CO, but if they don't have permission.
Right.
Yes.
No, they did not have permission. No, they did not have permission, and, you know, speaking as an attorney, there's a statute of frauds that would apply to an agreement like that. It has to be in writing to allow something like that on your property.
Oh, absolutely.
So, um, that's not what happened.
If you're going to be in agreement, it's going to come back.
Okay, all right, so is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on 21 Lily Pond Road? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 21 Lily Pond Road?
There is someone on Zoom coming on now.
Someone on Zoom.
Hey, JR, we can see you.
Danny?
Yes, we can hear you. I assume you're an attorney?
Yes, yes.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is JR DeSissia with the law firm of Greenberg Trarick, 2317 Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton, New York.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so I'm here this evening on behalf of Janice Spindell. She is the property owner of 21 Lily Pond Lane, um, right next door to the applicant. Uh, as Ms. Strunk indicated, my firm is in the process of being retained, and we would request that tonight's hearing be left open, so that we can complete our due diligence, um, complete a factual investigation to see exactly what did transpire here, um, and, you know, come back to the board at a later date to present our case. Um, I did speak with, with Ms. Strunk this afternoon. She was kind enough to consent to our request. So, um, you know, based upon that, I would ask that this be adjourned to the first meeting in November, because I do not believe that Ms. Strunk, nor her client, are available in October.
Okay. Actually, the first meeting is not available in November, but we could do the second meeting. Ms. Candace, all right.
November 20th, I think.
November 20th is the second.
Is the second meeting, yes, okay.
Is that, are you able to?
Well, you can come by Zoom.
Yeah, okay.
You can participate by Zoom. Do you have a grandchild or somebody who can tell you how to do that in Florida?
I know how to Zoom. I'm interested in the area of Florida that I'm in, if we would actually do that, but that's all right. My husband likes to go cave diving. Tim Boilin, he likes to go cave diving in remote areas, and I was questionable about whether or not I'd get on.
Okay, but, but the reality is that?
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, let's try.
Yeah, that's right.
And if there's a problem, you'll let us know.
I will.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, if there's nobody else who wishes to comment, John, this is yours, so?
So, we're going to leave open to 11:20?
Going to adjourn to 11:20?
Second.
Well, they're leaving it open so for the discussion until November the 20th.
To give the attorney on the other side an opportunity to review, maybe come and meet with you and discuss other options, so? Okay?
Maybe you can work out an agreement of some sort, and then?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Repin?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard, was it?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonio?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Me.
Chair of outside, thank you very much, and very, very happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Is somebody going to give you 100 kisses?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's always a good thing.
Number five on the agenda, the application of Segundo Romero Saladana and Fanny R. Españo Prado. Eight, Justin Avenue, North C, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-97-2-50.1. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Law for a total sky plane encroachment of 1,802 cubic feet. Existing encroachments and new encroachments for a second-story addition and roofline alteration on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Katie Garvin, I'm recusing myself from this application.
Kathleen coming in?
Kathleen's coming in, yep. This is my neighborhood.
I'll wait for her to handle this.
I'm so sorry. You're an attorney, right? Are you? Okay, so I get to swear both of you in. Um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
Lisa Boyer, Twin Forks Permits, 288 East Montauk Highway, Hampton Vase, New York, 11946.
Brant Reiner, Fifty Squares Boulevard.
Okay.
She has copies of those already.
Okay. Welcome, Kathleen. All right, who's going to make the presentation on the application? Okay, Lisa, go ahead.
So, this is an application for pyramid relief. The building department had initially issued a building permit without noticing that pyramid relief was necessary. It was brought to the attention of the homeowner, who then has put together an application. So, we will just kind of let the backstory on it for the moment. Um, the lot area is 7,192 square feet. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot size and setbacks. The property, as per the mass appraisal, says the house was built in 1940. There was CFO issued for the residence and a shed. Those appear on the survey. Um, the original house size was about 840 square feet. The proposed under-construction house size is proposed at 1,413 square feet, which is just a little bit over the 12,000 square foot minimum house size for a two-story house under the town code. So, that was an additional area of 577 square feet. Given the property is located along Little Fresh Pond, there's extensive wetlands along the shoreline. It's located along Justan Avenue and Wampus Drive, which is an unopened paper road. So, in theory, it has three front yards. As I said, given the extensive wetlands on the property, there's no building envelope on the lot. The owner went through the process of getting a health department permit, a wetland permit for the proposed improvements. Considering the wetlands on the lot, they put all of the addition for the second floor over top of the existing first floor. There is no expansion of the actual footprint of the first floor. They centered the mass over the, they put the mass of the second floor over the center part of the house. So, we're here before you seeking pyramid relief. Um, there was existing pyramid encroachment at the time of 437 cubic feet. The new proposed pyramid relief is 1,365 cubic feet, which gives you a total of 1,802. Residents went from a two to a three-bedroom residence, so not large, given current standards of the area. Um, in the packets that I handed out to you, there's just a quick breakdown of the immediate area of, um, square footage of houses in the area that are one and a half and two-story, and the average of the houses in the area is 1,595 square feet, and the applicant is proposing his residence at 1,413, which is below the average for the neighborhood. There are also other one-story residences in the neighborhood, but just for?
Most, most, I'm sorry.
Yes. There's quite a few. There's seven of the one and a half, two stories. So, as far as comparing the two-story or one and a half story to the same as this is, we went ahead and did that. So, we can go through three standards if you'd like. Sorry, the building inspectors went out and did one of the inspections, and that's when they discovered that pyramid is necessary. But the house, I don't know if you've been to visit it, and you can see from the photographs, it's framed. It's?
Filled in?
Yes.
Totally walled and filled in?
Correct, yes. So, that was only, and the town issued a stop-work order, and the homeowner stopped worked on the, on the house, so it's been sitting that way since that point. Also, in your packages are submitted four other variances. Two of them were from the immediate area, and two other additional ones are from the greater Little Fresh Pond area, all for pyramid relief. Do you want me to go through these?
Before you go through the standards, you said that I just offered some background? So, if I could just sort of offer a little bit of background on this. As Lisa stated, this house is pre-existing, non-conforming. When the owner intended to do work on the house, the initial need was to raise the house, to put a new foundation under it.
Mm-hmm.
In order to do any kind of work like that, you need a town wetland permit. So, the action was to get a town wetland permit before we could start the building process. This property has an extensive IA sanitary system on it, which takes up a majority of the yard between the house and the water. So, it was obvious that the, the new foundation was needed to support the second story, and the idea of the second story being over top of the footprint made the most sense. So, the town environment division did a review, and there's a wetland permit, I believe, in your file, issued a wetland permit, you know, subject to, um, there being an IA system already in place, and the work being done within the footprint of the house. And, and when the application was filed with the building department, there was just no acknowledgement, you know, it was missed all the way around that a pyramid variance was necessary. So, it is my understanding that the owner, who is also the contractor, started the work, lifted the house up, took down the old foundation, put in the new foundation, and commenced framing the house, at which time, the building department came out and said, you know, we got a call about this, we are now doing an inspection. When they did the inspection, they said, yes, we think you need a pyramid variance. So, therefore, we had to go back to the architect, look at the plans. He had to draw out the diagrams, and they said, yes, you do need a pyramid variance, and that's why we are here before you. Um, the work was commenced under the good faith of review by the building department, who missed something, and we are asking that there be consideration to the fact that we tried to go through all the proper channels, and there was just a miss all the way around, so?
But I'm, I'm unclear. When you said you had to go back to the architect to come up with the plans, when, what plans did you submit when you requested the building permit? Was, was there a pyramid, was there, was there, was there information on there that the building department should have picked up in terms of a pyramid?
Well, I guess were they the same plans as the ones we have here?
Yeah.
No, so when I said we had to go back to the architect to draw the pyramid diagram on the plans, it was a miss all the way around.
So, so the architect didn't put it in originally. The building department didn't do it either?
Yes, it was, I guess it was a miss on?
It wasn't just a miss by the building department. The architect had not indicated on the original plans with the submission of the permit request that it needed pyramid relief.
Or that there was a pyramid calculation at all.
That's right.
There should have been a pyramid calculation. The architect should have known that.
And the building department should have picked it up.
And the building department should have picked it up.
We're stuck here on both sides. It was a miss, and?
Can I ask a quick question? These plastic covers, I see them in the plans. What are, what are those? I see them here on the, on the GIS. What is this? Is that part of the IAS system?
Yes, that's the, that's the treatment tank for the IAS system.
Okay.
And that was put in before the house was, um, under renovation. That was put in years ago.
That was put in years ago. Okay, so, I mean, I'm going to be very honest with you. I think that it's, I mean, if this had come to us as a variance at the planning stage, I would have never been a yes on this application. I think it's not within the keeping of the character of the community. I mean, the pictures that you just provided to us shows a little cottage right next to this enormous two-story house. Um, however, I understand the situation that the owner finds themselves in, and I feel hamstrung by the building department, and I feel hamstrung by the failures all around, including the architect.
The architect, too.
So, um, you know, and it's clear that what could have happened was that there could have been some consideration of moving portions of this IAS system and using parts of this yard to fill in a second bedroom, because right now, what you have is, you want a three-bedroom house, you've got one bed, you, you originally have two bedrooms downstairs, now you have one bedroom downstairs. You reconfigured to have a great living, a great room, living room, kitchen, and two bedrooms upstairs, where you could have had two bedrooms downstairs and minimized the pyramid relief. That being said, I, I think that this application shows, um, a certain hardship for the applicant. I, I think you've made the case for hardship, given the fact that you're already under construction. What I'd like to see, what we've been asking tonight, is for some kind of estimate in the record as to what it would cost to? To, yeah, demolish.
It's a fair question.
And I think that, and that can be done by written submission.
Okay.
Um, and I think that would also include what it would cost to move portions of the IAS system, the, the, the water treatment where the plastic covers are, because that's the area that, where you could have really put a second bedroom. You could have had your three bedrooms. And I think that's all I have to say.
I, I also went to the property. The neighborhood is really, I mean, they're very small, one-story cottages. There may be a couple of two-story, but it's, and, um, I totally agree with everything that John just said. I would also add that the, um, the side of the house that faces the closest neighbor has no windows on that side, so that's a plus. But, uh, I agree, if, if this had come as just a naked, you know, we're just applying for pyramid relief, we would have had a lot of difficulty with this application. There's no question.
I'm seeing it just a little bit differently. I am, I guess we're sort of not talking much about the fact that the initial error began, began with the architect, and had the architect done his job properly, the building department may indeed have recognized the error that then was built on. And so, I'm, I'm a little more troubled. I understand the hardship, don't get me wrong, but I, I think, to me, this isn't, oh, the architect screwed up and the building department screwed up. It's really all started with the architect, and I, I can't take that so lightly.
And that's true, and I did not pick that up when I was looking at the materials. So, thank you for, you know, not thanking, you know, I don't want to really thank you, but, you know?
And listen, I'm, I'm laying this on the table, because this is important, you know, but what I would also like to add to, you made some really good points. Everybody's making good points. Another aspect of this is, these are really small sites, small lots. Um, and it's very important to protect the surface waters, the groundwater. So, to try to expand the house, we would have, the DEC and the, and the town environment division would have had a major issue with that, so your, your point is well-taken. I think we could have explored that more if we had the opportunity. But when the application came to the town, putting a second story above the, the house is what they would want anyway for any expansion of the living space. And as Lisa was saying, that, that house in its current, in its previously existing condition was small. It's, it's difficult for them to have their family in it, so they did need the extra bedroom. The import, the purpose of this expansion, the second-story expansion, was for the additional bedroom. And the bedrooms, I think, are, what do we say, like 90 square feet, 120 square feet? So, they're not, we're not talking about big bedrooms here.
It's a small house.
It's a small house, still. It's a small house, there's no question, yeah.
And, um, I would just like everybody to appreciate the fact that there are multiple other agencies that we were dealing with as well. This, this was not intentional.
Certainly, but I think, you know, we come up against this time and again, and, um, you know, Mr. McDonald has made this point very clear, which is sometimes what you want to put on a property is not necessarily appropriate for that property due to its size. And so, and that's the way in which we are the gatekeepers as to keeping the characters of the community. That's how we protect the community, in saying yea or nay as to whether or not you can build a much larger structure on a very small lot. So, sometimes people just need to think about exactly what it is they want and what they need, and whether or not sometimes you need to find someplace else to live.
As, as I recall, the way that it is constructed right now is that the walls are in, you know, there's like framing and the walls and the roof is on. So, uh, I think it would be, it would be very helpful to get an estimate of what it would cost to demolish that and possibly, you know, maybe come up with some alternative. I understand you'd have to go back to the DEC and the wetlands and everything else, because you'd be, you know, having to put in another application for that.
I, I just kind of feel like the, the ship has sailed.
I kind of feel that way, too, but I, but I do appreciate.
I'd like to know those numbers.
I appreciate Julie's point that this really did start with the architect, and maybe our builders should have figured it out sooner.
But I would also, I mean, that being the case, I still would not like to, uh, punish the owner.
Right, right.
Who is a layperson.
Right.
And doesn't understand how plans, I don't even understand half the time how plans work, and we do this all the time. So, uh, you know, I would hate to punish the homeowner on those grounds.
I, I do agree. Anybody else on the board who wishes to be heard?
Hmm?
Has this neighbor had anything to say?
You heard from the neighbor?
I've not heard anything from him.
All right, well, we're going to look in the audience and see if there's anybody here.
No one's approached me, that's all.
Okay, no one has approached you.
There's a few people.
Okay, um, okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, okay, let's come up, one at a time. You can go to the podium, or you can sit at the table.
If you want to go.
Three minutes.
Which, which is more comfortable for you?
Okay, are you an attorney?
No.
Let me, let me, oh, okay.
I'm not sure if the microphone's on. I'm sorry.
Is it, does evergreen, does evergreen, uh-oh. Well, good for you. Good pickup. Um, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Edwin Beineke, 172 Scott's Road, Southampton, New York, 11968.
Okay.
Spell your last name for me.
Spell your last name, please.
Uh, Beazinboy, E.I.N.E.C.K.E.
Okay, all right, Mr. Beineke, yes, go ahead.
All right, uh, good evening. I'm the managing partner of the LLC that owns the house at 11 Justin Avenue, Southampton, which is roughly diagonal to the property at 8. I'm here to strongly object to the renovations being done by Segundo Romero Saladana and Fanny R. Españo Prado at the house located at 8 Justin Avenue. The renovations were done without proper permits, and by the addition of a second story of the house, it's completely out of character in the Gondola Gardens Development where it's located. It partially blocks my view of Little Fresh Pond, and it completely blocks the water view of my neighbors, Brian and Jessica Eckhateb, living at 7 Justin Avenue. I can only imagine the decrease in their property value should the renovation- I can only imagine the decrease in their property value should the renovations at 8 Justin Avenue allowed to occur. The house is, is an abomination in our basic, basically bungalow and small cottage neighborhood, and it ruins the entire almost 100-year-old development. How this could be allowed to happen baffles me. I think the owners of 8 Justin Avenue just don't care, as they already own a property in Southampton, and they're probably just looking to flip the house at 8 Justin Avenue for a fa- fast dollar and have no intention of actually living there. They say they wanted a third bedroom. That could very easily have been accomplished by building out on the same level that they already had, instead of going up above the pyramid zone. They've already violated several zoning laws, including the pyramid law and probably several more, as the last building inspector labeled the construction there as being dangerous, among other violation, violations, of which there were four total that I saw on the building inspector's sign. Lastly, I think the hubris of the owners of 8 Justin Avenue perfectly illustrates the old adage that it is better to beg forgiveness than to ask permission. Please do not let them take advantage of the entire neighborhood due to their irresponsible disregard for our zoning laws. Thank you very much.
Mr. Beinecke, is there anybody else in the audience? Come on up. Whoever is gonna speak, come up.
There are people online also.
Don't worry, we'll go there next.
We've done this before.
Okay, are you an attorney?
No, not at all.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Celeste Frank, and I'm at 735 Major's Path.
Okay, go ahead, Celeste.
Oh, the, the home that here, that they're speaking about, I had been in the original home before the renovations many, many, many times. It was a little, almost like a studio apartment, I'd been, with a great view. And I wanted to speak out, because I too have been in a position, now, I'm on Major's Path, so I don't live next to the house. It doesn't cast a shadow on me, things like that. But I can tell you that I have been in that position of the neighbors, where your neighbor says, oh, no, this won't bother you. I'm gonna plant some big trees, and you think, okay, and next year you see that he has planted 18-inch saplings. You know, like, there's ways around it. I feel like, in my opinion, after doing all the little research that I've been exposed to, that the owner of this home is a builder himself. He had to have looked at the plans. What builder, in it's their own home, their own property, their own money, had to have looked at the plans? And if really this architect was at fault, and it wasn't done on purpose, if he was really, the architect is at fault, then I would suggest that the homeowner sue the architect. They'll tear the house down and put it back to code. I mean, if the homeowner himself is a builder, he, he's been a builder for what, 20 years? He's seen plenty of plans. I would think that not only did he work with the architect, 'cause I know I would if I was doing a house, I am sure that he's very familiar with the laws. I just wanted to say that, that you guys, I don't know who said it, but thank you so much for what you do for our town, 'cause you really are, whoever said it, you are the gatekeepers, you know, and some of the laws we might not really, you know, think about, but it's to protect the, the integrity of the community, so thank you again so much for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, thank you, Celeste.
I'd like the applicant to respond to the statements being made that this applicant is a contractor, and whether or not they actually live in the building. And whether they own other property in Southampton where they live. I'd like to know those two things, from, from you.
The owner, Segundo, is a contractor. I thought I had said that, I'm sorry. He is a contractor. I don't know if he li, I'm, he has to live somewhere in Southampton, I would imagine, but this is his, he told me this is his home. This is where he's going to live with his wife and his children, so, or child. Sorry, can't remember if he has one or two children. But that is all I know about that.
Okay, thank you.
Is the applicant the one doing the work? Is he the contractor on the, on the job? Is he the one building the house?
Yes, I'm, I'm almost certain.
That's even worse.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Okay, keep going.
Did you give one to Candace, ma'am?
Yes.
You did.
Are you an attorney?
No.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Do you state your name and address?
My name is Mary Rozell. I live at 2 Justin Avenue, which is, my house is across from the Wampus Drive at 8 Justin Avenue. I gave you some information, my whole little speech here, in case I.
Okay, we're, we're trying to keep it tight.
Yes, that's why, that's why I gave it to you.
Well, thank you, 'cause we're gonna take a look at it.
And in addition, I gave you additional paperwork that supplements what I have. I wanna just, like, actually talk.
We're gonna give you three minutes, okay? I'm gonna time you, I'll give you some latitude.
Okay.
It's all good.
Okay, sounds great. Um, to give you a little history, my family has lived at this house for about 47 years, and this ZBA meeting is, the owner seeking a variance, as we know, for out-of-compliance areas of his proposed house against the pyramid law. If a variance request was needed, it should have been part of the original building application and not what, not, we build what we want and ask for forgiveness. I believe had these issues, as you said, been addressed, the partial building wouldn't have been put up. My main points are, the original building permit that was posted on the property shows only interior alteration, renovation, and replace foundation. It's on page two of the handout. There's nothing about the second floor in addition on that permit. The present structure with the second floor is out of compliance per your pyramid law. As per conversation with a recent, a recent conversation with a building inspector, the builder said, that, he said that the builder submitted plans to the building department that adhere to the building law, but he then went ahead and didn't build according to his plan. When the inspector visited the property, he was given a stop-work order. As he was given permission to redo the foundation, the owner, he raised the foundation higher on his own, and this has caused the house to fail the pyramid law also on the north and south sides. The new house is too close to 10 Justin Avenue, his next-door neighbor, and it does not follow the original footprint. The height and width of the building is so overbearing toward, toward all sides of the property. When I review the plan sent to me, it appears the building is out of compliance on all sides. The plans submitted to get permits were not followed. The fault lies solely with the builder. He did not build according to his own plans. If the owner had sort of variance before, we wouldn't be here now. The owner has told me he is a building, builder or contractor, and he should have known about the pyramid law. I am a layperson, and I know about this pyramid law. We live in a small lakefront community. Most houses are small homes which fit on their property size. This current structure is so large, it towers over the neighboring properties. The current structure would change the character of our neighborhood, and in my opinion, in a negative way. I feel it would decrease the value of my property by such an overbuild. I feel we, the neighborhood, should not suffer for the owner's errors and/or be expected to accept or be bullied into accepting such a preposterous build. As the old saying goes, your emergency is not my emergency. I am not averse to building and renovating to a person's property within reason, but this is completely unfair, not legal, and out of the ballpark. I feel allowing this variance would be set a precedent for others to build before obtaining any variances if needed or following their own submitted plans. I do not agree to any proposed pyramid variance to this property project. And I'm just gonna give you a quick, short view of, like, I followed it, you know, the whole time. The, the second page shows the permit, which I took a picture of on March 10. And I'm not a builder, so although the roof, roof was removed, I didn't know that they were gonna be adding a second floor. Had he posted the permit, stated the second floor addition, I would have contacted the town at that time to inquire. Around April 21st, I realized they were adding a second floor, and I contacted the building department at that time. This misinformation on the posted permit, as it didn't match the permit they had on file for second floor addition. I inquired on several occasions about the building, and then it was realized in violation of the pyramid law, after myself and many neighbors called in their concerns. The building inspectors told me there was a mistake made, and a permit shouldn't have been issued due to pyramid law. See the back page, page one, under comments, comments. The stop-work order was issued, and the sign was posted. They continued to work, even though there was a stop-work order on the property. I wrote about some things to think.
We're at four minutes.
We're at four?
Okay, yeah, so I think we need to wrap it up.
So maybe if you look at, when you look at, I, I wrote the review of the handouts, and that would be good, and, yeah.
Yes, no, I appreciate that.
I have one question. When an owner does interior alterations and renovations, is it permitted to remove all the original walls, walls, the two-by-fours, the entire structure, and replace it?
It's all new.
What, you're gonna?
It's all new. You're right.
It's all new. He didn't leave one little thing.
It's not leaving the walls, it was all new walls.
So I thought that you were supposed to leave something. I'm not sure about that law, but I thought that if you're gonna do a renovation, he methodically replaced the entire building in a step-by-step approach. I don't believe there's one original part of the house remaining. Thank you for your time, and thanks for thinking on consideration, and thanks for looking at everything.
Thank you, Mary.
Kathleen, could you advise us as to that?
Um, I cannot. I don't know the answer to that. My instinct is that, it depends on what the building permit said, to be quite honest with you. I don't have that from.
We have two building permits that were just submitted by this witness. One was dated December 4th. It says, internal alteration, renovation, replace foundation. Then there's one on the backside, also dated December 4th, 2024. It says, second floor addition, interior alteration, renovations, replace foundation. So I don't know which is which, I mean.
I don't either, and I'm struggling a little bit, because the building department denial form notes in the comments that the permit was issued in error, because the submitted plans indicated the pyramid sky plane encroachment. So, I'm not sure.
I know.
You've said otherwise, but.
You said otherwise, you said that the original.
Have you seen that denial request?
Yeah, the denial letter states that the pyramid encroachment was initially on the plan submitted.
That's why I was asking the question about it, you know, what plans were submitted.
I was under the impression that it wasn't on the original plans.
Well, it may have been that the structure was on the plans, but maybe there wasn't an identification of it being a pyramid issue on the plans, but we need a clarification on that.
I will say, I do.
I would, I would like to see the submitted plans.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would like you to obtain those and submit those to us.
Give you a copy of the stamp plan for the plan.
Yeah, I would also like to understand from the applicant's representatives whether work continued after a stop-work was issued, as the person who just spoke indicated.
Yeah, I'd like to address that too.
Okay.
The two things I wanna address are, I agree the verbiage on the building permit appli, or the building permit itself doesn't match the plans that were approved. There was a second story addition always shown on the plans that were part of the building permit.
Okay.
And secondly, it's my understanding that, and I think that this was confirmed with the building department, that the work, the, the stop-work order was issued, and then there was allowance given to close the house up to keep it watertight. That was, that's what I.
Well, I, having been there, the house is not.
Honestly, I don't know anything beyond that.
The house is not closed up. All the windows are open, the door is open, you know, it's like, maybe the roof's on, but it, it's not closed up. And then, and actually, when I was there, there were a couple of cars parked in the, in the, in the lot, so. I didn't see anybody there, but, you know, I just don't know.
So I'd, I'd like clarification on that in writing.
On the stop-work order.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whether or not they continue to work.
Okay.
And what that work was, whether it's closing up to keep things safe and tight, or they just ignored it and it's working.
Yep.
Okay, come on up.
My name is Larissa Potapchuk, and I live on Little Fresh Pond Road, diagonally across from this property on the lake. I am not a lawyer.
All right, let me swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I do. And what was your name again?
Larissa Potapchuk.
Could you spell your last name for, could you spell your last name for us?
Sure. P.O.T.A.P.C.H.U.K.
I'm, I'm sorry, P.O.T.A.P.U?
C.H.U.K. P.O.T.A.P.C.H.U.K.
Are you, are you L.O.L. or L.A.R.?
L.A.R.
L.A.R.
I.S.S.A.
Okay.
When you ask about if you're a lawyer, and we say, no, we're not, we do the swear to tell the truth, are lawyers not required to swear to tell the truth?
Because they have a, they have a code of responsibility, and if they lie in front of us, that's, they, they can lose their license.
They can be disbarred.
We are officers of the court, and we are required to be.
Supposedly officers of the court. I know it sounds a little odd.
Due to our licensing.
Tells me so all the time, but I'm like, really?
Supposedly, we all have the truth, I don't.
Oh, yeah, well, you know. Okay, Larissa, Celeste, you're coming.
I live on, we've, my family has had this home on Little Fresh Pond for, since 1972, and we, what's so nice about Little Fresh Pond is you can look around, there's beautiful lake, and you just see trees. There are very few instances where you see a house. Well, recently, when this structure is being constructed, all of a sudden, like, what's that? We're diagonally across, we're on the northeast corner, they're on the southwest side. So I'm like, oh, my goodness. And it's interesting to know that the, as one of my colleagues said, that the owner is, has been in the business of construction for over 20 years, and he's built some big houses. He lives on Knoll Road, Knoll Road now, and a house that's up for sale for more than a few million dollars. He knows, he's gotta know the law for being in the business so long. When we reached out to the town building department, they had clearly stated that it was not the building department that made a mistake, because they responded to the plans that were provided to them. And they approved those plans. And then when they went back to do an inspection, the plans were different than what was actually constructed.
Okay, well, that's what we need to get a hold of that.
And I, I appreciate you folks doing your due diligence, and this is material information. The structure itself changes the flavor of the neighborhood. This enclave has been around since the 1950s and before. In fact, one of my neighbors has a home there that was built over 100 years old. This is a small community. The big structure out there just doesn't make sense. And because the rest of us need to comply with the regulations, by not having one of our neighbors or anyone comply with the regulations, it's just opening up a window for, why bother having regulations? And we appreciate that you are trying to get to the right answer for this. If the damages are, we need to modify the structure a little bit, clearly the owner would know what's allowed at this structure, on this location, before purchasing it. And we're just asking you to consider all these items. And the other one thing that's odd, the application reads that there are three front yards. Well, I'm thinking, how can that be? One yard identifies as a front yard is on Little Fresh Pond. That's the back of the house. The other yard is clearly in the front of the house. That's the front yard on Justin Avenue. And this Wampus Lane is actually an access point for the neighbors to go down to the lake.
It's considered.
It's considered a front yard.
It's considered a front yard.
And it is fenced in, so there is some opportunity for the applicant to possibly expand in that direction. But from what I understand, it's, the encroachment is over thousands of cubic feet.
1,800-plus cubic feet.
So, 1,802, I think, or something like that. So this is material. Please think about this and realize that clearly the applicant knew what was going on. Otherwise, they could have not have been in business for so long. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larissa.
And thanks for doing your due diligence, checking with the, um, high, uh, building department.
Thank you.
Okay, um, is there, okay, another gentleman?
Oh, there's a lot.
All right.
Good evening.
Just keep going.
Yeah.
Okay, let me swear you in. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name.
I'm Jimmy Silver. I live at 71 Little Fresh Pond Road, opposite where this house is being constructed. So I have a view from it, from my house, and also when we go in kayaking on the lake, 'cause it's lakefront. I took some photos today, so I'd like to pass them out, because I think they answer some of your questions about what's going on in that house.
Give them to Candace.
She did, okay.
I'll stand them. He only has one problem, so I'll pass them down, and then I'll, I'll take them back.
I've been there, so you don't have to worry. I've, I've actually seen it.
So, I, I would like to address, first of all, the application that was made to the zoning board, because there are a number of answers to questions here, which we don't agree with, and I'd like to make corrections for the record. Question number 15, will the grant of the variance cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or will create a detriment to nearby properties? The answer from the applicant was granting of the requested variance will not cause a detriment to the residential neighborhood. Well, this is a complete. Well, this is a complete false, falsity. As people have testified already, this house is completely out of place for what exists now in Gundola Gardens. There are pictures that are coming around where you see the yellow house, which Mr. Benicki talked about where he lives, and the house next to them, Jessica's house, that had a clear view of the pond that now can see nothing because of this house. This house is built on a property that is less than a quarter of an acre. It's point one five of an acre. It's between an eighth and a quarter. It doesn't, it doesn't allow for such an enormous construction on it. Plus, it's built two feet from the property line of 10 Justin, which we have a picture of there, so you can see also. So that question is undeniably yes. It negatively affects the character and the beauty of the neighborhood. The second question, can the, 16, can the benefit sought be feasibly achieved, achieved by some other method than an area of, area of variance? And the, the applicant said he believes the proposed second floor addition, which creates the pyramid effect, is the minimal impact to the property and the neighborhood. Well, that's not true because we went down and we spoke to the building inspector today who issued the violation and the stop work order. And we asked him, how can the buildings department issue a permit to construct something like this? And he said they didn't. He said, the plans that we received when we issued our permit, which you have from December of last year, were plans that were completely different. There were plans that showed that this house would be complying with the pyramid law. And the foundation was not to be raised. The foundation, they were given permission to reconstruct the foundation, not to raise it. If you look at the house now, they've raised the foundation about three feet, three or four feet. And they've added the, the bedroom that they're trying to carve out for the upstairs is the problem because they had to build out on the, on the house to fit that in. So, uh, there is, there is a way to feasibly achieve the pyramid. They have to take the bedroom out that wasn't there in the first place.
Sir, we're at three minutes.
Pardon me?
We're at three minutes.
We're at three minutes. We give everybody about three minutes. If you could just wrap up your comments.
Well, let me just say, since, since I have no more time, the people on Little Fresh Pond, I bought in 1988 and many of us, we have very small houses, you've seen pictures of them, and many of us wanted to increase the size of our houses through the years. And we were all informed about the pyramid law. And many of us had to sacrifice the additions that we needed for our families because we were responsible and we wanted to comply with the law. And we, we did building on according to the pyramid law. So this is very important. Our people in Little Fresh Pond have worked very closely. This is, this is an issue of, of preserv, preserving. This is, this is preserving Little Fresh Pond.
Sir, we're four minutes now, 4:20.
And we, we have worked with the town board, we have worked with the town trustees, we just worked with the highway department to put in drywells to, to eliminate road runoff into the pond. This is about preserving Little Fresh Pond and the natural beauty that we're losing in Southampton. So zoning is a vital part of that.
Sir, we're at 4 minutes, 40 seconds. We need to give everybody else an opportunity to speak. I've told you what, three minutes, and now we're two minutes over, so please wrap up your comments.
My last sentence, zoning is a vital part of preservation. And the laws are meant for everybody.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard? Okay. Okay.
Please.
Are you an attorney?
I am not.
All right, let me swear you in.
My name is.
Let me swear you in first.
Swear me in first, sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Carl with a K, last name is Nitzl, N I T Z L. My current domicile is 196 Wakeman Road in Hampton Bays and my children have a vested interest in 2 Justin Avenue, which is actually adjacent, or adjacent to the property we're talking about. I've been in the building industry for about five decades. You could not get me to believe anyway, anyhow, that somebody who's in the construction industry does not know that there's a period law, pyramid law.
Okay.
So these people created their own financial problem and it should not be counted to bail them out. And the architect, there's not an architect working in Southampton that doesn't know that there's a pyramid law. It's unbelievable. Anybody who says any different is lying to you.
Okay, I appreciate that and, and you know, we, I was not under the impression originally that this was a person who was in the construction business, who was the owner, that makes a whole different story. And we are going to get the plans that were submitted to get the initial building permit. So we'll see what was on there.
Yep.
Additionally, there seems to be some confusion about the building permit. I went and looked at what was posted.
Yeah.
Said interior renovation.
Yeah.
Basement replacement. Foundation replacement.
But then I see on this other packet that there were two, both issued the same date. So we need some clarification from the building department.
Somebody needs to know where the second permit came from or if it was backdated.
Well.
Which would be what I suspect.
Well, that's an interesting thing. We will have to find out. All right. If somebody's got something new to add, I think we've gotten the flavor of the community on this application. We appreciate very much your input and I'm just going to ask if there's anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard.
There are two people.
Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
There's 27 people on Zoom.
Do we have somebody?
Two.
Yes, two people.
Okay, all right. So I'm, I'm hoping that the people on Zoom, you know, let's try to keep it concise. We've got a lot of agenda items tonight, so we need to move along, but if you've got something new to add, we'd really appreciate hearing from you.
No.
In the meantime, I think you know what has to, you have to, this is, this is not going to be close. This is this, John, this is yours?
No, but I was surprised in some ways. This is, I mean, it's.
Boy, I'm going to let you see. It's, it's, okay, Frank.
Hello, am I being called first? I'm Frank Calamica.
Okay, we can hear you, Frank. We can't see you.
Oh, I don't have a camera on, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Um, my name is Frank.
Are you an attorney, Frank?
I, yes, I am.
Okay, then please state your name and address.
Frank Calamica, 114 Little Fresh Pond Road.
Okay.
I also have a residence in New Jersey.
Okay, well, that's.
539 Park Avenue in Hoboken.
Okay. So Frank, we're trying to keep it, you know, succinct because we've got a lot more to cover tonight and we've heard from a lot of community members. So, you know, if you can just keep it within three minutes, please.
I'll try. I make the following statements in opposition to the application for zoning variance on 8 Justin Avenue because the applicant's request fails on all the five factors that are set forth in Southampton Town Code. Each of the five unmet factors will be addressed in turn, whether there is, number one, whether there is an undesirable change that will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. The applicant's submission presents several problems that make it impossible to meet the burden for granting variance requested. The proposed variance would likely result in the largest and the tallest building being imposed on a unique residential enclave, both in terms of increased height and added floor with large square footage area. The proposed variance as built has constituted a shock to nearby neighbors where one-story homes, mostly converted munglos and small vacation homes blend in with the wooded surroundings. This unique summer residence area has stood, has stood as, as is for many decades in a quiet space and it's a culturally unique area and that character will be harmed by this building. Moreover, because of its imposing size, the proposed variance as built is the only structure that could be seen along the southwesterly part of Little Fresh Pond. It's an, formerly was an uninterrupted tree line from the westernmost point to the southwesternmost point for hundreds of feet. This change can be seen by photos taken of the shoreline in 2024 and compared with those taken recently in 2025, where the applicant's structure clearly visible as the only manmade object for hundreds of feet in either direction of continuous trees. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some method feasible. The applicant states that the basis for the buildout of the subject building for the variance is to create additional bedroom. However, the addition of the bedroom can be accomplished without a huge structure as requested in the variance with a simple buildout on the ground floor. All that will be needed would be permission from neighbor. Number three, whether the requested area, whether the requested area variance is substantial. The entire structure appears to be going through major remodeling and enlargement, both in the foundation and basement and in the first floor, as well as adding an entirely new upper floor. Therefore, there is a substantial change because the new upper floor effectively increases the size by hundreds of square feet. This is occurring in a neighborhood where the average size of the home is approximately one-half the size.
Sir, we're at three minutes.
Okay, so Frank, please, you know, hurry it along just a bit, please.
Okay, uh, I would just reiterate what has been said before. This applicant is an experienced, professional, successful builder who is sophisticated and has a website for his business as shown in his application. Of all persons, the applicant should have known that the structure would be considered a code violation before he even got out and started on the project. I do note that what we heard from the representatives was that a whole series of mistakes somehow were made. How come they all benefited the applicant? If you look at the totality of them, uh, what has to question the credibility of this assertion by the applicant?
Okay, we're going to look at some of the, you know, underlying documents and we'll make some assessment as to that. Okay.
Okay, I'll just finally say, I would just finally say, if you wanted a bigger home, you could have built elsewhere.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think there's one more person on Zoom and then we're going to wrap this up. We don't have a voice.
Two forces contract your sink. Second over mirror. There it is.
If, are we getting this person on?
Wait.
You're on, we just have to talk.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, we can't see you.
I don't know why you can't see me, but, okay. My name is Barbara Marsh and I live at 10 Justin Avenue and I am not a lawyer.
All right, Barbara, as you heard, we're trying to wrap this up. So if you could keep your comments succinct and particularly if you've got something new to offer.
Well, I live right next door, so.
Okay. Are you the property where, right on the property line or close to the property line?
Yes, I am.
The Little White Cottage?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I swear to tell the truth.
Oh, yes, let me swear.
I've, I've lived at 10 Justin Avenue next door.
I just assume you were a lawyer, I'm sorry. So let me swear you in.
No, I'm not.
Technically, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Barbara, go ahead.
Okay, I've lived at 10 Justin Avenue, next door to Mr. Saldana's house, since my parents originally rented the house in 1955 and bought it in 1960. We've been friendly neighbors since he and his wife bought the property in June of 2021. And he told me that he had planned to put in a sleeping loft for his one daughter over the center section of the house.
Barbara, can you speak up a bit? We're having trouble hearing you. You can just.
Um, okay, I, um, Mr. Saldana had told me that he planned to put in a sleeping loft for his one daughter over the section, center section of the house and I found that very reasonable. And the posted building permit stated only replace the foundation and do interior renovation. I was rather dismayed to see just how high the construction was with two bedrooms and bathrooms on the second floor, including cathedral ceiling, and then a half basement and the raised foundation. And furthermore, the tiny attached shed, which is extremely close to my property, is now almost as high as my house. It's my understanding that the issued permit has been violated. Mr. Saldana is not exactly a layperson. He's a local contractor who should know the pyramid rules. If he does have to rebuild, his costs should be considerably lower than typical since he's his own contractor. My husband and I want Mr. Saldana to have a beautiful home, but the variance he is asking for is a dramatic departure from what was there before. The new construction dwarfs all the other houses on the west side of Little Fresh Pond, especially ours, and changes the character of the community. I fear that this could be a dangerous precedent for future construction on the pond.
Barbara, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we move on, John, you wanted to say, oh, I'm sorry, you've already spoken. We have to move on.
Yeah.
We've got your comments. I'm so sorry.
And you can always submit something in writing if you would like to Candace and she will provide it to us.
Okay, John, you wanted to say something?
Well, I could say, I've also been a builder out here for 40 years and there's absolutely no way that a pyramid is forgotten by any architect or any builder out here. It's one of the most important things that this building department looks for. Unless they get a set of plans that's not showing, you know, that the building department wants exactly on there from the architect. So I have a hard time agreeing that this was just a mistake.
Okay, well, we're going to look at the original documents.
We're going to look at the original plans. It may or may not have been there, but we'll, we'll pull the original plans if the building department stands.
I may have missed, I may have misspoke. The pyramid variance diagrams may have been on the original plans.
Okay, so we would see that and see what happens with that.
Okay.
I, I just have a question for our counsel. Are we within our rights to ask that if any work is in fact underway in violation of a stop work, that that be ceased immediately?
Well, they've got us.
There's a stop work order.
There's a stop work order, so yeah.
But I want to say something. I went to the property this week. There were no, there were no windows installed in the property when I went in the beginning of the week. I now see in the pictures that there are windows installed. Now, maybe that's part of the agreement with the building department to seal up.
To secure a property.
To secure it, but.
I mean, you don't want to see it vandalized.
It's definitely was a change from when I saw it.
An attractive nuisance.
I, I have another comment and, you know, in thinking about all of this and thinking what John just said, if they, if these pyramid calculations are on the plans, that's not your get out of jail free card. And I'm going to tell you why. Because as a seasoned contractor, seeing that you are building something outside of the pyramid envelope, you would go to the building department, if you were an upright person, and you would say, hey, wait a minute, you missed something. You wouldn't just go, ah, now I can do whatever I want. So, you know, I think there's a lot more to the story here. I think you need to pull the plans. This is my application, so this is what I want to see. I want to see you pull the plans from the building department. I want to see you pull the plans from the building department. I want to see exactly what those are. I think you should bring your client in here to speak to us and I think you should bring the architect in here to speak to us. I'd like to see them in the next hearing. We're holding this open as far as I'm concerned. That's the motion that I'm gonna be making.
Second.
And I think that we are going to look at this application with a very, with a cherry eye and make sure...
And you also are gonna submit estimated costs on, you know, a correction of the... Okay.
Well, you know, and that's, that's an interesting point because as the last speaker said, the contractor, the, this is the, the contractor's building their own house. So, you know, I don't expect to see exorbitant costs to remove what's been built.
Didn't look to me like there was electrical in or plumbing or anything else. Looked just like there were walls.
And I'm gonna tell you honestly, that, that for me is going to be an element of this application that is not gonna hold a ton of water.
Okay.
The cost.
Give us a sense of when we should reschedule this.
We're looking at 11:20. 11:20.
Yep. Second.
Wait, I'm gonna see if that's okay with them.
All right, I think...
We're full on the second.
Well, not anymore because you took two applications off of that. I had, I had thought that two reopens were gonna be on that day.
Okay.
So now you're down to 10.
Are you able to come back on October 2nd?
No, I'm gonna wanna see the original plan. I'm gonna handle that.
It's gonna take time.
Yeah, I agree.
11:20, is that okay with you guys?
All right.
And then speak with the own, we speak with the applicant, speak with the architect. If those dates aren't good for them, you can always get back in touch with Candace and we can move it to another date. But I'm gonna move to hold the, the hearing on this application open to November 20th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Ruben.
Aye.
Mr. Mastadia.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Chair of ZIOI, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. What? 11:20 minutes more? Okay, good. Okay, number eight on the agenda, the application of 911 Flanders Road LLC and 39 Flanders Road LLC, 911 and 39 Flanders Road Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-138-2-31, 32 and 33. Oh, it's re-advertised, so I need to read it, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Applicant request, oh geez. This is huge.
It's gonna take 20 minutes.
Anyone want a bathroom break? Take it now. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code. One, for the vacant lot, 9 Flanders Road Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-138-2-31. Section 330-203B, three exempt and prohibited signs to allow an off-premise freestanding sign. Two, section 330-205B, one general provisions to allow a freestanding sign where there is no building on the property. Three, section 330-206B zoning districts for a proposed dual pole sign, 36 square feet where 32 square feet in area is allowed. Four, section 330-207A illuminated signs for an internally illuminated LED price sign where only OPEC background translucent letters and symbols and white light sources is permitted. And five, section 330-210.1C design guidelines for a proposed dual pole sign consisting of five colors where no more than three colors should be used, one for background, a contrasting color for the lettering, and a third color perhaps for emphasis such as for borders, shading, et cetera. Two, for the proposed gas station, 11 Flanders Road, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-138-2-3. Section 330-78 placement of accessory buildings and uses in non-residential districts to allow accessory off-street parking area to be located against the rear property line where a minimum setback of 10 feet from all property lines is required. Two, section 330-83H12 to allow off-street parking within the required 50-foot front and transitional front yard. Three, section 330-132ABC filling station to allow a filling station to be located 320 feet from the Peconic River and 360 feet from the Goodwill AME Zion Church where such building shall be within 500 feet of the site, to allow the southerly driveway to be plus or minus three feet River Lee Avenue from side property line where a minimum of 20 feet is required. Section 330-203A8 exempt and prohibited signs to allow four business signs on each of the pumps where only signs not exceeding two square feet and required to be posted pursuant to federal and state law are allowed. Five, section 330-205H for a sign with internally illuminated logo along the three-side edges of the canopy with a height of 24 inches where canopy signs and logos are limited to the edge of the canopy bib with a maximum height of six inches. And section 330-207A illuminated signs for three internally, internally illuminated signs with illuminated logo along each of the canopy sides in a village business VB zoning districts where internally illuminated signs are only allowed in highway business HB zoning districts. And six, section 330-210.1C for three proposed canopy signs consisting of five colors where no more than three colors should be used, one for background, a contrasting color for the lettering, and a third color perhaps for emphasis such as for border shading, et cetera. And three, for the proposed convenience store, 39 Flanders Road, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-138-2-33. Section 330-95 schedule of spaces where 30, schedule of off-street parking space requirements for non-residential uses to allow zero parking spaces where 31 is required. Section 330-205A1 and C3 general provisions for a proposed internally illuminated wall sign facing the side yard where only wall signs facing a public street frontage are allowed, for an internally illuminated wall sign in village business where only said signs are allowed in highway business, and to allow illuminated window sign where the town code for window signs does not allow such signs to be illuminated. Section 330-207B illuminated signs, section 330-203A10 exempt and prohibited signs for an interior illuminated window sign ATM in village business where only said signs are allowed in highway business, for an interior illuminated window sign facing the side yard where only such window sign shall face the public street or parking lot, and 330-210.1C for a proposed wall sign consisting of five colors where no more than three colors should be used, one for background, a contrasting color for the lettering, and a third color perhaps for emphasis such as for border shading, et cetera, and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
I'm sweating.
Well done.
What did you say? All right, are any of you attorneys?
Yes, sir.
You are?
These two are not.
Okay, so...
We have two other experts if they want to raise their hands too.
All right, are they going to, are they gonna testify?
So if you want to, they can raise their hands too.
Okay, okay. So let me swear on everybody who's not an attorney. Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, so individually state your name and addresses, please.
Nicholas Buscemi, PE, High Point Engineering with an office located at 1860 Wall Woodman Road, Suite 600 Melville, New York, 11747.
Nicholas, can you explain your last name?
B as in boy, U S C E M as in Michael, I.
Okay. Do you, sir?
Andrew Slepoy, S L E P O Y.
S L E P O Y.
I am a member of 43 and 39 Flanders Road LLC. The address, 230 Atlantic Avenue, East Lynbrook, L Y N B R O K.
So you're a member of the LLC?
Yes.
Okay.
The honors.
Yes, I get it.
You gotta get to a mic.
You have to come up to the, a mic so we can...
Should we move that podium or not?
Joshua Herman, that's H E R M A N. I'm with Stonefield Engineering, 584 Broadway, Suite 310, New York, New York.
Okay.
Jefferson Murfree, 1 Bayberry Lane, Sag Armor.
Okay, and could you please state your name and address?
Certainly. Keith Brown, Law Firm Brown Altmann LLP, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301 West, Melville, New York, 11747. Good evening, Madam Chair.
Hello.
Members of the board.
Okay, so are you making the presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Sure, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present this application this evening. As a matter of housekeeping, the public notice was performed in accordance with the town code and affidavits of mailing and posting which is submitted to Anthony Trezor a few moments ago. The application seeks area and sign variance relief to raise the remnants of the existing gasoline station and auto body shop at 9-11 Flanders Road and raise the retail store located at 39 Flanders Road in order to develop a new state-of-the-art gas station and convenience store on the subject parcels. With me this evening, we met Mr. Nicholas Buscemi, PE of High Point Engineering, our project engineer. Behind him, we have Joshua Herman from Stonefield Engineering and Design, our project safety expert, Jefferson Murfree, AICP, the project professional planning consultant, as well as Andrew Slepoy, representative of the owners who have owned the property since circa 1965. Prior to tonight's hearing, our office submitted the following documents in further support of the application, which included, among other things, an aerial plan prepared by High Point Engineering, a color site rendering prepared by High Point Engineering, exterior perspective renderings prepared by Cornerstone Engineering and Design Services dated September 10th of this year, color elevations of the convenience store and fueling canopy prepared by High Point Engineering dated May 21st of this year, and the precedent where this board has granted similar area and sign variance relief. Just for a little context, the property is located on the southeast side of the traffic circle at the intersection of Flanders and River Lee Avenue as comprised of three lots, 9, 11 and 39 Flanders Road. The property at 9-11 Flanders Road was previously used as gasoline filling station beginning in circa 1969. An auto service station was added in February of 2004 and, as many of you know, the site has been vacant for nearly 15 years and has fallen into a state of disrepair as remnants of the former gas station and building remain on the lot. The abutting lot at 39 Flanders Road is improved with a now vacant 3,396 square foot retail building, which is located approximately 3.9 feet from Flanders Road. As can be seen from the aerial plan that we submitted, the surrounding area includes gas stations and other commercially used properties. Directly to the east of the property along Flanders Road is a vacant commercial building. Directly south of the property is a coffee house, a Budget Inn Hotel, and the New York State Police Troop headquarters. Southwest of the property and across River Lee Avenue is a professional office building. Directly north and across the street from the subject properties is the McDonald's Restaurant with drive-thru. A 76 branded gasoline station and accessory convenience store is located at 7 Peconic Avenue Riverside, which is located on the north side of the traffic circle at the intersection of Peconic Avenue and Flanders Road. Directly west of the property, on the west side of the traffic circle, at the intersection of Lake Avenue and Woodhull Avenue, is a Shell gasoline station with an accessory convenience store at 9 Lake Avenue. The applicant seeks to raise existing structures and develop the property with a new state-of-the-art gasoline station and a 3,010 square feet, square foot convenience store. The gasoline station will have six dispensers for a total of 12 fueling positions, a new canopy, a monument sign, as well as associated site landscape. As some of you who are on the board may recall, the project was first heard by the board back in January 20th of 2022. At that time, the plan sought to develop both a gas station and a convenience store at just 9 and 11 Flanders Road only. The abutting lot known as 39 Flanders Road was not included with the project. In 2022, the applicant had requested extensive variance relief, which included but was not limited to a use variance to allow the convenience store in the highway business district, an interpretation that the convenience store was customary and incidental to the gasoline station, a lot area variance, numerous setback variances for the gas pumps in convenience store, and a pyramid variance for the encroachments related to the convenience store. Now, since that time, in January of 2022, the project has gone, undergone a full secret review by the town's planning board and the town's outside traffic consultant, AKRF. We note that AKRF reviewed the applicant's traffic impact statement for this project and by letter last revised July 19th of 2024, AKRF found that the applicant addressed all traffic-related comments and agreed with Stonefield Engineering's conclusions that the number of parking stalls provided were sufficient to meet the maximum projected parking demand and that the project will not have a negative impact on the surrounding roadway network. When this project was before the planning board, just a few months ago in July of this year, the applicant presented significant plan revisions to address the comments raised by the planning board and the planning department. Most notably, the abutting lot located at 39 Flanders Road to the east was added to the overall project, which will be discussed in more detail by the project experts. The revised plan now provides the gasoline station entirely, entirely on the highway business zone, that's where gasoline stations are specially permitted use by the planning board, and includes to get the convenience store on the village business zoned lot where the same is permitted as of right. Importantly, the inclusion of 39 Flanders Road eliminates almost all of the variances where previously before this board back on January 20th of 2022, except those caused by site constraints or the irregular shape of the lot. First, it increases the total lot project area from 39,567 square feet to 56,192 square feet, which is compliant. Second, the current plan eliminates variance requests for the overall lot area, the need for front yard setback relief for the fueling canopy, side and rear yard setback relief for the convenience store, and the pyramid encroachment variance.
Go through that a little bit more slowly. I was just taking notes. Go ahead. It eliminates what?
A number of variances. I'll get to the, I just want to show the modifications made.
Oh, I know, but I just, could you just say them again one more time?
Lot area.
Uh huh.
Front yard setback for the canopy.
Okay.
Side and rear yard setback for the convenience store, and the pyramid encroachment variance. And finally, most importantly, must be stressed that the convenience store on a separate village business zone lot eliminates the use variance entirely. So I'd like to run through the area variance relief requested and then I'll get through the side variance second. The first variance is the filling station is located 320 feet from Peconic River and 360 feet from the Goodwill AME Zion Church, where the distance of 500 feet is required. As previously noted, the subject site has historically been used as a gasoline station since 1969, and two other gas stations are in the immediate vicinity. Further, we note that the 76 gas station located at 7 Peconic is located closer to the Peconic River than the existing, than the subject property. We submit that the granting of this relief will not change the established character of the area. The applicant also seeks relief for the location and number of off-street parking stalls, which will be addressed by our traffic safety expert as well as Mr. Buscemi. The site has been designed in a manner that provides safe onsite circulation and given that the subject site has two 50-foot front yard setback requirements, because they're two lots, is not feasible to achieve this benefit without the variance relief. Next, the variance is also needed for the parking stalls to be located against the rear property line, which again is just a technicality because of the two lots. As can be seen on the site plan, which is down there, the color site plan resting against the podium, the dividing line between 11 Flanders Road and 39 Flanders Road is considered a rear yard property line.
So, I'm sorry, point that out, please?
Sure.
The rear yard property line?
So because of the two lots, it creates a rear property line, a rear yard. Granting this relief will have no impact on any of the properties or to the surrounding area as the parking stalls located at the rear of 11 Flanders Road will be used in connection with the convenience store at 39 Flanders Road.
Does this show the two of the lots being merged?
Yes.
No, it's just separate lots. Separate ownership?
No, but there's three lots. Are any of them being merged?
The little one in the front.
No, so you have lot 33 here, lot 32, which is this, and then lot 31, which is this little...
And there's a reason for non-merge?
Yes, there's a legal reason based on the ownership.
So, so wait, these, these parking stalls, these are the ones that go up against the convenience store?
No, the ones across the top, one through eight.
One through eight? Okay.
Mr. Buscemi will go through all that in a second.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea of what...
Sure.
What each of the variances are.
Yeah.
So...
Okay.
We submit that granting the variance relief for these stalls, one through eight, will have no impact on the properties. In regard to the overall number of parking stalls, the building department calculated the parking requirement for each lot separately. By doing so, the call of the case indicates zero stalls are provided on 39 Flanders Road where 31 stalls are actually going to be, where 31 stalls are required, excuse me. However, shared parking will be provided throughout the property using 31 stalls that are provided on 11 Flanders Road. As will be discussed by Joshua Herman of Stonefield Engineering, the number of parking stalls will accommodate the maximum projected parking demand onsite. If I could just anticipate Mr. Arvind's question. So with, because of the, the legal issues that we can't merge the lots, what we've done in other cases is just on a covenant to go, to run with the land that says that the lots would have to be sold together, could never be sold separately as a way to get around the merger issue.
I mean, I, we had talked about it at the first time we had the public hearing too, before you had the third lot. And I can understand the benefit, I can understand why you can't merge the VB and the highway business, but I'm not sure I understand why you couldn't just change the ownership of, I mean, it's, that's way down the line, but I, that was in...
No, I appreciate it. And also the fact is we would lose the zoning designation too.
The zoning designation of what?
Of the second lot. What's the merger have?
The VB and the village. The VB, right, and the village, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And that site has always been used as retail for as long as we can remember.
I think she's talking about the corner portion.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the...
Oh, the sliver, okay.
I'm like lost already.
We don't have an issue with that because they're both own HB.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was saying. I don't want you to merge the HB and the VB.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I'm trying to, we're... So now onto the signage variances. Before the project experts discuss the revised plan, I'd like to stress that the applicant has expended significant time and resources in the last four years on this project. Most recently, the newly submitted elevations included in this application provide an enhanced architectural style based on the newly constructed West Hampton Store located in the Village of West Hampton. The convenience store and fueling canopy will both have a matching charcoal-colored shingled roof, and the convenience store will include columns and have a cultured stone base. As far as the ground sign, it's a new monument-style ground identification sign, which is up front by the circle. It's right up here. Just the location of this.
Location will be off, yeah, off the screen.
And what does it look like? I can't see, but yeah. Okay, with the gas prices.
Yes.
Is that illuminated?
External, no, really.
Okay.
The new monument-style ground identification sign will include a wood carved 7-Eleven logo and a display of the price of the gasoline. For the record, the portion of the sign with the price of the gasoline no longer includes a digital LED lighting. The size of the sign will be 36 square feet. We note that the sign would be code compliant at 32 square feet if it weren't for the welcome to Riverside portion of the sign, and if we remove that, it would make it compliant. We submit that the four square feet is the minimus, given the size that the sign will be setback 20 feet from the property line, and will not have an impact on the commercial character of the surrounding area. The sign will be externally illuminated, and the color scheme and overall design will be substantially similar to the freestanding sign that was granted for the 7-Eleven we just indicated at 192 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bayes. Sorry, that's a different one. We note that 192 Hampton Bayes Realty LLC was decided by this board, docket number D022075. Decision was July 21st of 2022, where relief was granted to allow the sign to be setback six feet from the front yard, 20 feet required, and allow four color signs to be used where a minimum, sorry, where a maximum of three colors are permitted. Now, with regard to the wall signs, the applicant also seeks relief for the wall signs at 39 Flanders Road. In regard to the 7-Eleven wordmark sign at the front entrance of the convenience store labeled Sign 5, the variance relief is requested as the sign faces a side yard. The variance is needed as the convenience store has been laid out to complement the gasoline filling station. In any event, the granting of this relief will have no negative impact on the surrounding area for the abutting gas station. Finally, relief is requested to allow internally illuminated wall signs where internally illuminated is only permitted in the Highway Business District. Included in our free hearing submission are examples of cases where this board has granted similar relief. For instance, directly across the street, the McDonald's Restaurant, relief was granted to allow four internally illuminated freestanding signs under the application Lake Creek Properties LLC, decision number D023141 dated 12/7/23. That's 30 Flanders Road Riverside. Similarly, in the application of F&amp;E Realty Company, relief was granted to allow for an internally illuminated monument sign at a gas station located in the OD zoning district, decision number D012747 dated July 15th of 2010, located at 172 West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bayes. And it was a correction later by decision D012758 dated August 5th of 2010. With that, I thank you for your time and your attention. I would like to call our first witness, Mr. Nicholas Buscemi, PE, who will discuss the application and the requested variances. Thank you.
So I think Mr. Brown did a good job of giving you a quick run-through, but I would just like to expand on that a little bit. I'll try to keep it brief, just to provide that quick run-through. So the site, as designed, is on the corner of River Lee Avenue and Flanders Road. There'll be two accesses, two access points to the site, one on Flanders Road and one on River Lee Avenue. The one on Flanders Road is located 242.4 feet away from the traffic circle, and the access on River Lee Avenue is located 130.5 feet away from the traffic circle. The layout which is shown here has undergone many iterations to ensure the safest layout for both motorists and pedestrians. The site will benefit from fully ADA-compliant sidewalks, ramp, restroom facilities, as well as provide ample space within the store for handicap accessibility. In addition to a safe layout, the site will benefit from landscaping, including 28 arbivites, six ironwood trees, and 47 perennials of three different species, which will only enhance the corner with the 14,000 square feet of green space, or 27% of the city. The ID sign as shown behind me, as Mr. Brown mentioned earlier, has been modified to remove the LED price signs. Sign is to be externally illuminated and the price will be exchangeable.
That's the monument sign?
Correct.
Okay, that's the first of your signage variances?
Correct.
Yeah. I'd like you to go through like what the variances are again.
Yeah.
Because I, because I found that overview was a great overview, but it kind of blew by me.
Yeah, so I think.
So are you going to talk about area variances or signage or both?
I'll do both, so I'll break it down. Let's, I guess we can handle the parking first, right? I think it's breaking down into three, parking area and sign. So the area one, we'll start that because I think it's just the simplest, it gets it existing condition. That is with respect to the distance from the.
I don't have my magnifying glass. This is going to be very difficult to follow.
When Nick calls it out, I'm going to point it out.
So the first one is, the area variance is for the distance between the Zion Church and the Pecanic River. So that's an existing condition. Nothing we've done or nothing we can do will affect that.
Okay.
So that's the first one.
What, and what is the, what is the necessity of the, what is required and what?
500.
So it's 500 feet, and we're at 320 and 360. That's just the nature of, of the location of them.
Okay, hold on. And which is which?
So the Pecanic River is 320 feet, and the Goodwill AMZ Zion Church is 360 feet.
Okay.
And that's from the whole site or from which of the uses?
It would be the nearest point of, so if you're going west, it's your nearest point to the west. If you're going east, it's your nearest point to the east.
I understand that, but is it?
The boundary line?
The boundary line.
It's not from the.
Yes, okay.
Okay, good, got that.
Okay, so the next one is going to be.
Those are pre-existing.
Correct, that's just the nature of where the site is located. The parking variances, so that's, it's, there was like four different one, it's all for parking, so that's going to be your.
Just four of them, okay.
Yes, so it'll be. Minimum front yard setback, so where 50 feet is required, we are 10 feet from Flanders Road and 42.9 feet from River Lee Avenue.
The parking spaces?
Correct, so if you look at parking stalls one through eight, that's 10 feet from Flanders Road. And then if you look at parking stall nine, which is on River Lee Avenue near the southwest corner.
That's, that's nine through 18?
Correct, so stall number nine would be 42.9 feet away from the right of way.
And what's the required?
50 feet as well for 50.
For both of them?
Correct, front yard setbacks.
Yeah.
You also have a location of parking to the rear yard. That is zero feet due to the parking right in front of the convenience store. So it's going to be the rear yard for Lot 32.
Okay.
But it's considered the side yard for Lot 32.
Lot 32, parking zero where 50 is required?
Correct.
What's that?
Because it's on the lot line.
30, 33, is that Lot 33?
Correct, the most westerly lot is Lot 33.
Okay.
This is 32, this is 33.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last parking variance is going to be for the minimum number of stalls. For simplicity, I'm just going to say the total stalls required for all three lots is going to be 36 stalls. We've provided 31. So you could break them down by each lot, but I think it's most beneficial to look at it.
Where's the 31st stall?
It is the land bank one, so if you look at the trash enclosure, there's a white box with a 31 inside of it. Right where Mr. Brown is. Tough to see.
There's a 31 in there?
Right there, that white number.
I see it right there.
Where is it?
Yeah, it's in the green, it's that white box, it's the number 31.
So why is it in the green?
This here?
If it's a parking spot?
So it's land banked, so, yeah, you receive the benefit of additional greenery, and then if it's deemed necessary, you can build it out and it's designed that way, but it's just, it's, it's not needed.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the parking, and then the signs break down to, not too bad. So you're going to have the main ID sign, so that's going to be for the five colors, where only three are permitted.
Okay.
You're going to have an area variance where 32 square feet is allowed.
And you've got 36.
Provided where four square feet of that.
Now, you said that's because of the welcome to Flanders or welcome to Riverside?
Yes.
And you would actually be at the 32 if you removed that?
Correct.
Okay, is that required, the welcome to Riverside?
That was something that we had discussed with some of the town officials, that they liked the idea of that.
Okay, anything else with regard to that monument sign?
So there was the 33-207 was for the illuminated signs where it said internally illuminated LED signs were not permitted.
So you took that out?
That's gone.
It's external, okay, so any other variance that you need for that sign?
You got the five colors on there, right?
Yeah, I got the five colors and the area variance, that's it?
Correct.
Okay, perfect.
Internally illuminated signs?
On that proposed one?
On the monument.
On the proposed monument, correct.
We're talking about the monument first.
Yes, all exterior.
Okay, this is monument.
What's the argument in support of the five colors versus three?
So.
Is it a branding issue?
Well, yeah, so 7-Eleven branding is the orange, red, and green with the white background, there you go. You know, what's interesting actually on that cup is the orange and red are actually very different, but you can tell the difference when you look at those signs. It's not as, as, you know.
Pronounced, yeah.
Pronounced as it appears. And as Mr. Brown mentioned earlier, I believe there was another application where four was approved.
And, and the other two colors. I just want to point out, the other two colors are really more the background, it's the black and the white that, that are background, so it's kind of a vagary of the code.
Okay, got it.
We only have three colors in the brand itself.
Right, because white, you're not considering a color?
White and the black background.
Yeah. Okay, so those, but they're being considered that according to the code?
Right, from the code's point of view, yes.
Sure, if you're verbatim, yes.
Okay.
The other signs are going to be to allow four business signs on each of the pumps where only signs not exceeding two square feet are required to be posted pursuant to the federal law.
Business signs.
So what are you, what are you proposing?
So, so as shown on.
Yeah, show us a picture.
It's okay, I'm just going to bring this up, I think this might be easiest.
It's hard to see from far away.
So, these are your pump topper signs, so these are just standard industry, you know, you go to a mobile site, they all have pump dispenser decals on them. They're mostly decals, I don't, most municipalities don't consider them signs, they do consider them decals, however, understanding that this is part of that, this is what we're talking about when we're talking about those pumps.
Does it also have like, you know, in some of the places, they've got like advertisements, like a, a little TV?
Correct, no.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Some other guests, I should just point out, have extremely large logo signs on their pumps. This is just simply on top of the pump, it's part of it, it's very.
So the variance is to have those signs on the pumps?
Again, from a strict reading of the code.
From a strict reading of the code, there's only four pumps?
There is six.
There are six, but you said four business signs on the pumps. What does that mean?
So I believe they're treating it as two on one side, two on the other, so four total, so one, two.
For each dispenser.
For each dispenser.
So on each, six of the, of the.
So six times four, 24.
Six times four, right.
But again, they're stickers, I would, I would argue that, they're not signs.
They're decals.
Okay.
Okay.
They're not raised, they're not?
Nope.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, they're, they're flush, just stickers. There's literally people who, from 7-Eleven who come at the end of the project and go.
Okay.
The next one is for the sign illuminated along three sides of the canopy with a height of 33 inches. I just want to clarify this, I'm not entirely sure. Where that 33-inch number came from, the fascia here will be a three-foot fascia. So the sign itself is probably, it's about two feet. So it's about 24-inch sign.
That's illuminated, right?
That is proposed to be internally illuminated. And that. As shown here, one, two, and three.
And, and the size, what was the size aspect again?
It is, I have it written down, 30, I think it's 33 inches. Yeah, no, so it's two foot by 12 foot 8 inches, that's what I was referring to. It's 25.3 square feet.
Two feet by what?
Two foot tall by 12 foot 8 inches wide.
12 feet 8 inches wide.
And what's the requirement, what's required or allowed?
Maximum height of six inches, which as Mr. Herman will be able to explain, there's, there is traffic safety reasons behind the size of the signage.
So six inches would be like two-thirds of this sheet of paper?
Correct, if this is an eight-inch piece of paper, six inches, which is right here.
I know.
It's 11, that one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
You caught me.
Well, it's 11 by, it's eight and a half by 11, so take two and a half inches off of this, and that's the size of your sign. Who's going to see that?
Nobody. And that's, so essentially after he read the 30-minute spiel, it breaks down to those, you know, if you, so it definitely seems scarier when you read it.
And that's it in terms of signage?
Correct.
We're done? Okay, okay.
I do also want to just point out, sorry, so there was originally an ATM sign that's, that was posted in the window, we got rid of that, we understood that that was.
No illuminated signs in the windows.
Correct. Took it out.
And, and also, you want to talk about the, the sign, the small sign facing Flanders? That's on the same side, there's a canopy sign that is almost redundant, so we're willing to concede that one to.
Is there just one monument?
Just one monument.
One monument?
Yep.
So you can't even see the one that Keith's talking about on that rendering, it's, this is that sign that faces Flanders, so we're.
It would be, would be somewhere around here, but it's blocked.
All right, so to you with the welcome to Riverside?
I will tell you, we had two meetings with town officials, and they quote, "love the idea."
But if it gets you over the hump, how committed to it are you?
I, I thought it was a nice idea because it spruces up, you know, that corner.
If it's going to engender some community opposition, I would think just get rid of it and you're in compliance.
Either way.
If people don't want their, their, their hamlet to be recognized, then so be it.
Or, or they don't want the welcome to Flanders to be associated with a gas station.
Okay.
Point.
There you go.
I think you got some reaction.
The gas station for 50 years.
It's out.
Done.
Okay, that was easy.
It's the easy one.
Okay.
So, just so I understand that. I was just going to say, where is this in the planning review?
The zoning board, without hearing anything, just eliminated the welcome to Riverside.
Flanders.
It's Riverside.
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 Flanders, that needs to be stated.
Oh, okay.
This board could, will have the discussions, but we're also acknowledging in planning, we understand that there's opposition, I get it.
Is that what planning wanted?
Yeah, I mean, I sat down with Janice, and we also understand that this is a gateway to the community. It also has the zoning behind it, had a gas station, so we're looking to do what we can. And when they revised the plan and gave us a lot more green space, I mean, this plan is much exponentially better than where we started.
There's no question about that, but, but is it?
But I can't, if this board's not going to grant the relief, then okay, but I'm just saying that there was some.
There was a reason. There was a reason.
Thought that when they...
The town wanted it.
Yeah, and is there a rea- is there a reason that you couldn't have a separate sign that says welcome to Riverside? And that could be something to be provided by the applicant?
Yeah.
Separate and apart from the seven eleven?
I just wanted to make sure I got that on the record.
Okay, but, but I think we could accomplish the same goal without tying the two of them together.
That would be fine by, by us if it's fine with the community and just say that we would also landscape around it, the whole idea was there was a lot of...
Where is that monument sign gonna be on here?
Yeah, there's a lot of green space on the circle.
Yeah, where is it, pointed out?
The front, the lawn, so the idea was to spruce up the lawn area?
It's gonna be right there.
But surrounded by landscaping.
Okay. For people who are entering in at, at this direction, would be seeing that, so there's more than enough room elsewhere to put something else that doesn't attach Riverside to a gas station and a seven eleven, that would be, you know...
It may require a variance for a second sign in that area, but that would be one that could perhaps be more palatable.
And maybe could be within the scope of, or the character of other signage used by the town, maybe the town could work with.
And they could put the duck in there too, right?
But I, I like that we could...
We're very open to that.
We could get rid of that relief.
Okay.
I think that's an issue we should also hear from the audience about, since there's energy there.
Yes, for sure, we're just exploring different things.
So now we're just gonna be looking, with regard to the monument, we're just gonna be looking at the five colors.
All right, so what looked like an enormous amount of relief breaks down to parking?
Correct.
You know, the setbacks from the roads in the rear yard, and then the minimum number of parking slots, and, and the signage that you just went through, am I missing anything from this?
Um, quick question.
Anything, Katie, that we're missing from this?
I don't know if there's anything missing, but I did have a question with respect to the parking, and maybe you addressed it before, but when we previously had this without that extra lot, you were providing thirty spaces where thirty-six are required, and now it says zero or thirty-one, is that just because there's an additional lot and there's still, the parking's just on another lot?
On another lot, yeah.
Okay.
And the feedback we got was the desire, if you remember, we had a home plate design of the building itself, which led its own, you know, issues. So with, by adding another lot, we were able to slide the entire convenience store building back, which was very, you know, met with a lot of pleasure, that this was a real enhancement.
It was really problematic when it was all jammed onto the one lot, there's no question, yeah.
But to say zero or thirty-one is required isn't really accurate, 'cause there is thirty-one spaces somewhere else.
Right, and that's why I talked it, talked about it as all three lots, 'cause I think it just maybe makes sense more than it is.
A little bit of a difficulty because they're separately, you know, we can't merge them.
Correct.
So it needs to be, you know...
Well, the planning board, any, any site plan, special exception approval granted by the planning board, will address it through the resolution and any legal documents that were required, 'cause we gotta acknowledge that the parking is located on another lot.
Right.
And this, this board did that, I don't know how many you were with, with us, but with Edgewater, remember, we had had like some zero lot line, parking and parking on other lots, okay.
Um, quick question again on the canopy sign, do, are you seeking a variant, do you need a variance with regard to the internal illumination?
I believe we do, yes, and then as well as the number.
As well as the height.
Right. And colors, do we need colors on the canopy?
No, it's only three color, it's only two colors.
It's technically three.
It's three, technically three, 'cause it's on a white background.
With the white, okay, okay.
So there you go.
Twenty-four hours, I assume, right?
Correct.
Are there light restrictions on the hours or some?
There are dark sky requirements on lighting when we review this, we get a whole lighting plan, so...
Correct.
Fully compliant, no spillover at all.
Yeah, it'll be dark sky compliant with the...
It has to be within the...
Yeah, correct, it's like there's a wall on the property line, yep.
Anthony, is there anything you'd like to, before we explore this further, you wanna make any comments about this?
No, I mean, what I would say is, you know, we're doing this by the book here, we were going through the SECRE process, they've submitted a new application to this board, we re-coordinated, the planning board said they want a lead agency.
Right.
So we're gonna do the SECRE in the near future, and, and we'll also provide, we have referral, the planning board will provide new referral comments on this new act.
Okay, okay, which we haven't gotten, because you're gonna be doing the SECRE soon and then a referral application.
Well, this board has to do a lead agency resolution.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to, we have to, that's right, we have to put it on our agenda to do the, okay. Okay, um...
Can I conclude, Mr. Bishami?
Okay, now who are we up to?
Yes, Mr. Herman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bishami.
Thank you.
Hi.
Everyone, so I, my name is Josh Herman, I am a traffic engineer with Stonefield Engineering and Design, and I'll, I too will keep my testimony brief.
Can you speak up, please?
Yes.
Hold the mic close.
Hold the microphone close. Is that better?
A little bit, no, yes, okay, yes.
All right, all right, so my office prepared a traffic impact study that was submitted to the town and reviewed by the town's traffic consultant, and all the comments that were received have been addressed in our traffic study, and the conclusion of that traffic study is that the proposed development would not impact traffic operations in the area and on the surrounding network. In terms of the proposed plan compared to the previous plan, the driveways are pulled further away from the roundabout compared to the previous plan, which would improve safety as well. Regarding the parking variance, so the, as was stated before, the proposed development has a requirement of thirty-six spaces and thirty-one spaces are provided on the site, we have, we have conducted observations at other seven eleven locations in the area, and based on our observations, the maximum anticipated parking demand here would be thirteen spaces, so the proposed thirty-one spaces would be more than sufficient to accommodate the peak demand, I should also note that oftentimes people who are filling up their car, they'll run in to the convenience store just to, you know, get a drink as well, so those could be considered additional parking spaces as well, so when incorporating those, the site would technically, or would, would functionally provide approximately forty-three spaces for parking, so parking on the site would be accommodated by the proposed parking demand.
Yeah, it's, move this thing closer to you.
It doesn't have to find room anyway.
Uh, there we go, so the proposed parking on the site would be, would, would suffice for the proposed park, for the anticipated maximum parking demand.
Did you talk in part of your studies to turns, like left turns, right turns, coming out, in and out of the, the access points?
Yes, uh, yes, the traffic study evaluated the driveways, and every, all the driveways would operate at level of service C or better during peak hours, and that conclusion was...
What's let, what's that?
Level of service D or better, so traffic is evaluated between levels of service A and F. Typically, level of service D or better is considered an acceptable traffic level of service. The traffic report concluded that the driveways would operate at level of service C or better, and that, so that's an acceptable operation, and that conclusion was reviewed.
Is there, is there a requirement that you only make a right turn, you can't make a left, I mean, what is, is that the way it works?
Yes, so on the driveway at Riverlay Ave, on Riverlay Avenue, that is a right turn out only. The driveway on Flanders Road is full movement driveway, and there is the two-way left turn lane provided within the median there.
Okay.
Can I just get you to clarify, the, is your request relying on the notion that people who are filling their cars with gas are using a parking place?
No, I'm just pointing out that that is additional flexibility on the site.
It happens, I think it's additional hazard, actually, so I just want you to know that's how I do that.
People often do it, though, that's the one.
Often do it, and it creates havoc when you're trying to...
Particularly when people are trying to get to the spot and he's in buying, you know, whatever, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But without that, I should just clarify that there is sufficient parking provided outside of those spaces.
Any questions from the board on your presentation, we're gonna open it up to the audience, we will, but let's see their, their full presentation first, okay? Okay, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, great, who's next?
Jeffreyson Murphy, our planning expert. For those who are seen, I apologize.
No, I don't blame you.
First to.
Good evening, everybody, Jeffreyson Murphy, Sag Harbor, New York. It's hard to believe that the last time we were here was in January of twenty-two, I think. And...
Would you speak up and into the microphones, just so people can hear you?
I can speak really loud.
Okay, good, let's, let's hear it.
And, we were last here in January twenty, January twenty-two, and a comment was made by one or two of the board members that resonates with me to this day, and I think that was the goal of what we were trying to achieve when we redesigned this project. And the comment that was made was, can they make it look less corporate? And I think we've gone a long way, have come a long way since January of twenty-two. And I know that you have the five-part test when looking at granting a variance, I don't know if you want me to recite them into the record or not, probably not, you probably have them ingrained, but I look at this as, as a balanced test in terms of community character, environmental protection, and design, and good design forgives a lot of those factors. I believe the variances being sought are minimal, we are greatly exceeding the landscaping requirement that's required in the code, either by adding new landscaping or preserving what's already there. We've also removed all ambiguity about the use, there's no longer the accessory use question, no use variance is being sought because it's no longer needed. And when we tried to go forward in looking at the sign package, the corporate image was obviously very important to the seven eleven corporation, but we also know about what the board direction was to us, and we got rid of the flat roof canopy, made it a pitch roof. If you remember the old seven eleven corporate image, they had their green and orange racing stripes around the flat canopy, gone. We really tried to achieve compatibility with the local area by the architectural design of both of the structures. And could we add additional parking, perhaps, but that also decreases your impervious coverage, or increases your impervious coverage, rather. And we're in the aquifer protection overlay district, we're in the pine bairns compatible growth area, and we're in proximate location to the Pecanic River, and we rather have to see a large amount of landscaping than what we believe to be unnecessary parking. In terms of community character, we are obviously going to provide the state-of-the-art gasoline storage tanks as required by Suffolk County Department of Health, and also Department of Environmental Conservation with double-wall tanks and monitors. Kevin, I don't know if you remember this, back when I was in office, the gas station is under construction next to the Macy's Shopping Center, had a major MTBE spill, and we were really worried that that spill was gonna make it to Shinnecock Bay, that's how bad MTBE is. And the reason why I say that is that the property owner has already had a groundwater, a soil test done, there was no MTBE leak from the site. The tanks have been removed, we're gonna install whatever the current technology is with double wall and all the sensors. The only thing that was found was some engine oil, and as Kevin knows, it's viscous, it doesn't migrate through the soil, it can be easily dug out and will be. In terms of the setbacks, I know that we kind of overlooked this with this property, they're not square, they're not exact rectangles, they're odd-shaped properties that have been assembled, that makes compliance with some of the setback requirements difficult. So we tried to address that as best as possible and minimize the variances that are being requested. So with that, if I have any answers for you, I'd be happy to.
Okay, so before we open it up to the audience, is there any questions from the board?
I think we've gone through it, I think we know what we're looking at.
Yeah, no, I think it's pretty clear what, what we're required to consider.
I'd like to hear from the, I'd like to hear from the community.
Absolutely, but, and I appreciate the fact that we're going to have to do a SECRE resolution, and we're going to wait to hear from your referral letters as from planning.
I'm gonna move the podium so people can look at it at times, okay?
You wanna move these to the other side?
I just pull it out so they can look up, yeah.
Yeah.
Podium?
No, just leave the podium where it is, move the signs, yeah.
You could, you could take that down, we don't really need to see that anymore.
Well, in case somebody wants to refer, we can leave it so.
All right, just leave it on the side, on the floor, on the side.
Leave it on the floor.
Okay. All right, so, this is, again, we're going to try very hard to keep these comments to three minutes each, you know, a lot of people here. We do wanna hear from everybody, you know, but please be mindful of the fact that we still have other applications to consider after this one tonight, so. With that, hold on, let them just reassemble the signs, and if you need reference to one, I'm sure they can pull it out. Okay, so let's start, who, who would like to come forward, go ahead, come up to the podium. Yeah, one at a time, please, are you an attorney?
No, I am not.
All right, let me swear you in, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
Kathleen Cruel, one oh eight Albany Avenue, Flanders, New York.
And how do you spell your last name?
K R U E L.
K, oh, for a K, R, U.
U E L.
Okay, Kathleen, go ahead.
First of all, I've been in, I've been in my home for forty years, we have begged for many things, none of them was a convenience store this large on the circle, where we had over seven hundred car accidents on Flanders Road between March of two thousand twenty-four and March of two thousand twenty-five. There's no way you can pull out of that parking lot that he's saying is gonna be multiple turns, you can't pull out of there and go left, because you have people coming off the circle going pretty fast trying to get through the circle.
This is on Flanders Road, not on Riverhead.
This is on Flanders Road, coming off of the circle.
Okay.
Number two, we already have two gas stations with convenience stores there, Cumberland Farms came in and we did not want them. We have a seven eleven right in Riverhead, we have another seven eleven already in Flanders, why do we want three of them? That we could probably ride our bike to every single one of them. They're coming to you telling you that they're gonna do all these signs, they want, they want zoning for ten feet off a piece of property instead of fifty feet of, piece off a property, that's not right, because once you let them do it, everyone else that wants to build something along there wants to do it too, and then they're gonna use that as the way of saying, oh, no, they let us do it, why wouldn't you let them do it? The traffic, I don't know what time they did the traffic audit, or whatever they did for it, but I'm telling you, I've sat for forty-five minutes trying to get down Flanders Road after, from Ludlam Avenue, which is halfway down, the trackers have, traffic has been backed up to there. We have the people going out to east, all the workers, we're having a problem with them going through our neighborhoods to cut out a light that we're working through our neighborhood and through the town to put a one-way road so that they can't pull in off of Cypress, pull down Polk, and pull out on East Street, because they're waking us up at five o'clock in the morning. The last thing that we need is a huge convenience store on that circle. We've asked for a lot of things, that was never one of them that they did that we wanted, that's nothing that we asked for, that's not anything that we... We've gone to the town board, so I don't know, they did state that the town board was very happy with what they wanna build. We've talked to people on the town board and they were not happy about it going in at all, they mentioned to us maybe putting in a police hub so that the police department, because they're all the way in Southampton, we have one car. All of the seven elevens that I know of in Riverhead and Flanders have cameras in the parking lot because they're unsafe. So how, how do you think this one's gonna be safe when you've got hookers on Rivley Avenue?
All right, well, let's...
And drug addicts, I'm just saying, it's gonna be ten times worse, that's gonna be open, we have homeless living in the woods next to McDonald's, that makes...
We're at three minutes, ma'am.
That's not their problem.
It's not their problem, but it's gonna be more of a problem.
We're at three minutes, if you could wrap up.
Well, I mean, you've right now got a vacant site.
Oblited vacant site.
Oblited vacant site, okay.
And it's been like that for all these years, so why, what many of the people said on our community pages, well, it's better than what we have. How come the people of Flanders and Riverside have to take what is better than what we have, instead of something that we want, we don't want it.
Okay, you know, this is private property, you know, it's private property.
I understand.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathleen. Next? Somebody next? Oh, okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God.
Okay. And your name, please?
Patricia K. Hopkins, seventy-nine Silverbrook Drive, Flanders.
Did you say Hopkins?
Hopkins.
Okay, Patricia.
I have a petition in opposition to the proposed convenience store and gas station. The clerk has a copy. I only have five. And there's four hundred and thirty-seven signatures on the petition. And just a reminder, in probably late thereabouts, two thousand twenty-one, a petition was submitted to the board and also letters. And just a reminder that that was done then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I assume this petition has gone to the planning board as well?
The original one. We're not in public here right now.
Okay, but when you are?
Yes, a hundred percent.
A hundred percent. Just remember that.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lorraine Pacelio.
Let me swear you in, unless you're an attorney.
I'm a retired attorney.
Well, that's okay. We'll hold you to the standard.
You still got to tell the truth.
You better tell the truth.
What is your last name?
Pacelio, P A C E L E O.
What was your first name?
Lorraine.
Lorraine, okay.
I live at twenty-three Nash Avenue in Flanders. I am the president of the Bayview Pines Civic and Taxpayers, have to take that out, Taxpayers Association, Inc., and a member of the CAC Committee of Riverside, Northampton, and Flanders. My personal vote is also the opinion of everybody that I have spoken with, both in the Bayview Pines community and the larger Flanders, Riverside, and Northampton area, and it's a big no. Reasons, as you know, the applicants must prove that these properties have unique circumstances or a unique hardship in order for their variances requested to be approved. I do not believe they have met this burden. Irregular shape was good enough for a prior gas station. That's what they should be able to rebuild, nothing further. They also must prove that granting the variances will not be detrimental to the neighborhood or to the public welfare. The applicants are well aware and have been for many years of the opposition by the community of adding another 7-Eleven, which will make it three within a two-mile radius. When is enough enough? If you know the area, in addition to the 7-Elevens, there are multiple convenience stores, bodegas, as well as multiple gas stations. Another one is not needed. These variances are not based on any unique hardship that this property naturally contains and in fact was self-created by the developer's own design choices. For this reason, I believe the request should be denied. Additionally, granting the variances would be detrimental to the public good, specifically because of the increase in traffic it will cause to an already heavily trafficked, trafficked and accident-prone area, and in fact is the number one location where accidents occur along the Route Twenty-four corridor from the circle, the Riverside Circle, all the way to Montauk Highway. I foiled the accident reports for a one-year period. There were over forty-eight accidents on that circle. That's almost one every week. Additional cars pulling in and out of driveways and at that location can only add more congestion and more accidents. In addition to the increase in traffic, bike and pedestrian accidents, the variance approvals will also have a detrimental effect on the environment. In addition to automobile oils causing more stormwater runoff and exhaust fumes, there would be an increase in noise and light pollution. An additional detriment to the public is the fact that Riverside is a known area for drug dealing, gang-related violence, DWE arrests, assaults, and other criminal mischief. Adding a convenience store would add additional vagrants to the area and certainly would not be aligned with the community's comprehensive town plan that was approved by the community many years ago and which the Town of Southampton Board supports.
Ma'am, we're at three minutes. If you could wrap it up, please.
I'm almost done. The most economic. Not aligned with the. Granting, granting these easements would reward these owners who have taken advantage of the most economically disadvantaged population in all of Southampton, which had been made worse by the applicant's total disregard for the neighborhood by allowing their building and property to deteriorate and blight the community and the neighborhood for over fifteen years. These developers have only one thing in mind, how to ensure a steady stream of income to line there in their investor pockets well into the future. Today, I ask you to hold the line, especially for this community that has suffered for decades and who deserves better. By denying their variance requests will allow the town to try once again to gain control by purchase, which they have done several times, or by eminent domain, and to ensure.
At four minutes, ma'am.
For the public good and revitalization, not car-centric commercial sprawl. As the late, great Robert Redford once said, "The measure of our success will be the condition of which we leave the world for the next generation." And I hope that you guys can honor that and deny these variances and build only what's required under the law. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are you an attorney?
No.
Okay. Do you swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Joanne Long Merrill. My address is forty-two Oaks Avenue in Flanders. I want.
Joanne, how do you spell your last name for me?
L O N G, as in the island. Space, M E R R I L L.
N E R R I L L?
M, as in mother.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I do object to these variances as my predecessors had stated. Further construction of this property should not go forward. Previous applications, as was mentioned, in two thousand twenty-one, we had over a hundred people signing petitions not to have this go forward. I know this is private property, but so is every property that you have to have looked at to say yes for the variances or no for the variances. You are so aptly put by Mr. Leonard, the gatekeepers. You're giving the gatekeepers some kind of assurance here because Flanders Road is the gate to the Hamptons. We do not need an overgrown three-thousand-square-foot building to say, that's what we are. This is Flanders. I'm also, I believe, when that traffic study was done, I don't know if it was done when we do have forty units now of, of low-income housing about to go in, in that area. So was that taken into consideration at that time of your traffic study? I'm not sure. I don't think so. Also, consideration must be taken into account of other areas, the result adding more vehicular and pedestrian traffic. You know what it's like with the trade parade. Everyone here has been stuck in it. You know what it's like when people come out on the summer. Everybody's been stuck on Flanders Road at one point. We get stuck all the time on Flanders Road. I remember as a kid, I'm here since nineteen fifty-nine, when we had to be all the way back by the Big Duck even further because of the traffic situation. That's what we're facing here today. Okay? We're facing the same situation. Not being five hundred feet from the Peconic River? Come on. This is built in nineteen sixty-five. We have changed. We have a lot of more evidence now about the runoff from the oil, from the gas stations, from, I know you said you have protection, but we have sitting vehicles there. That's going right into our river. Let's do something about saving the Peconic River while we're doing this. We don't need another gas station. I'm sorry. We don't. We don't need another convenience store. We don't need, I'm sure, we don't need a 7-Eleven. I'm sure your building to you looks nice. It doesn't look nice to us. You want a nice building? Build it historically. You want to do that like you do in other parts of Southampton? Fine. We are Flanders. We're not the orphans of this town. We have a say. We have a point. And please, do something for us. It is blighted, as you so aptly put. And due to the town not taking care of some blight down there, it remains blighted. Putting a gas station in is not what we wanted. We have.
They don't need a variance for that. They don't need a variance for the convenience store either. You're mixing.
What I'm saying is, you are the gatekeepers, okay? Don't give them the variances for those items. Give them an opportunity to make a smaller version. No, I counted nine illuminations of signs. We do have, if I put nine illuminations down on the corner store in Flanders, I'm sure you'd have something to say about that. So let's keep it in, you know, retrospect, let's keep it in where we can be part of Southampton Town and not be the orphans of your town. That would, well, you don't have to agree to that. Where do you live?
I don't agree with it. I don't agree with it. I don't look at things like that.
But ma'am, if.
Why, he's shaking his head, John. I'm sorry.
I know, I know. But I, I know. But I mean, I think the thing, I think we need to wrap our mind around the idea that.
Wrap the mind around that we were part of the town's green space program.
No, I think we need to wrap our mind around the idea that we're not going, this board is not going to stop the construction of this 7-Eleven. All the, if you heard, like, we went through, what are the variances? Because we wanted to know exactly what are they looking for from us? And most of what they're looking for, yes, there's the signage variances, which that's, you know, if we, if we deny them the signage variances, they just do another different kind of sign and they have the same thing. And then the other ones are mostly parking stalls. Five, no, but they have to have thirty-six, and they're asking us to give them a variance so they can only have thirty-one. So then all they do is put in four more, five more spots, and then they can, then they don't need to get a variance from us. So that's the calculation that we're making.
We will revisit this again when we have multiple.
Right.
Accidents happening on that traffic circle due to this new construction.
Fortunately, we're not.
That's not in our purview.
I know.
Our, our mission is, is much more narrow than the plan.
Yeah.
And I just want you to know, I do not consider Flanders to be a stepchild of the Town of Southampton at all. And please don't ever think that we feel that way.
And we, and please understand that we do take your opinion very seriously. We get what you want for your community because we want the same things for the hamlets that we all live in, very disparate hamlets. I'm in Hampton Bay, Summer in Ottermil. You know, we want that for our own communities, but by the same token.
It has the gateway for Southampton.
Right. But unfortunately, it's a, it's a piece of private property. People can put on it what they want, and they thought that this was a great place to put a 7-Eleven. And you know what? They could put in that 7-Eleven and not come to us for variances. They could do like they did with the Monument and just say, okay, withdrawn.
So we have three 7-Elevens right in a row.
But that's not what we're.
I can't? There are.
But we can sympathize with you. We can absolutely sympathize with you.
Not for the zoning board.
Not the zoning board. We are, we have a narrow thing. We look at variance requests. We don't decide whether this is a business that's appropriate or anything like that.
Yeah.
I, I would like to ask a question of the gentleman who presented the traffic study.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Anthony, I don't know if you know, were the. Additions taken into account when you did the planning, the traffic study?
We did take into account other planned developments within the area. We also do grow our traffic volumes for any other growth that's not necessarily identified at the time of the traffic study or has not yet been approved to account for growth, general growth in traffic due to development.
Okay, but that, it sounds like you're answering a different question. Do you know if those units were accounted for in your traffic study? It sounds like you amp it up in some way to account for what may be extra traffic, but that's a different answer.
Yeah, I don't know if that one is, in particular was, but however, that the growth in traffic was associated, was applied to the.
I can tell you, all proposed projects, they do a FOIL request, and they were required to put that in the traffic study. I'll also tell you that the planning board required through AKRF, the outside traffic consultant, to go back and study, and Anthony could attest to this, the shoulder season, not just the summer season when school buses weren't on the roads. But I could also, and I just want Josh, while he's here, if he could opine as far as pass-by traffic and the percentages that were looked at.
Yes. So for this type of development, typically industry standard is that the, this type of development would generate seventy-five percent pass-by traffic. So pass-by traffic is traffic that's already on the road, but they see that there's a gas station, a convenience store. They want to grab a drink. They want to go, you know, fill up their tanks, and they go into the traffic, into the development. It's not new traffic that's being attracted to this area. Majority of the traffic is already on the road, and they see the 7-Eleven. It's a convenience for them to fill up their, to fill up their tanks and to get a snack as well.
Okay. Thank you. Anthony, are you satisfied?
Katie, Katie had something she wanted to say.
One last thing, that the seventy-five percent was approved to be used in the traffic study by both the New York State DOT and the Suffolk County DPW. So it wasn't just an arbitrary number. And AKRF also approved that number, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Right.
And all of that is documented.
All right, wait a second.
I'd like to just.
I was just going to say, you know, we, we, let me be very clear so everybody knows this. We've been working on this for years. So I have taken everybody's comments into consideration. That's why there's not a shovel in the ground right now. So I've been working on this for four years. All that we could do in the planning department is get the best project. What I can say too, because there's been inquiries, if a 7-Eleven convenience store, whoever it's classified, is permitted in that zone, the planning board cannot, under any circumstance, say, there's three already in the community, we can't have another one. They have no legal ability to do that. So I just want to be very clear about that.
That's a business decision on the part of the applicant as to whether they want to compete with three others.
No, I'll suffer. The traffic, I mean, we required that they provide the traffic study. We then went out and got proposals from traffic engineers. Howard, we hired somebody on their time. They reviewed it for us. They asked for additional information. They raised questions about numbers. They had to revise the report to get to a point where the planning board was satisfied with the end results.
I would like to just make clear that also, traffic issues are irrelevant to the variances that we are looking at here today. I want everybody to be very clear about that. Like, what we do here is very circumscribed. Should there be thirty-one car stalls where thirty-six are required? I mean, that's, and traffic doesn't have anything to do with that. Should the distance from the Peconic River, traffic doesn't have anything to do with that. Now, that may be have to do with environmental concerns, but we've had testimony today that there's all kinds of safeguards being taken place, and planning is going to be doing a secret review, which is our environmental review. So, you know, whether or not we have certain kinds of signs or certain kinds of illumination, traffic doesn't affect that, unless what was being proposed is so enormous that it would be a distraction to drivers and would generate accidents. So I want to be very clear what it is we're doing here tonight.
Katie, you wanted to say something?
Anthony answered it.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, go ahead. Okay. Okay, anybody else? But just, you know, just so that everybody knows, we're going to really keep to the three minutes, and if you have anything new to say, we really would welcome that. Okay, are you an attorney?
No.
Okay. Do you swear or tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Adrian Woodduck. Wood and duck. Two Ds, two Os.
I think I can spell that.
That, that is a name I gave myself. And since I moved out here from the city in the year two thousand, I moved out here to, to be close to nature. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry that, that you need to remind us of, of what your duties are and that you can't prevent this from happening. I'm a retired architectural interior designer, and this is future blight. It is disgusting. And people who own property and allow them, and, and that we as a town allow them to disgrace our neighborhood as they, as it has been for the last fifteen years. I've had to see that almost every day that I've lived out here, and it's absolutely disgusting. It's despicable. I want to say also, I just bought an all-electric car, and to have more gas stations when the planet is literally burning, and not to have, you have no, no electric charging, it, it's, and the fact that these, these convenience stores sell junk food, but who cares? Because the people who shop in them are people who ride there on bicycles, are local people. I'm not talking about the people who come out to the Hamptons. I don't really care that much for them. I care more about the people who live here and work for these people, and they ride bicycles and. and, and they get hurt a lot on these roads. There are women with baby carriages walking along here. They don't need more cars coming and going, and I know that's not your problem, and, but it's, it's, you don't consider us, um-
I do consider you a vital part of our community.
A vital part, and, but you treat us like shit. The town treats us like shit! And, and apparently the town doesn't care that that area looks so awful because the owners are allowed to let them-
Well, in all fairness, they have been trying to develop something, and it's not been met with community approval and consideration. But, you know, I hope you weren't-
I thank you for your time and, and-
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. All right. Um, and I hope you don't think that I ever treated you that way, because I don't. Okay, and let me swear you in. You're not an attorney, right? Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
My name is Carla Casper. I live on the Dam Trail in Flanders.
Okay.
I didn't ask you, did you want a C or the K?
With a C. Casper like the ghost.
The person's name is Kay.
C, C-A-R-L-A. I too am a transplant. In my former position, I was a risk management officer for a large European bank in the city. I too moved out here. As you can see, our community is very upset to have this happen. And I, my recommendation to you is you table this, and you deny the variances, and we try again. And keeping in mind that as a risk management officer, I've looked into this firm. They closed four hundred stores in this country last year. They are out of Tokyo. They are a risk to us because we're concerned that this will not be viable, and we will be back where we started with blight. So that's the concern of the community. And I realize your role is very circumstrived, as you said, sir, but there are risks here that the community needs to have addressed, and there's also a history of corporate malfeasance. And we need a better solution for this corner. So that's what I have to say to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carla. Can I just by a show of hands see how many more people want to speak on this? Okay, let's try to limit it to that group because we really do have other applications tonight. And I think we got the gist of what your concerns are.
And is it going to be open until we finish our itself?
Yeah, this is not, we're not doing anything tonight, trust me. We're not, and, we're not gonna make any decisions or whatever. We still have to wait. Planning board gets involved, they send referral letter to us, so it's not, it's not a done deal by any stretch. Okay. Are you an attorney?
Yeah.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Brian Clifford Hoey, non-domicile, nineteen eighty-six graduate, Riverhead High School, Flanders, baseball, Little League, everyday American, living right there.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your last name.
Hoey, H-O-E-Y.
Okay.
To the owner, if he's here now, thank you. There are many people that walk around there, 7-Eleven, I was at Hampton Bay 7-Eleven today, pulling a wheelchair out of their garbage because the man left it there for four hours. 7-Eleven, I'm sorry, but it's a wrong decision for the community. I helped the gentleman pull his wheelchair out with the two people that worked there. So what we're talking about when the gentleman said before about the lower-income people in that area, the wheelchairs, the walking, the drugs, I would like to see the impact statement in two years after 7-Eleven's there, with the car accidents, but with the people that walk there, with people that live there, with us that reside there. A better decision than a 7-Eleven. Southampton could have done a lot of things different through the Riverside Revitalization Project over the last ten years. McDonald's could be bought out and moved, you can take over that whole park area, there's a lot of things that can be done, but has not been done. That's what they're talking about. Nothing has been done from Southampton for twenty to thirty years, since nineteen eighty-six, in that area. That's why people are pissed.
Oh, I get it.
Quite, quite honestly.
I know, I know. But, but you understand that that's not our role.
Gentleman over here said, go to the board.
We're very happy to hear all of you.
We had our chances to walk out of this, and we've never done it. We could go to the gentleman now. It's a better choice to do something different. That's what we're-
Okay.
Something different.
Okay, Brian, thank you so much. And, you know, we- Okay, we've got about four more people, I think? Is that what I, was the number that I saw? All right, and then we're gonna, we're gonna like move on because, as I said, we're not deciding anything tonight, but this gives you a chance to at least say your piece. Are you an attorney?
No.
Let's swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Chris Sheldon, four thousand one Lake Avenue, North Hampton, New York.
Okay, Chris.
Uh, I think I can say it in two and a half minutes.
Oh, perfect.
Thank you. Um, I've seen a lot of changes in the traffic circle area. Before, there was a Nugent Drive. Before, there was a county center, okay? All the roads out east came to that circle. It worked. There were five gas stations there. Now we're down to two, and there might be a third one. Um, but the thinking is, when you have a traffic circle, and perhaps half of the people that are entering that circle are confused, okay? And they're trying to figure out what's going on. And the last thing we need is commercial development right there in their face. So in a sense, if we can figure out a way to rethink this, slide it down the road on Flanders Road or whatever, but stay away from the circle, I know the seventy-six gas station is also coming before you for an expansion, I believe, of the convenience store. And you should really study that, too. Maybe there are ways through amortization to say, look, you can stay in business for the next ten years or twenty years, and then goodbye, and turn the whole area into more of a park, okay? There were two gas stations on Peconic Avenue leading to the circle, and there was the tire craft. Tire craft is gone, and that's, now that's a park, that's green space. So, um, last night at the local community association, it's called Franca, Flanders Riverside, North Hampton, it was discussed the possibility of this board, the planning board, and the town board meeting together to discuss issues with the local community. And we think that would help open opportunities, because after ten years of trying to get this Riverside revitalization going, it's, it's just turned into a mouthful, and, um, we're not getting any younger. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Brian, uh, Chris. Thank you very much. All right, we've got one more. Okay. Are you an attorney?
No, I'm not.
Okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Uh, name is Ahmer Ilahi, spelled A-H-M-E-R, first name. Last name is I-L-A-H-I. Address is seven Peconic Avenue, Riverhead, New York, one one nine oh one.
Can you say your last name again?
I-L-A-H-I.
I hear it, but I don't read it.
That's okay. Uh, so I'm here before you, the board, and all the community members. The, the one question that I like everybody to, to think, you know, when we go home is, what is this? Is this a 7-Eleven with a gas station, or is this a gas station with a C-store? An average 7-Eleven is about twenty-two hundred to twenty-five hundred square foot, if I'm not mistaken. And if you ever see a C-store connected to a gas station, it's about eight hundred to twelve hundred square foot. So, so this is by design a massive project by any means. Uh, an average gas station has four dispensers, eight fueling points, so this has that, and this has, again, going for a monster, C-store as well. I understand what the, the board members are saying. You, you guys are here just to, to talk about their variances, which, uh, the, the gentlemen here are asking. What they can do is, if, obviously it's a private property, they could do, uh, what the zoning allows them, but they can do it at a smaller scale. Uh, I mean, obviously 7-Eleven is the Goliath in the C-store market and now in the gas station market as well, but, you know, there are Davids on that, uh, traffic circle. The seventy-six station, which is about less than a thousand square foot, uh, the Shell gas station at Lake Avenue is about sixteen hundred square foot. So, so by, by, by that design, it automatically devalues the property for those property owners, which have been there serving the communities for, for decades now. Uh, 7-Eleven is more than welcome to come. Competition is here, this is what, uh, this country is built on, but the, the playing field has to be leveled for, for everybody. And, uh, that's all we're asking, that if, if the variances they're looking for, they're looking for the parking stalls, they can go and decrease the size of the, the store to, to not get the variances. Uh, if they, if they're looking for, again, the, the gas dispensers, they don't need six gas dispensers. They can go down to four. And, uh, obviously, it's whoever is spending the money in this project, they're more than welcome to do it, but do it within the means where, again, it fits with the community and it's fair to everybody else. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, Ahmer. Okay, I think we're getting close to the end. Is there anybody else? Okay. Um, is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this matter?
There's one, there's one person.
Okay, I don't think there's anybody on Zoom, but wait, we're not done.
I'm sorry, there's one person.
Said there's one person.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. There's one person, one more person, and then you can speak.
Hi.
Oh, okay, Renee. Hi, Renee, are you an attorney?
I am not an attorney.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please state your name again and your address.
My name is Renee Stakey. I live at thirty-one Lakeview Drive here in Riverhead, and tonight I speak on behalf of myself as well as my community here with the Wildwood Neighborhood Watch. I don't necessarily have anything new, but I am speaking on behalf of my community, so I would just like the opportunity to, uh, present, um, the prepared statement that we have.
Okay, is it, it's not too long, right?
It's within the timeframe.
Okay, good, perfect.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. We respectfully oppose the proposed state-of-the-art redevelopment of the former gas station site located at the Peconic Traffic Circle. Introducing another gas station and convenience mart at this already congested location will significantly compound existing traffic challenges. As it's been stated many times, we already have two other gas stations at the circle at, with mini-marts in addition to the five other 7-Eleven locations in our town. Again, this is primarily, primarily, uh, about the, the traffic issues. The traffic circle's current design and capacity are insufficient to accommodate the additional volume of vehicles that such a development would generate. Increased traffic entering and exiting at this point poses a serious concern for both traffic flow as well as public safety. We urge Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals to consider rejecting this proposal in light of its potential impact on the surrounding community and infrastructure. I hope that you will consider this and consider us that, um, will have to be dealing with, um, with the traffic that this will cause, and thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you, Renee.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yes.
Before, um, you hear from the property owner, I just want to respond to some of the stuff that was raised by, um, members of the community. Uh, I'll start with business competition. As was alluded to, competition is not a valid basis to determine, uh, a zoning decision, and I cite to the Sunbright case, Court of Appeals, nine, uh, six-nine, NY two D, four oh six, nineteen eighty-seven, as well as the case of Tanner Cleaners versus the ZBA of the town of Irvington at fifty-seven AD three D, six eighty-three, Second Department, two thousand and eight. With regard to the competition next door at the other two stations, you know, one thing that I spoke with some of the town officials early on is that one of the great things about this application is that it'll literally raise the bar of the competition. And what I mean by that is you have two stations there now that, um, are not ADA compliant. Um, one, in fact, doesn't have any bathrooms, the other has a porta potty outside. We are coming in with a state-of-the-art facility. Why is the building three thousand square feet? We can actually get a handicapped person, and, and the whole store is ADA compliant, not just the bathrooms. In other words, a person in a wheelchair, first of all, can access the site. There is sidewalks throughout, um, only, the curb cuts is the only place where there is not. But someone could literally go from the top of the circle, make their way to the front of the store. Once they're in the store, they're never going to bump into any of the shelving, because the shelving is spread out and a floor plan is made in such a way so the entire store is ADA compliant. I also heard that the seventy-six was on before us, but, but was adjourned for that exact reason that it has, they're going in for a larger convenience store because theirs is too small. Crime on, uh, crime in the area, right? One of the best things about 7-Eleven is that because it becomes a place where there is a lot of activity, the crime in the area tends to go down. You have the state troopers barracks right next door. Also, many of you may not know, but 7-Eleven has a program with all police departments across the country, that they provide a break room for all police officers. That, that includes Southampton, that includes Suffolk County, that includes state troopers. Could go into any 7-Eleven in the United States, get a cup of coffee and get a snack, and it could take a load off, and it could just take a little break from what is an incredibly difficult job as we all know. As far as Andrew's gonna touch upon, his efforts and, and the family's efforts, I, I come back to the fact that he is one of your neighbors, right? His family has owned this property and has had a presence in this town since nineteen sixty-five and paying taxes for this property. He'll discuss a little further about what efforts they have made over the past fifteen There was, um, a question about the other 7-Eleven stores. I can't tell you right now if one of those stores may close and move into this location. That has happened a lot in the past, especially with 7-Elevens, uh, doing gas with them. So I could see that happening, so to the point that there are, there are others nearby. Um, I covered that. Um, I'm not gonna belabor the point with the variances. Somebody brought up the, the number of variances, right? The area variances are mostly as a result of the site constraints and the irregular shape of the lot. The, the rest of them are sign variances that we went through in, in great detail. But also the comprehensive plan and, and the zoning, as this board knows, but the audience may not know, is that when the code is developed, and when the zoning map is developed, they, the town and planning staff do long-term planning, as your staff does a tremendous job doing, and what they look at is not just the name of the use, but what goes into the use. So the fact that this is a permitted use, and the fact that it was used for retail for all these years in the visits, in the village business district, says a lot. It's up to the applicant to elect if they want to be in the overlay district. They have clearly said, time and time again, they do not elect for that. They want the underlying zoning, which is the highway business and the village business. Um, there was, uh, arguments made about, uh, accidents and traffic in the area. There's a forty mile an hour speed limit on both roadways. If that's too high, I, I recommend a petition to lower that, to say thirty. We all know that aggressive driving is a problem in this country and in this county, uh, as well as, as speeding. Um, by working with the Southampton Police, some of that could be addressed. Um, I covered that. Concerns being addressed. We have been at this, folks, for better part of four years, right? Your planning staff, to their credit, has made us address every nuance of this application, and there is nothing that has not come up already during the process of the last four years. Um, remark was made, sliding down the road, that's exactly what we did. We slid it down the road. We moved the curb cuts away from the traffic circle, which inherently makes those curb cuts, uh, safer. Massive C-store, no factual basis for that whatsoever. I will tell you that by and large, three thousand square feet is the standard, and six to eight MPDs is the standard. That's the dispensers. Um, the Cumberland that was going to go here, it was applied for, that was rejected, was five thousand square feet, okay? Um, which is, by the way, akin to the Cumberland that's out on Route one eleven and the expressway, the one on the South Service Road. Uh, this store, 7-Eleven does not run corporate stores and most likely be a franchise store, that's what most of them are. And leveling the playing field, we, we are leveling the playing field. By making a site that is fully ADA compliant, levels the playing field and brings the circle, really for that matter, up to federal standards or what should be there for people with disabilities. So with that, I, I'd like you to hear from the owner of the property.
Before you do that, can I ask one question? So the only thing that I think I heard that was actually um from the community, that was actually directed at one of the variances that you seek, is the uh statement made about the distance from the iconic river. That that's objectionable on environmental grounds, and I'm wondering if you have any response to that? Because I haven't heard a response to that from.
I, I do, and I'll pull up the aerial. You'll see that the seventy-six is, is located much closer to the Cumberland than we are.
Well, you don't have to blame somebody else for being worse, we're asking for you.
Sure, I just wanted to, Nick, if you could pull up the aerial. So you could see based on an aerial that the seventy-six is located much closer. There is a high groundwater table. As a matter of fact, Nick's firm, High Point Engineering, and his principal, they designed the gas tanks, because they do a lot of gas station work. They designed the gas station and the, the pump and tanks for the seventy-six because of the high water table. So they know exactly what's needed in order to build it, so that if there's a leakage, and I'll let Nick talk about it, if you could just give the seat up to Nick.
Yep.
Nick's gonna talk about the new Suffolk County Department Health standards that were, as we all know, they used to require, um, there was single wall tanks, right, back in the nineties. Nineteen ninety-two, Suffolk County changed the, all the regs and they required double wall tanks that have monitoring to, to detect whether or not there's any leakage. So, Nick, you wanna explain that?
But is there a current leakage?
That's not for us, anyway.
Yeah.
Right, the Suffolk County Department Health.
Correct.
Sure. Did you have a question, or?
No, I meant, is there an existing leakage on the site?
Not that I am aware of, um, a phase one was probably conducted. And a phase two was also conducted.
Yes.
So a phase two was conducted, it's, it's.
They tested the soil.
Correct, it's fine.
If I remember correctly, there was, I have something in the file from the DEC that did look at the conditions and they issued whatever DEC sign off, whatever structures needed to be removed.
There are certain procedures that have to be taken into place, we take old tanks out and.
Of course, there is, there is a, a load of requirements, yeah. If, if I would sit here and go through all of them with you, you'd all be bored.
Are you planning on replacing soil?
As required, so if, um, again, as all the contamination was handled, so anything would have been taken off as part of the phase two and would have been replaced. So replacing soil would, at this point, only be for structural reasons.
So, wait, I'm confused, because I'm, I'm, sorry, I forgot your name, sir, but didn't you tell us there was some slow-moving contaminant remaining in the soil?
Biscuit oil. Motor oil.
Motor oil. So which is typical to find during the phase one and phase two of, of any, but specifically stations that were from the sixty, seventies, eighties, and nineties?
And that's not required for remediation because it's slow-moving?
Incorrect, so it, it would be removed as part of the phase two, which has already occurred.
They test it as they dig, and actually what they use it for is they put it into asphalt.
Okay.
And they bring it to the asphalt plant and they use it.
So remediation will occur?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
The F, the full environmental, environmental assessment form, part three identifies each of the permits and actions taken by the DEC, and all five, I forget how many permits, three, four, or five, I forget what, how many, have been closed out by the DEC, which means that they've been satisfied with remediation.
Okay. Okay.
Can we wrap it up?
All right, yeah, let's just.
Two seconds.
Oh, I'm gonna.
Wait, just, hold on, hold on, hold on. I just want to ask Anthony, so if we were to grant the variance with regard to the distance to the iconic river, you still have a secret review to do, correct?
That will have already been done before you render your decision.
Before we render our decision, so we will know whether or not, what the impact would be to granting a variance, shortening the distance between, the distance required between the iconic river and the property, correct?
Every secret issue that is identified in the DEC Part Two, which includes surface waters, groundwater, all that stuff will be addressed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, sir.
Just to wrap it up, the seventy-six, which is almost exactly.
Who wrongs don't make a right.
No, I'm just saying, here's the iconic river, the edge of the river, and there's the seventy-six.
You keep saying it. They did it first, it doesn't matter, they did it first. It's, they are not you and you are not them.
My biggest point is that this site, which is an existing site, much like we do with wetlands in this town, is separated by a road, is separated by another gas station, and I think that's, we do it with wetlands here.
No, certainly.
For example, and you're not subject to the wetlands.
Oh, certainly, and they're, and they're separated by a road, but we don't, I don't think there needs to be a reference to seventy-six.
All I'd like to say is that we've owned, the family has owned the property since sixty-five. And we have, and I have, for the fifteen years that it's been vacant, marketed this to the best of my ability. And I have gotten Burger King, which I couldn't put on because McDonald's is across the street and they have two hundred yards, I think, or two hundred feet before, between driveways. I've gotten calls from Dunkin' Donuts, I've gotten calls from Cumberland, I have gotten calls from no one else. No one else is begging me or wanting to spend the three or four million dollars that 7-Eleven is gonna spend to develop this site. So that's telling you, you may want what you want, but there's no one gonna fulfill the dream for you as far as that site goes. But I also want to say that I totally disagree with everyone who thinks that this town of Southampton has done nothing for the, and has treated you as um second-class citizens. They are, I, because I monitor, I've been watching this. Over the last, what, year or two, they, they are committed to spending thirty to forty million dollars to put a sewer system in, which will then lead to more development. So they haven't turned their backs on you in any way, shape, or form. And that's surprisingly the only thing that's gotten me more upset than you thinking that this is all about profit. Or, and the other thing is, I don't disagree with you, I drive a Tesla. But on the other hand, there are no, there are no, these companies want, still want to open gas stations. And I guess with the current government we have, there's definitely a reason they want to open up more gas stations. So it's not incumbent on me or my family or this board to solve all the problems that nobody else seems to want to solve. And that's why there's a 7-Eleven wanting to go here.
And, and, and sir, I'd like to say to you that I don't believe that it's fair to demonize you for any profit motive. It's, you have a piece of property and you have every right to, to profit from it and to make it profitable, so.
I appreciate that.
To me, that's an argument that falls on deaf ears for me.
And also raise the taxes on the property.
Yeah, okay.
They estimate somewhere about a hundred thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in income, which hasn't been there.
So if I can just make a few remarks on, on, on this, I appreciate the briefing. And a couple of things struck me. One, that this is the most recent application coming in. Everybody else in the circle is going to be watching closely. What's approved, what's the new standard for the new development? And, you know, everybody has to do their best to get it right, and I know the planning board and the planning staff are working hard on this. Uh, I'm not skilled enough to know what the proper lighting issues are or, uh, I, I'm, this is a trite comment in lieu of the entire conversation that we heard from some of the folks in the community. But decals and signs that continue to say 7-Eleven, like, four or five times within a quick glance, is probably a little on the overkill side. Uh, I, I, I understand the concern the community has about some of the traffic issues. I've driven through there a thousand times myself, probably in two years, so I, it's, it's not like an abstract experience. Uh, my wife lives in, uh, works in Riverhead, and we live in Hampton Bay, so she tells me all about it every time she comes home. So it's real, and I get it. So, you know, to the extent that we can do, you know, coordinate with the planning board and get, you know, any additional comments on, on, just as it relates to good planning with regard to signing, signage. And the other comment that I thought I heard from one of the folks was, they said, we're, we're concerned about light and blight, and additional blight, so light matters, right? And then somebody else made a comment, if it were smaller, some of these issues would be less impactful in terms of traffic and parking and other things like that, which I don't think is an unreasonable request to have seriously addressed. So um, a, a lot to digest, but nevertheless, uh, thank you.
Okay.
There's been three quick points, it's just what Mr. McDonald said, very quick. So remember, this, the project has to go in front of the town ARB. Second, uh, we did submit a, a lighting plan that's showing fully compliant at the property lines. And as far as the size is concerned, if you make it smaller, then it, you lose that ADA compliance, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Okay. All right.
I just wanted to know that, you talk about traffic safety. When you did the, when the county did the traffic circle, there were two driveways closer to the drive, to the circle, we gave them up voluntarily, with no money, not a nickel. So we, we voluntarily gave up two, that means of egress and ingress and egress voluntarily to improve the traffic in that neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, this is a very, it's been a very enlightening discussion. We're going to be continuing this for a while, I assume. So we are going to have to do a secret resolution, Katie. And so I, this is, I'm the lead on this, so.
Yep.
So what should we do in terms of adjournment?
Well, we've court, we've already sent out the letters to coordinate SECR.
All right.
Um, we need thirty days from the date those letters are sent out, which I, I calculated we could put it on for lead agency on October sixteenth.
And that's only to decide who's gonna be the lead agency on the secret res.
Much likely will be the planning board, because they were the lead agency before.
And then in terms of adjournment for the application itself.
That would be at, defer to Anthony for how long that would take next year.
Come on. Twelve-four.
Well, I mean, we, we gotta wait till October sixteenth before we're meant to go back to the planning board, so.
Twelve-four.
Well, you, let's give, let's put a date, we know that we're gonna have to adjourn.
Let's do the November.
Twentieth?
For a decision?
No, 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 this is, uh, to, to rehear.
No, we have to, we have to do SECR.
Do SECR, and then we're gonna get the referral letter from planning, we're gonna take a look at all the submissions, and then we're going to, we're not gonna make a decision on that date.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question, I am. Because my understanding is planning board is taking lead agency.
Well, probably, yes.
Right, so in terms of, um, we very much would appreciate next time this is on, because remember, this is not in a vacuum, we've been at this for four years.
I understand.
And based on my discussion with staff, the hope was that we would be through your board by October, so we can get back to planning, right? Because we still have to go to ARB after that. So we have many steps left in this process, and we'd appreciate if we could get through.
Well, I don't think this board's gonna be doing any decision-making until it gets a referral letter from the planning board, is that correct?
We, we gotta do SECR and, you know.
Yeah, I, so we're, we're not, we're not gonna make our decision before we hear from planning.
We can't make our decision until we have a secret determination, so I don't know who you were talking to.
Yeah.
Planning board hasn't even accepted lead agency yet, because we've literally just coordinated.
So if you decide next meeting, the letters go out to planning.
The letters are, have already gone out.
But they have thirty days, so we have till, uh, the secret decision about who will be lead agency would be October sixteenth.
Understood, so, so you'll make that decision.
We'll say the planning board, because they.
So the only thing left would be a decision from, from this board, correct?
No, SECR. They have to do the SECR review.
That's what I'm missing.
Then they have to send us the referral.
Right.
That takes time, and then, once we have that, we can make it, we can set a date for a decision.
So Jeff, if you can come up here, can you give, see to Jeff? This is what I'm not understanding. If it goes back to the planning board and their lead agency.
Right.
They need you to wrap up your process.
No, they don't, they do SECR first. They're gonna do SECR first, then they're gonna send us. Then they're gonna tell us the results, and then based on that, we're going to make a decision.
Because the plan may change based on the SECR and the public hearings and everything else. So we're not gonna make, be making a determination on variances without knowing what the final plan is gonna be.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to understand, so ten-sixteen, you determine lead agency.
Lead agency, and then it's gonna take.
And then take, take me through, the two, if the two of you could take us through the rest of the process.
What is your understanding after ten-sixteen?
I know.
Then the planning board would ask that their next meeting work on the SECR.
Okay, so give me a date, because we've really got to move on.
I understand, this is important, from a legal point of view.
November twentieth?
That's what I want to understand, so planning board will then finish SECR presumably at some point after ten-sixteen, and then it'll come back to you at that point.
We'll put it on for eleven.
To make a decision.
We'll put it on for eleven-twenty, but it's not gonna be on for decision on eleven-twenty.
It's just gonna be back.
For further proceedings.
It's still an open hearing.
It's still open.
We're not closing the hearing tonight, we're waiting for additional information, and that's gonna.
And we may close the hearing on November twentieth.
Deadline, have written submissions and a decision after that. The only information you're looking for, just to be clear, has to do with lead agency status.
No, and SECR.
That's what I'm saying, that is SECR.
Lead, lead agency status will be determined on this, on October sixteenth. Then planning does SECR, and then they get us the results. And then we'll be here on eleven-twenty for a further hearing.
Yep, and then.
Further proceedings, and then on, and then we may close on that date, give you a written submission date and decision date.
Okay, thank you, now I'm clear.
Okay, I'm making a motion that we, that we um do a lead agency decision on ten-sixteen with an adjournment until November twentieth.
Second.
Mr. Maston.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Reddick.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair of both sides, okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you all.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you all in the audience for coming. Number nine on the agenda, application of Nineteen Bay Drive LLC, Nineteen Bay Drive, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County, tax map number nine hundred dash two-six-nine dash one dash forty-six.
Okay, I have sworn you in before.
He's an attorney, you're an attorney, yes, I'm sorry.
Helen, Helen, are you recusing yourself?
I am, John.
Okay.
Okay, um, our Helen is recusing. Just please state your name again for the record.
Yes, James Vlahadamas of Vlahadamas Law P L L C, one four eight East Montauk Highway, Suite Three, Hampton Bay, New York. One one nine four six for the applicant. Good evening, members of the board.
Hello, okay, so where are we on this application?
Yes, um, we appeared back in August.
Right.
And we had discussed certain, with certain aspects of the application. The biggest issue seemed to have been the structural slash retaining walls of the style of the house. We have the developer and designer of the house on Zoom this evening, who is prepared to give the board some more detailed explanation regarding the structure, the proposed structure. Uh, additionally, there was a significant amount of questions regarding the height of the building. So even though we do not require pyramid, or we're within the pyramid regulations, and we're not seeking any pyramid relief, there was a, a neighbor, Mr. Jay and Mrs. Jay, who are here tonight, who had some concerns about how the house is gonna look, because it is a modern-style house. Uh, the existing house is from the nineteen twenties, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming lot. Um, the, so we made the house not as high, it's not gonna have a pitched roof, it's gonna have a flat roof. We've incorporated the first level.
The height now?
I'm sorry?
What's the height now?
The total height right now is thirty feet nine inches. The rear elevation, and at the forward elevation, it is twenty-one feet nine inches.
No, it's not, James, no.
Yes.
No, no. James, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, all right, Rocco Lettieri?
I'm, I'm sorry, have I sworn you in before?
No, Rocco Lettieri.
Okay, are you an attorney?
No, I'm not an attorney.
Let me swear you in, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I tell the truth.
Okay, so, um, please state your name.
Rocco Lettieri.
Can you spell Lettieri?
Free Woodland Avenue, West Hampton Beach, and Twenty-five Asa Road, Stratton, Vermont.
Okay. Can you spell your last name, please?
L E T T I E R I.
Okay. All right, so Rocco, you wanna make, who's making the presentation?
I'll, let me, let me get going, so we have all the correct heights and everything like, like this.
Okay.
Um, I, I had a long conversation with the neighbor regarding heights, obviously there's a, a big misunderstanding of the heights here. So I might need some help from the board, who's someone who understands, you know, architectural drawings, to explain to the board members, the, the neighbors as well. So the front of the house on the street side, in the, which is the front entry of the house, the front facing the house, is twelve foot four high. And the back of the house, which is the poolside, is twenty-two foot four inches high. Now, obviously, the property is on, a piece of property that's contouring down to the water. There's some misunderstanding of benchmarks. Benchmarks are from mean sea-high level. Benchmarks are from mean sea high level. So the lower level of the ground in the rear of the yard is at a benchmark of 16. And then there's a benchmark of 37. That is not a height. That is a benchmark from sea level, from the actual water height. So that's that number. So the highest point of this house, which is the chimney, which doesn't count in those things, is 23 foot 6. If you're on the southeast corner of the property. On the northeast corner of the property, there is a retaining wall that's holding back the soil from the neighboring property, which obviously from that point, it's probably around 20 feet. And then transitions up to 12 feet in the front of the house. On the south side of the property, that side is exposed until there's a retaining wall, which the septic system is installed in the front of the property. So that is the elevations of the property. And I gave the board a overlay of the existing house and the proposed house. Did you guys receive that?
We did. Where is that?
Is that the August 22nd?
Yes, that was, that was supplemented, yes.
It's like the big, you have it right there.
So in that package, you will see Mr. Lettieri was able to overlay a photograph of the existing structure versus the proposed structure. And you could see the height differentiation between the existing and the proposed. You could see that the proposed is significantly shorter than the existing.
All right, I don't see where that is, but.
It's this little piece of paper.
It's behind that, yes.
Okay, got it.
Rocco, did you submit a pyramid sketch to the building department? Because I know that was an outstanding question we had as well.
We don't, we don't have a pyramid issue because the building department's already reviewed this. If there was a pyramid issue, they would have, they would have brought it up as an issue referring it to your board.
Mr. Garehauser is the one who reviewed this application?
Is that a question?
I mean, it's only 12, it's only 12 feet high.
Review the application. And.
Well, in your plans, do you put, did you?
Does it show compliance?
Do you put the lines where the pyramid is supposed to be? I mean, you're supposed to show.
Well, the property, at the front of the property, it's only 12 feet high. The existing structure is higher than what the proposed structure is. So, I mean, that is where they're taking the grade from. There's multiple points of grade in the, in the situation. So I don't know how the, the town building department's interpreting it, but the way they're interpreting it, the village, the town, I say village, but the town inspector reviews the drawings, and then he makes a list of, he makes a list of things that don't conform, and that's what we gotta go for the variances on.
Okay, I just wanna be clear because we spent over an hour on this tonight on another matter. It's your job to flag whether there are pyramid issues. It's not the building department's job to say to you, your plans aren't right because you haven't flagged the pyramids. So I feel like I'm hearing you say the burden's on the building department, and it's not true.
I'm not, I'm not saying that, but every, every building department that we work with, they review the drawings. They make a list of variances that are needed for that. And they determine what variances are needed for.
Okay, but when you.
The town, the town gave us a list of variances that we had to go for.
Okay, Rocco, when you submit plans, everybody always submits them with a pyramid drawing that shows it has a 45-degree angle, and it shows that you don't require pyramid approval. I don't see that in here.
We want a affirmative demonstration that you don't have that.
And then let them make a determination at that point. But for you not to have submitted that.
We're gonna end up in the same.
We're gonna end up with the same problem.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, so as a requirement from the zoning board, you're going to have to amend your plans to show where the pyramid is, the four corners of the property with the 45-degree angle, to show that in fact, it does not have a pyramid issue. Do we all agree on that?
Absolutely.
And you, you don't know this. Your attorney does. He sat through a tortured conversation earlier tonight because somebody said, I didn't know I ever needed to produce this. So he'll tell you all about it another time, not now.
Well, then if that's the case, I mean, there is a very.
Well, wait a second, let me hear what you're saying. Go ahead.
If that's the case, they'll, if that's the case, if it's 45 degrees from the line, obviously, there's pre-existing, the building doesn't conform, that's there, obviously. And there are, there would, if you're saying that there's multiple different points and heights and stuff like that, where they take the grade from, because I don't have one average grade height. So if you take the front yard for perspective, then it would conform with the pyramid calculation. If you take the backyard, it wouldn't conform with the pyramid calculation. So I don't know how they're gonna determine that.
It sounds like you need to speak to the people at the building department. You need to speak to the inspector. Talk to Mr. Garehauser, and he'll walk you through where the building department thinks that you should be taking the measurements.
Well, this is kinda, it's kinda annoying, the building department. Every other town I deal with, the building department would tell me if they needed that, and that would be part of the variance application.
Okay, we're telling you, sir, we're telling you the burden's on you.
I, I understand that.
You've got a bunch of tired people.
We're wasting, we're wasting time and money on this situation when every other town that gives you a list of variances you need when you submit the drawings.
Well, we're not any other town. We are the town of Southampton. And so what you, what Candace is suggesting you do is that you call the chief inspector, Sean McDermott, and he will walk you through it.
All right, so I would ask that the board give us an adjournment so that we can come back with that pyramid diagram depicted. You want us to mark the existing plans?
Yeah, well, the architect could just show the. With the pyramid plane on. Find out where they're gonna take the comments.
I know, I know how to do it. It just wasn't requested. Normally, it would be requested if it's needed. Yeah, but what about all these other issues with the, with everything else that's going on with it? Because I don't wanna be, I just, I just waited, I just waited three hours to have a conversation about something and other issues on the property, so.
I agree. Let, I agree. Let's go through the other, we have, we have to get clarification on the pyramid. That's number one, but we also.
I know, and I feel like we talked about that at the last hearing. I mean, I, I don't have my notes, but I.
We did not, we did not talk about this at the last hearing.
We think it's too high. We think it's too missed, you know, and we said.
Well, the height, because there's a lack of understanding how to read plans. If you're, if you're, you have a person there spewing lies out and saying that it's 37 feet when it's not 37 feet. So there's gotta be some truth and reality in the conversation. Because everything that was stated at the last meeting was beyond nonsense and not truthful about the height of the building. So let's get clarity on the height of the building. So everybody understands the height of the building and what the function of it is.
I would stop talking if I were you, and I would allow your attorney to speak because what you're saying is so objectionable and so inappropriate. Accusing this board of lying and misrepresenting things.
No, I didn't say you were lying. I said there were.
Discussing and suggesting that this board is incompetent. Just keep talking. Keep talking yourself into a hole.
I didn't say that, first of all.
Yes, actually, you did, and I find it very objectionable. So why don't you stop talking? All you do is talk. Stop talking.
All right.
Let your attorney talk.
Okay, let's, let's calm down. Let's calm down.
Unbelievable.
All right, so we're confused about the pyramid. I think you've made adjustments in terms of the retaining wall, which, which I would like you to explain. You've taken it out of the front. You've taken the stairs and that retaining wall. So that was a concern. And there, and there was another concern in the back, too, I think, but I don't know, but.
Correct. So the board's concerned last time, we're, we're seeking relief from the six-foot high, the requirement that the max retaining wall height be six feet.
Yeah.
We've sought relief because, again, the, the design and the project has two different. One serves as a retaining wall and a structural wall for the stairway that goes to the rear portion of the house. And then there is another portion of the wall towards the front and the street side of the house. So the board was concerned about that height because it may be visible from the street.
Right.
And that we indicated that we would be putting up a, you know, vegetation and screening. So the board had asked for some type of depiction about a potential vegetation plan, which we also submitted in that packet, the newly submitted packet, from the August submission, just indicating that, you know, the intention of the property owner is to screen that entire portion out, so that.
As opposed to the retaining wall?
Well, the retaining wall would be screened from public view.
But some of it was gonna be removed, the stairs.
Taking the wall out.
Well, we, we had, we had discussed that we could make certain revisions to the wall in order to, if the board was more inclined to accept those revisions.
I think you've put it in your proposal.
Correct, so.
You say remove stairs and wall.
Wall removed.
My point is, no matter what, we'd still screen this. We're still, the screening is gonna remain.
Okay.
But what we're interpreting is you're now proposing to remove the wall and the stairs, at least a portion of it, and put in a landscaping plan. So that's what I'm, I'm working with now, that. I'm not, this isn't like, well, would you like us to do this, or wouldn't you like? What is your proposal?
Mr. Lettieri, who revised the plans, would be able to, you know, explain that.
He says, he says remove stairs. It's in red, all over the place.
The stairs, we marked up on the board's suggestion of lowering the wall and doing the last wall and removing that stair.
All right, yes, you did mark them up, and that's, that was in the.
Yeah, and we're looking at that.
Yes, they were marked up.
And that's, that's helpful, but right now, it's sort of ambiguous because it's, it says the wall's being removed. You just asked, is the wall being removed?
And you said, no, this is a possibility, but if you want us to do it, I mean.
I think you guys just gotta talk to yourselves and get this a little bit straighter. And, and the concern I raised at the last meeting was, and part of it was, one of the suggestions was to remove the wall on the Bay Drive side of this, was just that it looked, it's, it's a large concrete barrier from a public road on the way to walking to the water that is an access point for, I assume for some people in the community to the water. And I just think it looks out of character, and, and the suggestion was, well, we'll remove the wall, which is fine. And then I understand you would wanna have screening there for the privacy of the homeowner who would live there. Makes perfect sense. And we have a sketch that sort of represents that.
Right.
But I still don't know what it looks like from the Bay Drive side, looking at the house at the ground level.
Because all it says is remove the wall.
I'm sorry?
Because all it says is remove the wall, and it's not showing us what it looks like with the wall removed.
Correct, and, and, and if there's, if there's a, this is what it would look like with the wall removed. And that would be the view, and this is what we're mitigating with the screening that we're proposing.
So we need plans that actually demonstrate what it is you're planning to build.
Yeah, and, and for instance, let me, just to try to illustrate the point. I appreciate that this is a computer-generated image, right? And it, it, the site is fully cleared. There's not a tree remaining. And then you see the slope dips down as it does toward the water. And then on one of the other pictures, you just see this sort of like clear.
Say the Cypress. We're gonna put in a whole, a wall of Cypress.
Yeah, but the topography of the property just is flat to the road. And I, I don't.
Do you see this?
I'm not sure. I don't see how you get from what the present lot is to, to the image that's shown. And I think we need to understand that a little bit better to assess what we think the impact of a 70-foot structure running along the road, close to the road, what, 15 feet or less? Yeah, I have that.
All right, yes, but when, what you're saying is that the schematic that you showed for that side, it says remove wall. It hadn't removed the wall, so you couldn't tell what it looked like. And you didn't put in plantings to show how it would be softened.
It's, we wanna see what the effect of the changes talked about are, not just what you're proposing to do, and we have to imagine what that is. That's all. I mean, that's, and I thought you understood that, and we're gonna come back with better visual presentations of it. And I'm not blaming you for anything other than I think that's where you're hearing what, what might be some disconnect. At least that, that was me, and I think others have a similar assumption. So.
And I wouldn't mind, I mean, with regard to the, the heights that we've been talking about, I wouldn't mind some like written submission explaining those issues. Because clearly, there was quite a bit of confusion.
Yeah.
Right?
I don't understand that because we do have the topography and the elevations included in the plans. And as Mr. Lettieri said, you'll see that we start with a six-foot elevation on one side of the property, and then we get, or six feet above sea level, then we get to 26 feet above sea level. That's included in the plans that you have. And then in addition, there is the, the views, both the east and west frontage views, included in the plans that shows the building as it pertains to how it's going to be built into what, what is a, an unlevel piece of property. So you can see in the plans that at the front of the building, on the west elevation, there, you'll see that the, essentially, a portion of the building goes 10 feet underground at that point, and then the exposure is 11 feet, or roughly 11 feet. And then as it progresses down towards the waterfront, it gets higher because of the way the property is sloped. Obviously, there's more of an exposure of the building, but that's all included in the plans. And I think there was just at the last meeting, and, and you know, we have Mr. Jay and Mrs. Jay here, there seemed to be some confusion as to whether or not the total height of the building was gonna be 37 feet above grade. And I think that's what Mr. Lettieri was trying to explain, is that there was, there's, the building is not going to. The structure will not be 37 feet above.
So the structure itself isn't gonna be 37 feet?
It is 37 feet from the base of it to the top of it, but it's gonna be in the ground, in the hill, in the slope.
James, now, James, James, that's, that's incorrect. The 37-foot mark is a.
I'm sorry, it's 21.
37 feet is a.
Hold on, hold on, let Mr. Lettieri speak.
I apologize if everybody misunderstood me. I just had a long conversation with the neighbor prior. And it's a 37-foot that everybody's confused about. So if I need to take the surveyor, because that's a survey benchmark, that 37 mark, that's from mean sea level. So sea level is zero, basically. We'll just take that number. 37 feet is from the water. The building itself is only about 12 feet, we'll say, in the front of the house where the grade is, when you pull up to the house. That, literally, you can see it in that front elevation. The building's 12 feet out of the ground.
This diagram?
And then the back of the house, the building is like 22 feet.
Hold on, Kevin, 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 hold on, let him finish.
Go ahead.
So the very, if you walked up to the front of the house, before you went to the bridge to the front door, the house is sticking 12 feet out of the ground, let's say.
Right.
I walk across a bridge, I go in the front door, I'm at the first level in the house. I walk downstairs, I'm at the ground level. That's another 10 feet lower. So basically, you're 22 feet. So if I'm down by the pool, I look at the house, the house is 22 feet out of the ground.
And these numbers are on the plans?
Yes.
Those numbers are right on the plans. You have a number on the plan that shows the top.
You were referring to. Okay.
The 37 is a, is a survey benchmark.
Okay, I got it.
So there on the, the, on the bottom right, you'll see it says A500. And that is, I mean, I'm showing on my iPad, but it should be in your plans. That, that is where it shows the building as it pertains to the sea level, the benchmarks, and how it's built into the topography.
Okay.
Again, yes, Mr. Lettieri is correct. That, the 37-foot number was what was at issue.
Includes what's underground.
Yes, but it's also.
That's all the way down to the water.
Down to the water table.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
Down to sea level.
Okay, I think we got it. Um, all right. Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard? Okay, come, please, to the podium.
Did you give copies to Candace, too? Yeah, how many do you need, Candace? Two? Here you go. Okay. James, did you get a copy of this, too?
No.
Can you give the copy, James, the copy, too?
Okay, I think I have sworn you in in the past. Okay, just please restate your name, please.
Barbara J. 17 Bay Drive Hampton Bay.
Okay, Margaret.
Barbara.
Where did I say, where did I hear Margaret? I'll tell you, my hearing's going by the end of the meeting. Okay.
Good evening. I oppose the new building proposed at 19 Bay Drive at our last meeting. At our last meeting with this Board of Zoning Appeals, applicants were directed to lower the wall height perpendicular to Bay Drive at the front of the home, is that now shown to be lowered on the new plans, which we did not receive? Applicants were also ordered by this board chairwoman to show the perspective of the new building and wall on our neighboring property 17 Bay Drive, we've not received that. That has notably not been presented to us as owners of 17 Bay Drive as of Wednesday, September 17th, or today. Also notably is that no other modifications to the structure and wall have been made, none. While we met with the owners of the property at our home and fully voiced our concerns to them, nothing to the plans as it affects our property or the impact of Shinnecock Bay has changed, nothing. The builder, Rocco, spoke to my husband and said that the wall height between our properties should stay because the noise from the pool with no wall would be worse than the height of the wall, I find that concerning. I have several other concerns, number one, as shown by the pictures of, that we gave you last time of the homes on our street, this proposed structure is not at all in keeping with the neighborhood. Two, the pool and runoff would definitely impact the open bayfront of Shinnecock Bay, and notably the bulkhead of 19 Bay is in terrible shape. Three, what happens to the trees, root structure, and indeed the integrity of our home foundation with such a massive dig required for this new foundation? The close proximity to our property is too close and not aligned with the current zoning code. Four, who is responsible for any damage to our foundation and/or trees because of the proposed plans? Five, if the close proximity to the bay by proposed dig for the pool, if allowed, reaches the depth of the bay, what would the damage be to fishwater and wildlife be? Six, where are the noise makers like pool equipment, AC units, heating equipment going? Can they be required to be street-side and not on the border of our home? Seven, we will have our right to a view of Shinnecock Bay restricted by code if this building wall height is approved, what about our rights and what about the precedent you would be setting? Eight, as Board Member Kevin asked at the last meeting about the rooftop becoming a potential party deck, how can we be assured that the answer of no given be made part of this application? Nine, if this application is approved in any form, who do we call when there are problems during the build? Surely the answer shouldn't be code enforcement, as they are woefully understaffed and have a questionable track record with their current responsibilities. Ten, in conclusion, the 60 feet of variance to a property about one-fifth of an acre total requested by 19 Bay petitioners is not in keeping with our street and clearly violates our rights as neighbors to a view and the integrity of our vegetation and home foundation and the open Shinnecock Bay. Thank you.
Serge, you want to say something? Step up. You've been sworn already, sir?
Yes, he has.
Thank you.
He's going, Al, how you going, you?
Just waiting for Susan to take that vacation.
This is for the, the chair.
Oh, okay, thank you, the present, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, so this isn't for anybody else, just me?
Everyone's getting, you got, you got color copies.
Oh.
Candace needs two copies of these.
You want the colored one for the file.
After you look at it.
James, you can have that. I actually have been to the site, so I, I appreciate, you know, pictures, okay.
Did you get a set, James?
Yes.
Do you need the color?
Thank you.
You need the color version? Yeah, okay. Jay, could you please give this to Candace and I'll take a.
Color, Candace needs the color.
I'll take the black and white.
For Candace.
Yes, she gets the best.
I'll take a black, white, yes.
James, you got it?
Barbara, do you have an extra one?
Don't worry, I'm about to ask that. Sir, I.
So, let me just say this, we really, you're not going to read this, right? The whole thing?
You're not going to read this into the record.
This is three minutes, ma'am, I timed it.
This is not three minutes.
Firstly, I'm only reading the first two pages, the rest is for you to read at your convenience.
If you could paraphrase it, that would be great.
All right, I'll tell you what, we'll time it for three minutes, and if three minutes, we'll turn it off.
Please, I know it's been a long evening, but for us as well.
I know, okay, go ahead, you've got three minutes.
I haven't started yet, Mr. Leonard.
Go ahead.
Picture one is the front yard, number two is the side yard, three is the backyard, number four is the survey amended by me to show a truer depiction of the property and its dimensions. Please note, this whole property would be denaturalized, the front yard becomes a driveway and septic system, the side yard gone, as the house seven foot from the street instead of 20 feet as required by town code. And then, add in a second driveway, two retaining walls, a staircase and bridge. Backyard, between the house, retaining walls, stairs, patio, deck, barbecue, pool and hot tub, extending 85 feet in length, basically every square foot of buildable land on the property is utilized, consequently, the backyard is eliminated. The current home is 22 feet wide by 36 feet long. This proposal entails building on a 33-foot wide by 85-foot long footprint, which is more than three and a half times larger than the current home's footprint. The extraordinary expanse in sheer size of excavation necessitates serious scrutiny, especially regarding land deformation. What would occur if an excavation of this magnitude were undertaken, and what would the impact be to our property and our home? Excavating so close to the bay to build a pool, no less, 36 feet from the bay, while town code requires a minimum of 50 feet, likely results in digging down into the bay. This is serious business. Water runoff into the bay, displacement of natural habitat, the disruptive effect on wildlife and sea life, and the eradication of the natural ecosystem and environment. I, I took picture number five, it's interesting to look, standing at the exact point in my yard where the proposed development at 19 Bay would end. My friend is standing where the property starts sloping downward before it completely drops off as the land approaches the bay. The scope of development is eye-opening and actually quite ludicrous when considered from this vantage point and perspective. Picture number six is our view with both the home and the subsequent wall overlaid and depicted as accurately as possible, please look at picture number six. While the developer shows two images lauding a lower-profile home as a key feature, it's a charade.
You're at three minutes, sir.
And please, let's not be misled, the proposed home, as it approaches the backyard, reaches a height of 23 foot, 6 inches, that's three stories high. And let's not forget the extension, oh, thereafter is the 15-foot wall, approximately 14-foot in height, and let's not forget the extension of the home bayside due, due to the two cantilevered levels.
Half minutes.
We'll have the added pleasure, Mr. Leonard, I've read it, it's not three minutes, maybe you started before I started reading.
I've, I've been timing you since you started to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
It's three minutes and 40 seconds.
We'll have the added pleasure of our neighbors looking down on us from 20-foot on one level and 30-foot on the, on the higher level. We have a right, we have a right, I know it, to a water view and not an 85-foot wall view. We have a right to sunshine and, and not to have this home and wall blocking the sun from our property, trees, plants and shrubs. As our home faces dead northeast, we look.
Four minutes and 15 seconds.
See the sunrise every morning, instead we would be looking at the slope of a cement home and wall. They are requesting 60-foot in total variances to be closer than town code allows on all four sides. Ms. Cohen, you requested the applicant provide a view of the property from our side, we haven't gotten it, we were supposed to get everything that the board got, we surely didn't receive it. It wasn't provided the last time and its absence again tonight is noteworthy. Mr. McDonald, you requested a landscaping plan to be submitted, no such plan is included, certainly we didn't get it, we're supposed to have everything you have, it was incumbent upon the attorney, James, to provide us with every document you've gotten.
We're at five minutes.
The overzealous, this overzealous development is the exact antithesis of being in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Half the homes on Bay Drive are about 1,000 square feet or less, about two-thirds are around 1,200 square foot or less, a few are about 1,500 square foot. 19 Bay is the smallest property on the block and in the immediate area of 23 homes. Mr. Leonard, you said at the last meeting, and I paraphrase, isn't there a very large home at the end of the block across the street? Yes, there is, but that home is on a one-acre property. Comparing apples to apples, this home at 19 Bay would be around, about 800 to 1,000 square foot.
What does that have to, sir, what does that have to do with the variances that are being requested? Hold on a minute.
Okay, what it has to do is that this property is on less, a fifth of an acre.
But it's, but right now, as we stand here, we do not have a request for pyramid relief, so, and that is what is directly relevant to the size of the home. We don't have a request for pyramid relief as far as we know.
Maybe the homeowner should have bought a property on a one or two-acre lot.
Okay.
We're at six minutes and 20 seconds.
Okay, there's no hardship precluding the homeowners from building a beautiful new home. The current home is four-bed, two-bath and 1,564 square feet, already one of the largest homes on our block. We met the owners, a lovely couple who hoped to have a summer weekend home to enjoy with their family, they can readily do so. We unequivocally oppose any development beyond what town code allows, we live on the bayfront, the bay, this property under question, and us as the adjacent property owners must all be protected. The proposed development is both outrageous and beyond the pale, even if it's not exceeding pyramid by you, as you're saying, Mr. Leonard.
Seven minutes.
Good.
All right, we're done.
We honestly do not understand how any consideration could be given to such an overzealous and outlandish development.
Mr. Jay, thank you very.
You got to wrap it up.
Yeah.
Even though I skipped a portion.
Okay, but you know, the good, the good news is that you've given us in writing, so we can read it, and that will be, you know, be considered as well.
Okay, may I just say, ask a question, of, I'll ask you, Chairwoman.
Okay.
Apparently documentation was supplied that we didn't receive, it was required by you specifically, you, you, Ms. Cohen, at the last meeting, that anything you receive, we receive. If you got documents that we didn't, that's not equitable, may, may I?
I am sure that the attorney will make sure that you receive.
But you also ensured it last time, also, we were supposed to receive the papers by August 15th, it was weeks, weeks later that we received any papers from, James.
So we take, Mr. Jay, we take your point, and I do want to say, James, you got to do better, because you do not serve your applicant when we are hearing from people in opposition that you're not working with them, and I feel strongly about that. So let me just, there's nothing else to say, you just got to work with them, thank you.
Can I make a comment, please?
I personally delivered documents to Mr. Jay's house on two separate occasions, I emailed them to me, to him, he indicated by email that he couldn't open the documents, I physically drove them and put them in his mail. Weeks after, we were supposed to have them on August 15th.
Okay, sir, this is ridiculous, sit down.
Yes, sir. But I, I gave them by email.
Okay, then I apologize.
Yes, and then I physically put them in Mr. Jay's box on two different occasions, and I met with Mr. Jay.
Okay, this is getting a little bit out of control.
I'm sorry.
So, let's just say, we want a sharing of documents, Julie makes a very strong point.
Yes.
We want to see a pyramid analysis, we want to see a rendering that shows what it's going to look like with, and in a landscape plan, not just remove stairs, we want to see what it looks like, is there anything else we want to see? And, and also, I noticed that on the survey, the coverage, the lot coverage is 21%, you're only allowed 20, so that's another variance that will be required.
We modified that, so.
All right, well, then you have to give us.
I, we did.
You have it.
The plans you submitted, these plans show at 21.6%.
My apologies, we'll modify the plans and I'll speak to Mr. Lutary about that.
And on the survey, it has to show.
We did submit a modified survey, so Mr. Geyerhauser had indicated to us that the initial survey actually included more structures in the lot coverage than required.
Well, we want an accurate, whatever it is, we want an accurate depiction of what the lot coverage is.
But you know, there's a macro message here, which is, this is a big structure on a really small lot, causing all kinds of elements of fit tension here, consider the possibility that it should be reduced, and maybe some of those issues are mitigated.
We do fit within the lot coverage, the lot coverage being 20%, and our.
But we need a survey that shows that.
Can I, can I, can I just wrap this up real quick?
I'll clarify that in the plans, but our coverage is 19.81%, including all roof structures, the proposed house is 1,525 square feet.
Okay, so maybe the plans are incorrect, but we need to have them corrected.
Yes, and I would, we do want to indicate that the existing house right now is 22.
Can I just make some clarity here real quick, because this is, this is where my frustration was in the beginning, and every, it was misdirected, you guys misdirected it to you, because I spent an hour and a half with that gentleman on the phone and tried to explain it to him, and it was a very traumatizing experience to me, and you just experienced five minutes of it. So everything that was said should be struck in from the record, because everything that was said is not true, and if you refer back to the survey, you will see, the house is 13 feet off the property line, it's only 22 feet wide, it has one foot six overhangs, the house is only 58 feet long, so this overexaggeration of it is just craziness, the house is only being dug down, the deepest part is like three feet at the low, the deepest part is 10 feet in the front of the house, three feet in the back of the house, because it's exposed and the foundation only has to meet three feet below grade. The pool is obviously at elevation 16, so if the pool is at elevation 16 and I'm doing a six-foot-deep pool, I'm 10 feet above sea level, okay, so I'm not in the water. This is the lack of understanding of how to reading plans, I tried to explain it to the gentleman, I spent plenty of time, James did, we went beyond, and I've been doing this my whole entire life, I went beyond and tried to be helpful with him, explain it to him, so it's either just malicious behavior or just a lack of knowledge of it, so I can't help.
So wait, hold on, hold on. No, please, sir, sit down, we've had enough. No, we've had enough here tonight with everyone, please, everyone.
All right.
I, I just want to, I just want to get an idea, right now, what exactly is the relief you're looking for? So, we still got the, the front yard setback, 15.2 feet from 16?
Yes.
Okay, we've still got the elevated walkway bridge?
Yes.
We've still got the front lot line from 50 feet to 16.2 feet for the proposed pool, that's off the water, correct?
That is correct.
We still have that. The accessory parking within 10 feet?
Accurate, yes.
Okay, and we still have the 10-foot-high retaining wall?
Well, one of them may be removed.
Well, there's the 10-foot-high decorative wall, that's going to be removed, and you're going to show us plans for that? And then we've got the 10-foot-high retaining wall?
Correct.
Okay, so what's in the description is what's still active, you're going to give us. You're going to give us redrafted plans or amended plans and you're going to provide a copy to these fine people, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And with the pyramid.
I just didn't want to make the changes until I had a conversation with the board.
With the pyramid calculations.
The pyramid calculations.
It's a, it's a lot of effort to change the drawings. I wanted to have a conversation, some clarity, so that we can move forward and everybody understands the heights and I'll give you renderings of it and everything else.
And you'll give us pyramid calculations?
Yes, I'll give you everything that you need on it. So we'll go through it all.
You need to go to the conservation board.
Perfect.
My understanding was that there was a referral. We discussed it last time, Candace, we made a referral.
Yeah, we made a referral, but I'm just, you don't know whether or not you need a permit. I mean, we can wait for the referral, but you don't, do you have an opinion as to whether or not you need, if you need a permit, it is going to take a long time.
No, because my understanding is we have a bulkhead and we're beyond that.
So you think you're either, no jurisdiction or?
But you did make a referral, so we'll hear.
We made a referral, yep.
And you made the referral.
Yes, Candace made the referral, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we have a couple of things that need to get redone.
Correct. And we'll make sure that the updated survey is included in the plans, which, again, the plans were submitted and then Mr. Gerhauser asked for a revision to the survey. So we submitted this survey revision separately, so I apologize to the board as to why there's confusion over lot coverage. It was determined by Mr. Gerhauser. Initially, our application did, we did believe we needed an area variance. And then after Mr. Gerhauser's review, it was determined that the original survey coverage was actually more than how you would calculate it under the town code. It was solely for roof structures. So we then modified that, which then put us below the twenty percent lot coverage at the nineteen point eight.
Okay, so we need, we need accurate, accurate, you know, plans, surveys, pyramid calculation or, pardon me?
James, you just submitted your documents. Always remember, I need at least two of them to be full-size to scale. That's your plans. All of your surveys must be full-size to scale. Like I said, your plans, you can do two full-size, the other nine, eleven by seventeen is fine.
Yeah, and actually would be requested by the board members.
So I'm sorry, the, the two sets of plans need to be full-size to scale?
I need two of them full-size to scale.
And then the surveys?
And also with your plans, the other nine can be reduced to eleven by seventeen.
Okay.
And then all eleven of your surveys, all must be full-size to scale.
So can I just ask one last question to the board so I can finish up and give the, give everybody what they need? So in the, in the proposed thing, I was removing the wall going over the, across the bridge and making it to glass, removing the staircase and that section of wall. Some of that wall for structural for the, for the bridge I will need, but I'll lower it down so it's just glass railing there and eliminate that staircase and that'll eliminate pretty much all of that stair and that wall on the south side.
Right.
On the northernly side, I can reduce the wall height to retain the soil because the soil is at eighteen feet, right? And the other side of the pool is at sixteen feet, fifteen feet in spots. So obviously I have to retain neighbors' property. I can't allow that soil to roll down into their property. So there'll have to be some kind of retaining wall. I can do it at like, say, three feet high, but it's going to have to be something to retain that soil on that neighboring property.
Okay, that sounds good.
And that's the, that's the ten-foot-high retaining wall you're talking about?
Yeah, that retaining, that retaining wall at the highest point is actually only nine feet and it slopes up to about like, you know, obviously it's eighteen feet and the first floor elevation, you know, it's only about six feet at the, at the lowest, at the lowest point and the highest point is about nine feet. So it's really not ten feet high, but, because the dirt is up on that side there on the north side. But I can lower it to retain the soil and then there'll be a staircase that's going down because I need at least one staircase to get down to the pool area because the first floor is elevated. Because the bedrooms and everything are pretty much underground, obviously, because it's in the grade there.
Well, then show that on your plans.
Well, yes, I just wanted to mark it and have a conversation about it before I start changing renderings and everything else because it's a lot of work and a lot of effort to do that. So that's why I wanted to have a conversation about it.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, so how long do we need?
I want, I feel pretty strongly about the fact that I don't think this can come on until twelve four if the seven eleven is on, on eleven twenty.
Yeah.
Because we can't, we can't do this. And I'm not criticizing anyone, we just can't conduct ourselves.
I haven't scheduled the new applications for that date yet. If you only want those two holdovers, we can see if we can do that.
On eleven twenty and, and no new ones?
I don't have anything on eleven twenty as of right now.
Except for nine eleven?
Except for nine. And no, you actually have Segundo, whatever was on.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. We could do those three then.
Okay.
We have Janice Vindel, Salanda.
Janice on eleven twenty?
Yep, adjourned eleven twenty.
Okay.
And nine eleven.
Yeah, we're just not going to be at our best and it doesn't serve anyone if.
So either, so Candace's point is you either just do four of the returned adjournments and no new?
No, 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 no. I have to do some new. I can reduce the amount of new ones, but I would say twelve.
Okay, I thought you were saying no news.
Let's do twelve four then.
I was out of the room when you did the date for the first case.
Okay.
Twelve four.
We can have amending drawings in a week, is my understanding.
Yeah, but we don't.
Yeah, but we don't have any space for you.
It doesn't allow for it.
Ten two is full, ten sixteen is full.
Eleven sixteen is full.
Eleven six is full.
Eleven six, sorry.
Now eleven twenty has.
Is pretty full.
You have seven eleven to go on then.
All right, so let's do twelve.
Twelve four.
Okay. All right, so.
What are we doing, eleven twenty?
Eleven, twelve, eleven twenty, we have all the adjournments, like nine eleven, you know, the whole thing.
Yeah, 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 right.
Plus new ones. All right, so let's do, all right, so Kevin, this is yours.
What's the date that we agreed on?
Twelve four.
Twelve four, okay, beautiful. So we'll adjourn, this is a motion to adjourn this application to twelve four.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastonia.
Aye.
Mr. Rebbi.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
She recused herself.
That's right, sorry. Chair votes are, okay. Go for it.
Members of the board, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number eleven on the agenda, the application of Todd Newfeld and Michelle Newfeld, Fifty-Two Scotts Landing Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map, number nine hundred dash forty-three dash one dash fifty-two. Come, step on up. Come on down. You're the next contestant.
Is the attorney here? The prize is mine. He's probably on Zoom. You poor people, you sat here all this stuff.
JR, who did you piss off?
Interesting.
Well, it's interesting to see you guys operate. It's fascinating, actually. I think you all need a martini at the end of you.
Don't even say that yet. Make us want to leave.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, are you, Akdi's attorney on this?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, so just state your name again for the record.
Sure, my name is JR DeCiccio with the law firm of Greenberg, Chorrick.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Twenty-three seventeen Montauk Highway.
I'm sorry, what is?
JR DeCiccio with the law firm of Greenberg, Chorrick.
Okay, you know, really, you're very soft. Is there a way to, is, talk closer to the microphone or?
Can you hear me now?
Better? Okay.
Actually, I'm over.
Okay, so go ahead, JR.
How was that? Is that better?
Not really, but we're going to have to deal with it. All right, go ahead.
Okay, keep me quiet.
So I'm, I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, applicants, Todd and Michelle Newfeld. As you may recall, my partner, David Gil Martin, presented this application to the board on the September fourth meeting. At that time, the, the board, as well as the neighbors to the south, had suggested that we figure out a way to somehow shift the pool five feet to the north. So my clients did take, take your advice and they did just that. They worked with their architect. They shifted the proposed home five feet to the north, so to increase the side yard setback from ten to fifteen feet for the pool. We have submitted a new survey to the board, which you should have. We've also submitted a landscaping plan, shown proposed pool will be completely shielded from any adjacent neighbors. As, as was explained at the last hearing, given the wetlands constraints on the property, this is really the only feasible location for the pool. And the environmental benefits of this application are, in our opinion, tremendous. We're removing a non-conforming septic system in the wetland buffer area and installing a new IA system in the, in the front yard. As a result of shifting the home, the relief for the front yard is slightly different because the home, both the home and the pool, had to also be shifted slightly east towards Scott Landing Road, and that's due to the wetlands buffer. So we are now seeking a forty-two point one foot setback from the front property line instead of the required fifty feet. The shifting of the home also causes a minor request for pyramid relief. And we did submit a pyramid diagram to the building department and to the board.
Here it is.
But the pyramid relief is minimal. It's consistent with previous approvals of the board, particularly for lots of this size. And again, this relief is largely driven by the wetlands constraints of the property.
What's, what's the pyramid relief being sought?
One thousand one hundred and eighty cubic feet. Now, the most impacted neighbor is the neighbor to the north, but as the board recognized at the last hearing, that neighbor's home is setback approximately forty feet from the common boundary line. So the, you know, the impacts to him will be minimal, if any at all.
One of the, one of the things that we did ask about the last meeting, you weren't here, JR, was that the wetlands permit, the conservation board, had indicated that the pool was sixteen by twenty, I believe, the original. And on the site, it says fifteen by thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
So David had said that there was a revised permit? I don't know, but we didn't get that in the submissions.
A revised permit for the, from the conservation board?
Yes, so because the wetlands permit only agreed that the pool should be sixteen by twenty, you put in the plans, it's fifteen by thirty-two. So I don't know how you reconcile that.
Well, if it, if it, my client is on, he should be on Zoom, if he can.
Well, David seemed to say that there was another wetlands permit, but, hey, do you remember that? Does anybody remember that? Because I clearly remember that.
But I don't remember, I just don't have my notes.
I don't remember it as being, I remember the question being, if you shift the house, will that require the wetland permit to be modified?
But, but we had talked about the size of the pool and the fact that.
What was the size of the pool before?
According to the wetlands permit, it was sixteen by twenty.
Twenty, and here it's fifteen by thirty-two.
And he had said, oh, I think the wetlands permit was modified. So I would like to see what the wetlands permit is.
I have, I have, I do have my, my client here, I think he can probably answer that.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Mr. Newfeld, yes. I've sworn you would report.
Sorry about the late hour here. So the wetlands permit was approved for, for fifteen by thirty-two?
No, well, we don't have that.
There was a modified wetlands permit approved.
I mean, that's what, that's what Mr. Gil Martin said, but we don't have it, so we need to see that.
But your survey that you have in front of you also reflects that.
Yes, the survey reflects a fifteen by thirty-two foot pool, but we need to see the wetlands permit. We need that in the record. So if you have that, please provide it to us. You could provide it as a written submission to Candace because we will need that in the record.
Right.
We will certainly, we will do that.
Thank you.
That is no problem.
And, and have you confirmed that there is no other wetlands considerations, given the movement of the, of the home, five feet?
We have confirmed that with Mr. Shea.
Okay.
Yeah, the only, the only, what we did have, you know, we did have to move it, as I said, slightly to the east, just to stay out of that buffer area. But the, the only impact of that is the, the front yard setback for the pool is now forty-two point one feet, as opposed to last time it was forty-three feet.
Okay.
And pyramid relief?
And, and pyramid relief, correct.
And now the new pyramid relief.
So it's no, it's no longer in the required side?
It's, it's fifteen feet off of the, off of the, the south side property line.
Where it was ten feet before, now it's fifteen.
Correct.
And there is forty feet from the house to the property line, just to add that.
And the landscape proposal is this Bayberry, Arbor Bidey, I don't know, I guess.
The landscape proposal shows eleven green giants being planted on the southern property line. And when they're planted, they'll be planted, you know, ten to twelve foot, so it'll be pretty large right from the get-go.
Okay, so one of, one of the concerns is that we just got this tonight and the neighbors have not seen this to take a comment and to take a, a look at.
I believe it was submitted to the board on the fifteenth.
We received it tonight, I don't know.
Well, that's why you got it tonight, because I got it on Monday.
That's right. So I mean, you know, she doesn't send another packet out. It has to go in with our packets from last week. So we just got this and the neighbors have not had a chance to review it and they need to get a copy.
Okay, I'll just, I mean, I did watch the last, the last hearing. I know the concern and that the request by the neighbor was to, to shift the pool five feet to the north, and that's exactly what the Newfells have done.
Okay.
Okay, so hopefully they'll see it and get comfortable.
Russell, thank you very much. We appreciate that. Todd, you just had texted me that you had done that, so I appreciate that. We're anxious to see the, the plans and.
Your name, can you give your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just your name again.
Scott Ree, R-E-E-P, and Helen.
Oh, Helen. Scott, right?
Yes.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can give them my plans. Do you have, it's the survey, the landscaping, and this big thing, right?
It's the survey, the landscaping plan, and the pyramid plan, yes.
Okay. This is the vegetative, this is the vegetative plan right here? Is this the vegetative?
I mean, I can, I can probably put it on my.
They can have my copy.
Thank you very much.
I can always take a look at Candace's.
Yep. Okay, so before, any more questions from the board? So I know you haven't had a chance to look at it, but just listening, do you see any, Your, your big concern last time was?
My concern is, you know, obviously noise the pool, and we thought that a good compromise would be the move of the five feet. So we appreciate that.
And the landscaping, because.
The landscaping plan, yes.
I, I had a problem with it being in the side yard, but that was my, my problem, and it didn't seem to be yours.
Love to have it on the side yard, but.
Well, there wasn't an alternative. I mean, the alternative is not to have a pool.
Right.
You know, so.
We weren't going to go to that extent.
Okay.
But.
So this is an instance where the board's more comfortable with the pyramid and taking it out of the required yard?
Yeah.
I think in, in, perhaps in this case, I mean, we didn't really focus on the pyramid, but because we, it's new. But.
Because it's a result of shifting the house.
So does the board have a comment? Is it, is the, is the board of the opinion that they prefer the 15 feet versus 10? But that requires pyramid relief, as opposed to leaving it at 10 with no pyramid relief?
I thought, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jer. I, I was comfortable because I thought it was a reasonable compromise being made by all involved. I, I don't love the pyramid ever, but I think this accommodated the neighbors' concerns.
This is a burden property with the, with the wetlands and the setbacks and the other kind of problems. So you can probably, you know, think about it in those terms, make a distinction on that basis.
How do you feel about that, Kevin?
I'm still processing it. And I, I'm trying to recall what the resolution is for, is the pool. I, I just saw the wetland permit in the packet, so the wetland permit was 16 by 20.
We're getting a copy of it.
We're getting a copy of a revised wetlands permit.
Oh, oh, oh.
For the 15 by 32 pool.
If you don't get that, then there's an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, we will, we will provide that. And again, as, as my client did say, you know, we worked with Mr. Shea prior to the first hearing, and we also worked with him again in between the two hearings.
Cultured stone wall? Okay. I, thank you very much for your accommodations. I think that. Is there anybody in the audience other than the Reeps who wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, is there anybody on Zoom?
Can I say one other thing?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Newfeld.
I just wanted to say that I did take the recommendations of the board and of the Reeps. And I spent the last two weeks and $10,000. And the last year, I've done everything by the book with the town. And I'd really appreciate it. We raised the house on July 31st, expecting everything to go smoothly after that, because I've done everything by the book. I'm really, it would be really terrific if we can, you know, everything has been provided. I know you're missing the actual permits, not in the record. We didn't know that it wasn't in the record. We will provide that if the board can make any kind of accommodation so that we don't have to wait till December. The builder was supposed to start on September 8th.
If we close, if we close the hearing tonight.
I'm sorry?
Two weeks for written submissions, and then two weeks after that, we have a decision. So it's essentially a month. It's not December.
Right. And, and to answer the chairman's question from my perspective, I think that the pyramid relief being asked is moderate. I think it's also generated by the requests made of this board. So for us to turn around now and just say, oh, do it over again, I think, I, I would find that to be unconscionable. And I wouldn't do that. So I'm in favor of approving the plans, and it looks like the neighbor is.
I think so.
Feels okay about it, too.
To be, to be fair, I don't think you should be put on the spot tonight to say yay or aye.
I mean, to be honest, I mean, we shouldn't be put on the spot because we just got it tonight. So what we do with these kinds of cases is that we, two weeks, we close the hearing. You have two weeks to submit written comments about the plans or whatever objections or whatever else you might have. And then we take that into consideration when we make our decision two weeks after that.
Sounds good.
But we do need, in, in the meantime, the wetlands permit modification.
Is that, is that what you're requesting by chance, or is that just a survey?
This is a survey.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
No, it's a survey.
I thought that might be it.
All right, this is mine.
Hey.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this besides Mr. Newfeld?
No one on Zoom.
Okay. All right, so I am going to close the public hearing. We're going to keep it open for written comments until October 3rd with a decision on October 16th. Okay, Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Ms. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Newfeld. Good effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Are you here for a particular decision? That's Habad.
Oh, yes, they're here on.
All right, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So then you can do that one.
Sir, are you here, are you here for anything particular, sir? Okay.
He's just enjoying the interaction of this wonderful group.
Katie, did you want to discuss?
We'll do it after the decision.
We'll do it after the decisions, okay.
This is.
So, do you want me to start?
Yes, you might, because these ladies are waiting.
Okay, I have a decision in the application of Habad Lubavitch Mitzvah Tank, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-113-3-8.29. This application is for property located at 40 Winding Way Watermill. Applicant requests variances for a proposed addition to an existing dwelling and a variance to allow an exterior basement stair to project into a required side yard on a lot that tapers to the rear. While this application provokes strong emotions from many neighbors, both in support and in opposition, and the board is sensitive to the opinions voiced in opposition, the denial of a land use permit based solely upon community opposition or speculation is impermissible. And here, the alleged change of use on the premises is speculation. As noted throughout the hearings, determining whether the use of the premises has changed and whether such a change violates the town code is a matter for court enforcement or a court of law. As such, the board not only encouraged both parties to consult with code enforcement, but also had their counsel refer the matter to staff. That the neighbors are dissatisfied with the response from code enforcement or any other department for that matter does not change this board's jurisdiction. As discussed at the hearings, when presented with an application for area variances by a property owner, this board cannot go beyond the scope of such appeal. Instead, this board is bound to consider only the issue before it. Here, whether granting a 2.8 foot reduction in the side yard setback and 1.1 foot reduction in the total side yard that results in 25 square feet of non-conforming habitable space will negatively impact the character of the neighborhood, and whether the proposed eight inch projection of the basement stairs into the required side yard will have any detrimental impact. Similarly, the cases submitted for the finding that this board should consider bad acts, deceit, and self-created hardship are not applicable here, since it has not been determined by code enforcement or a court of law that the premises is being used in violation of the town code or has previously violated zoning rules. As such, the application made by Habad Lubavitch Mitzvah Tank for minor variances for modest additions to a single-family dwelling that benefits from a certificate of occupancy is not deceitful, deceptive, disingenuous, or otherwise false. Rather, the board finds that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants the following relief. One, for proposed addition, Town Code Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 in Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations as modified by the approved subdivision for a total side yard of 37.9 feet where 40 feet is required, and a minimum side yard setback of 17.2 feet where 20 feet is required. And two, Town Code Section 330-83D Yards for an exterior basement stair projecting four feet eight inches into a required side yard where a maximum encroachment of four feet is allowed. All is shown on the survey prepared by Lester Holden, L.S. of Squires Holden, Weisenbacher &amp; Smith, last revised December 2024, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Joseph L. Mile, R.A., dated October 5, 2024. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including, to the extent applicant controls ownership of the landscaping, the maintenance of the evergreen screening, the addition on the aforementioned survey by the applicant and all successors and interest.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
No.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
No.
Ms. Burgess?
No.
Chair votes aye. Okay, Bob, you're next.
This is the application of Margaret and Robert Zach, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-211-4-54. Whereas on April 21st, 2016, this board by Decision D 016043 granted a total pyramid encroachment of 5,292.17 cubic feet for proposed two-story residence with a covered porch on property located at 24 Old Fort Lane in Hancock Hills. Whereas on February 28th, 2020, this board received a letter from Justin Zach requesting the board modify the decision to allow proposed dwelling to be raised. Whereas on memo dated May 8th, 2024, Principal Building Inspector Art Gierhauser noted that, that to elevate the dwelling would result in additional pyramid encroachments for a total new pyramid encroachment of 6,194.58. And whereas this request was re-advertised and testimony taken on July 18th, 2024 that respected the proposed modifications. And whereas this board, one, was concerned that additional relief was substantial and not consistent with the character of the neighborhood, advised applicants to modify their plans and close the application for a decision to be rendered on August 15th, 2024. And whereas, after multiple adjournments of the decision to this date, no further information has been submitted to the board. Now, therefore, it has been resolved that this application of Margaret and Robert Zach in connection with the modification request of Decision D 016043 is hereby denied without prejudice.
Second.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Let me do my next one or just?
Go ahead. You're on a roll.
This is the application of Keith and Amanda Vibert, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-366-1-15.14. This application is property located at 14 Dock Road, Remsenberg. Applicant seeks variances for proposed 55 by 110 tenants' court with cut corners on a lot burdened by two front yards. With the conditions that existing screening be maintained, this application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this grant, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 336 General Regulations that references 330-11 for an accessory distance from front lot line of 63.3 feet where 90 feet is required in Town Code 330-76D Buildings and Structures, and 330-83C Yards to allow tenants' court to be located within the required front yard for the principal building as shown on the survey prepared by Daniel H. Fox, Licensed Land Surveyor, last revised July 8th, 2025. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions as this applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the maintenance of the hedges, screening, the proposed court by the applicant, and all successors and interests as shown on the aforementioned survey.
Second.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Upstane.
Upstane, and Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair votes aye. You've got two.
You want to do them both?
Yeah.
Okay. I move to adopt the application of OAF New Horizons Home Incorporated, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-230-9-19. This application is for proposed, I'm sorry. This application is for property located at 10 Beechdale Road, Hampton Bay. Applicant seeks variances for a proposed pool on a non-conforming lot located in a RWB zoning district. After discussion with the board, the applicant was able to increase the front yard setback by agreeing to relocate the sanitary system. As modified, this board finds that the application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the code for the proposed pool. One, Town Code Section 330-30 General Regulations that references Section 330-34 Business District Table of Dimensional Regulations for accessory front yard, for front lot line setback of 40 feet where 60 feet is required, and an accessory rear yard setback of 25 feet where 50 is required. And two, Town Code Section 330-76D Placement of Accessory Buildings, Structures, and Uses in All Districts, and Section 330-83C Yards to allow the pool to be located within the required side yard for a principal building on a non-conforming lot as shown on the site plan prepared by August M. Ruff, R.A., last dated September 12, 2025.
Is there a second? Mr. Mac, I'm McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, do your second one then.
Next one?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, this is the, I move to adopt the application of Corey and Kathleen Barak, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-191-2-14. This property is, this application is for property located at 10 Beechdale Road, Hampton Bay. Applicant requests relief for a proposed two-story addition on a non-conforming, irregularly shaped lot. This application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the code for a proposed two-story addition on a non-conforming lot. One, Town Code Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 33.2 feet where 40 feet is required. And two, Section 330-84D Pyramid Law for sky plane encroachment to the east of 656 cubic feet as shown by the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hayter, Licensed Surveyor, last updated March 11th, 2025, and the floor plans and elevations digitally signed by Paul J. Clinton, R.A., dated May 13th, 2025. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to other such conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? I have one last decision. This is in the matter of Christine McNamara, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-16-1-75. This application is for property located at 33 Island View Drive, West Newac. Applicant seeks variances in connection with a proposed accessory apartment located wholly within an existing dwelling on an undersized lot with an existing modest-sized dwelling. The board finds that this application passes the standards set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed accessory apartment on a non-conforming lot. One, Town Code Section 330-11.2F Special Standards to allow an accessory apartment on a lot that has an area, a lot area of 18,511 square feet with a minimum of 20,000 square feet is required. And two, Town Code Section 330-11.2G Minimum and Maximum Sizes for a 573 square foot accessory apartment that is 48.1% of the main dwelling where a maximum of 35,417 square feet is allowed, as shown on the survey prepared by Robert Smith, L.S. of Squires Holden, Weisenbacher &amp; Smith, surveyed July 17, 2024, and the accessory apartment floor plans prepared and signed by Edward P. Armis, P.E., on July 8th, 2025, and the habitable living space calculations prepared and signed by Edward P. Armis, P.E., dated July 24th, 2025. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni?
Aye.
Mr. Redhead?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Wait, 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 one second.
Okay.
So I want.
One second, sorry.
It was, it was John.
Sorry, go ahead, Kim.
That's all right. Candace reminded me that we, we didn't make final motions on Leahy and Josephson &amp; Church, but I also, I wanted, I want to circle back to those because I feel like there was, there may have been some confusion in light of also the votes that we were making to reopen the Habad. These two applications, Leahy and Josephson &amp; Church, we closed those for written submissions. I had polled the board. The applicants were under the impression that they had full support. Some of the board members expressed concern to me that they, they had unanswered questions or they were not satisfied with the application. My recommendation under these circumstances is to allow the applicants to come back and make a final pitch because the record that was before them and before us, if we were ever to be litigated, wouldn't necessarily support what, the decision that I'd like. I'd like the record to be better. So when we discussed about reopening that, it does have to be unanimous, and there were a couple no's, and I was a little off-put, and then we didn't vote to adjourn the decision. So I would respectfully ask you to reopen this at the applicant's request. Because of the, the confusion with the record, Candace actually made a little room for them at the next hearing because these guys have been before us a couple times. And then we'll have a record, and then you can answer any questions, and you can state your feelings on the record that would support a decision.
I make that motion.
So Helen, did you hear that?
Yes.
Okay.
I still, you know.
Well, you, I mean, a no on the application, but a yes on the reopen, so that they can, the record can support it.
Open. I'm very familiar with this cases.
I understand you are, and, and the applicants know your position, but they need to hear everyone on the board's position before we make a decision.
Okay, they can be, have their opinion. I can have my opinion. I'm still a no.
Okay, so Helen, is your opinion that you're going to be a no on the vote, but you also a no on not allowing them to come back to make some clarification? Because there was some, there.
I understood what Katie mentioned.
Okay, okay. Well, I just want, I, I, I would respectfully ask you to reconsider that because I, I don't think that's fair to the applicants.
It may lead to Article 78, Helen, that's all. And we want to try to avoid that. You can still vote no or however you want to vote.
I mean, there clearly was, and I mean, we've talked about it. There clearly was a sense that they had the votes, and I mean, look, Helen, we, you know, we're not going to force you into it, but Katie's making the play.
Wait, Susan, let me see. Katie, if it's this important to you, I will be a yes. Wait, hey, Susan, let me speak. Katie, if it's this important to you, I will be a yes.
It is, it is important to me to defend the board with the best record. I think this will give us the best record.
And to you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who is opposed? Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Individually, all right. Helen.
To reopen Leahy.
To reopen Leahy.
Do you want me to call it? Okay, so, um.
We're doing Leahy first.
Okay, uh.
Excuse me, Katie.
Yes?
I just peeked at the phone. Did you call me about this?
I was telling you that we were back on.
Oh, I was, I heard the whole other thing. I was sitting right outside.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, um. Calling, uh, the, uh, application of Lynn Leahy, Fifteen Tarpon Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash three-six-two dash four dash eight. Um, I move to reopen the hearing on this application.
Second. Uh, Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni. Mr. Redhead.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, okay.
Okay, uh, the.
For testimony on October second.
You had to vote for testimony on October second.
Okay, I move to, uh, hold testimony on October second.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni.
Aye.
Mr. Redhead.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Can I put these two together?
Chair votes aye. Okay, next one.
Do I have to, do they have to be voted separately?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I move to reopen the, the hearing on the application of Brandon Josephson and Sarah Church, Twenty-two Bay Avenue, Neuyach, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred dash five dash three dash thirty-nine.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Mastoni.
Aye.
Mr. Redhead.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald. Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And I move to, um, hold a further hearing on the application of Brandon Josephson and Sarah Church on October second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, motion carries. Do I have a motion to close?
John, yes.
Juror.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?